Jose, ¿estamos listos? ¿Estamos listos? Bien. Buenas noches, todos. Esta es nuestra parte favorita de la reunión. Como pueden ver, hemos retrasado un poco la cerrada, pero gracias a todos por venir. Tenemos un par de reconocimientos esta noche. Lo primero, deberíamos dar una aplauso a Jerry y su equipo de la escuela de Grado Oak que estaban jugando aquí antes. Su grupo recibió la opción de asistir a un concierto muy importante en España, un grupo muy valorado que salió de la escuela de Grado Oak. Felicitaciones. Nuestro siguiente reconocimiento, Sr. Brian Pastor, en relación con nuestro programa de e-bikes. Brian, adelante.
Buenas noches y gracias por darme unos minutos para hablar esta noche. Estoy aquí para introducir brevemente un nuevo programa de seguridad distrital llamado TVUSD Safe Riders que se hizo oficialmente a nuestras escuelas mediales este año. Reconocimos el número de e-bikes, e-scooters y bicicletas en nuestras escuelas y en toda la comunidad y los problemas de seguridad que surgen de estos aumentos. Lo que hicimos en TVUSD fue organizar una pequeña team de todo el distrito. Trabajamos con la oficina del sheriff de Riverside, Bike Temecula Valley, Call With Your Helmet On, y la ciudad de Temecula para ayudar a diseñar nuestro programa. El programa consiste en un módulo interactivo de entrenamiento de 45 minutos, registro de bicicleta y certificado de completación para que los estudiantes obtengan su permiso para parcar en la campus una vez que el módulo se haya pasado. Desde que se inició el rollo hace dos meses, al principio del año, casi 900 estudiantes han completado el entrenamiento. Estoy orgulloso de decir que hemos tenido cero reclamaciones parentales y muchos agradecimientos. Eso se aplica a los sitios. Antes de que lo hiciéramos a la ciudad, probamos el programa en la escuela de Valle Ranch. Fue importante probarlo en este sitio porque tienen una cantidad enorme de e-bikes, bicicletas, muchas cosas en frente de la escuela y pensamos que esto sería un gran ejemplo de la ciudad para probarlo. Desde que hicimos esto en la escuela, tuvimos a Sr. Mann, quien era el asistente principal en la escuela de Valle Ranch, para facilitar el proceso. Y él está aquí para reconocer a un estudiante muy especial que apoyó el programa en Valle Ranch desde el principio. Antes de que le pidiera a Sr. Mann que saliera para dar ese reconocimiento, me gustaría decirle gracias a Sr. Mann por hacer todo el trabajo que hizo, para asegurar que esto fue muy eficiente y que todos los trucos fueron trabajados antes de que los entregués a los otros sitios. Así que, Sr. Mann, muchas gracias por eso y también al equipo que nos ayudó a ponerlo juntos. Así que, sin más preámbulos, voy a mandarle a Sr. Mann.
Gracias, Brian. Fue muy amable de usted. Y quiero introducir a un estudiante que fue instrumental en sacar esto de la tierra en Valle Ranch. Realmente fue un gran ayuda. Es un chico dulce. Es un tipo muy feliz y amable. Es un niño que uno quiere más en las escuelas. Rodeó su e-bike y había muchas veces que venía a mi oficina cuando estábamos tratando de hacer todos los trucos. Y él dijo, hey, esto no funciona. Y yo dije, estás bromeando. Tiene que funcionar. Nosotros dijimos, no, no funciona. Y él dijo, no, no funciona. Y yo dije, está bien, siéntate en mi oficina, vamos a resolver esto. Y realmente ayudó a hacerlo streamlined y suavizar todos los hombros para el resto de la ciudad. Así que las cosas y preguntas que habrían venido de él, no teníamos. Así que quiero introducir a Liam Rosario. Vamos, amigo. Este es un estudiante que realmente nos ayudó a sacar esos trucos, como estaba diciendo, en el sistema. Y quiero agradecerle públicamente y personalmente por todo el trabajo que hizo. Es un niño maravilloso. Ahora está en la escuela de Grado Oak como, creo, un freshman, ¿verdad? Amándole al fútbol y todo lo demás. Así que solo queremos agradecerle y gracias, Brian, por traer esto a la forefront y gracias a ustedes por darnos esa oportunidad.
Ahora, desde Temecula Middle School, ¿puedo tener al principal Marvin Morton venir adelante? Sandy, Kathleen, y Melissa, por favor, vayan adelante. Sí, y Teresa está aquí también. Tengo el privilegio de estar con este grupo en Washington. Han sido seleccionados como una escuela de la escuela de California para observar, que también es una reconocimiento nacional. Ha sido un esfuerzo absoluto de equipo en tu equipo entero. Sr. Morton, cuéntanos un poco más.
Primero, me gustaría agradecer a Dr. Woods y todo el Cabinet por su entusiasmo de apoyo a nosotros a través de este proceso. Realmente lo apreciamos. Estoy acompañado esta noche por algunas personas muy especiales. Así que, primero, tengo a Mrs. Pierce. Ella es nuestra especialista en matemáticas. No puedo pensar en nadie que pueda tomar una buena idea y convertirla en un sistema que positivamente impacte a tantas personas. Y, ya saben, cuando estábamos pasando por este proceso y nos dimos cuenta de que había algunas cosas que podíamos hacer para aumentar nuestro programa de enrichment intervention, Mrs. Pierce hizo lo que todos pensábamos imposible. También estamos acompañados por Melissa Peterson. Ella es la salvadora angel de nuestro departamento de educación especial. No puedes ser una escuela de observar sin tener un plan robusto en place para el éxito de tus niños de educación especial. Y Mrs. Peterson se ocupó de eso para nosotros. Esto fue bastante un proceso en términos de el autoestudio y un proceso de aplicación largo. En realidad, es un instrumento de mejora continua. Así que mientras estábamos pasando por eso, nos dimos cuenta de que esto no era una persona o dos. Esto fue un equipo de alrededor de diez riders que pusieron este proceso de aplicación juntos. Y nuestra piedra, nuestra fundación, fue Sandy McCreary. Así que ella es nuestra administradora de intervención y hizo un trabajo increíble. No estaríamos aquí sin ella. Y luego, finalmente, este es Dr. Hubbard, quien es nuevo para nuestra escuela este año, pero que sin duda estará involucrado en futuras actividades de la escuela de observar en Temecula Middle School. Así que gracias, Dr. Hubbard, por estar aquí. Y solo diré que el proceso de la escuela de observar ha sido realmente increíble. Cuando se convirtió en una escuela de California de 2024, estábamos buscando la próxima cosa, no solo nivelar, sino ponernos en un grupo nacional de escuelas que están tratando de estar de la moda y poner a los estudiantes en la forefront, especialmente nuestros niños de la escuela de la escuela que tienen tantas necesidades únicas. Así que ser parte de una organización nacional, ser reconocido por una organización nacional por el increíble trabajo de estas personas y nuestro personal en general es realmente un honor. Así que gracias por vernos esta noche.
Y finalmente, para reconocer a uno de nuestros empleados, Sr. Dennis DeVore, Mrs. Nicole Ash.
Dennis habría hecho esto en cinco segundos.
Sigue aquí conmigo, Harvard. Voy a leer esto para que pase por ello. Buenas noches, Consejo de Gobierno, Cabinet de Ejecución, amigos y familia. Estoy honrada de estar aquí esta noche para celebrar a nuestro querido amigo y miembro de la familia de TVUSD, Dennis DeVore. Dennis comenzó trabajando con la ciudad en 2002, hace 23 años, como técnico de computadora. Durante las últimas dos décadas, tanto la ciudad como el campo de la tecnología vio mucho cambio y Dennis adaptó y ajustó de manera correcta con ello. Era un talento invaluable y el solucionador de problemas ultimate. Su conjunto de habilidades fue segundo a ninguno y recuerdo muchas veces pedirle que me explicara las cosas muy lentamente y usando palabras muy pequeñas. Pero lo más importante que su conjunto de habilidades fue su increíble personalidad. Dennis fue el más amable, la persona más humilde que podrías encontrar. No solo estaba dispuesto a ayudar, sino que honestamente y verdaderamente disfrutó de ser útil y ser parte de nuestro equipo. No hay un momento que recuerde que no veía a Dennis con una sonrisa en su cara y tenía un comportamiento feliz. Dennis fue tomado de nosotros demasiado pronto y lo vamos a olvidar para siempre. La desplazamiento de mensajes, llamadas y correos electrónicos, y creo que la audiencia aquí esta noche son un testamento del impacto que tuvo en nuestra organización. Él será para siempre parte de nosotros y estamos agradecidos con su familia por compartir su tiempo con nosotros. Y ahora voy a mandarle a Jose.
Muchas gracias. Bueno, Mrs. Ash ha dicho todo lo que puede decir sobre Dennis. Una de las cosas que quería compartir con ustedes es que comenzó como técnico de computadora hace 23 años. Y trabajó su camino hacia arriba. Se convirtió en técnico, técnico dos, especialista en redes, coordinador, y finalmente, asistente director. Yo realmente, cuando retiré, estaba realmente tratando de preparar esto para él. Y se suponía que era el próximo director, en mi mente. No es por mí, pero en mi mente. Nunca cambió durante ese tiempo. Era humilde, respetivo. Hizo que cualquiera con el que se contactara sintiera muy importante, ya sea el superintendente o el director. También era algo divertido, en realidad. Así que una de las cosas que haría cada vez que tuviéramos un nuevo empleado, encontraría el laptop más viejo, más sucio, el laptop más sucio y el teléfono celular más viejo y el backpack más sucio, o backpack, en realidad. Y le daría eso al nuevo técnico. Tengo a varios de los técnicos del departamento aquí y creo que todos pueden afirmar que Dennis hizo eso con ellos. Pero después de eso, por supuesto, fue una buena risa y realmente estableció el tono para el tipo de relación que tuvo con todos los demás en el departamento y también fuera. Así que de la familia de TVUSD, de la familia de IMS, Jen, por favor acepten nuestras condolencias. Los amamos terriblemente. Y gracias a ustedes y a su familia, Tony, Lissy, por compartirlo con nosotros siempre que lo hicieran. Hizo cosas maravillosas aquí. Y tenemos un pequeño token de nuestro aprecio por Dennis. Favorito imagen. Y dice, Dennis DeVore, asistente director de Información de Sistemas de Información, 2002 a 2025. En la memoria de Dennis DeVore y sus años de servicios excelentes, esfuerzo sin parar y el apoyo constante de la ciudad y sus proyectos durante los últimos 23 años. Te verán profundamente y se recordarán en TVUSD Información. Así que muchas gracias.
Y una última nota. Hicimos la misma placa con la foto de Dennis para poner en nuestro departamento de informática para siempre y para siempre. Así que gracias.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos a la reunión regular de sesión de la escuela de la ciudad de Temecula Valley, Board of Education, en septiembre 30, 2025, a las 5:58 PM. En audiencia esta noche, nuestro Consejo de Gobierno, Dr. Melinda Anderson, Mr. Emil Barham, Dr. Joseph Komrosky, Mr. Stephen Schwartz, Mrs. Jarenifer Weersma, Miss Melissa Chai, miembro del Consejo de Gobierno.
¿Deberíamos esperar?
Bien. También están presentes el secretario del Consejo, Dr. Gary Woods, y el equipo ejecutivo. Ahora tendremos el juramento de allegiance recitado por los estudiantes de la escuela de la ciudad de Temecula Valley. Isabel, let's see, Stansberry, Isabel Crom, Ella Volmer, Jayden Parker, y Noah Gay.
Teníamos que hablar sobre la separación de Gary en la sesión cerrada y no hicimos. ¿Volvemos a allí? ¿Nos movimos a la 14?
A la 14. A menos que terminemos muy temprano.
Como miembro del Consejo de Gobierno, quiero empezar diciendo cuánto es un honor servir en este rol. Sentarse en este dais me da una perspectiva única, no solo como representante de mis compañeros, sino también como aprendiz en mí mismo. Cada reunión ha sido una oportunidad para entender mejor cómo opera nuestra ciudad y he dado cuenta de que los consejos escolares no son solo acerca de políticas y procedimientos. Son acerca de personas, los estudiantes, los maestros, el personal, las familias, todos trabajando juntos para construir el mejor entorno posible para el aprendizaje. Como cualquier comunidad, no somos perfectos. Nuestras escuelas no son perfectas y las personas que las inventan no son perfectas. Pero eso es lo que hace que sean lugares tan poderosos. Están diseñados para ser espacios de crecimiento. La educación no es solo acerca de hacer todo correcto la primera vez. Se trata de aprender, ajustarse, y continuar mejorando. Veo ese espíritu todos los días, no solo en Chaparral High, donde personalmente he tenido excelentes experiencias con maestros y administradores, sino también en toda la ciudad. He visto cuán dedicados son nuestros educadores y estoy segura de que ese mismo compromiso sigue vivo en la escuela de Grado Oak, Temecula Valley, y todas nuestras escuelas. Algo que también he aprendido de este asiento es cuán importante es la participación de nuestra comunidad. Somos muy afortunados de tener una comunidad activa y pasionada en Temecula. Cuando los miembros del público vienen aquí para compartir sus pensamientos, realmente hace una diferencia. Y cuando esos pensamientos son compartidos respetuosamente, incluso cuando surgen los desacuerdos, establece un ejemplo increíble para los estudiantes. Muchos de ellos están en esta habitación esta noche y muchos más están viendo desde casa. Están aprendiendo no solo de lo que aparece en los aulas, sino también de cómo los adultos en nuestra comunidad manejan diálogo, conflicto, y colaboración. Las discusiones respetuosas muestran a los estudiantes que sus voces importan y que la participación cívica no tiene que significar hostilidad. Debería significar escuchar y trabajar juntos. También he ganado un nuevo aprecio por los procedimientos parlamentarios. Al principio, se sentía complicado y casi intimidador, pero he llegado a darse cuenta de cuán es esencial para mantener nuestras reuniones justas, estructuradas, y productivas. Estos procedimientos pueden no siempre ser simples, pero nos recuerdan que cada voz en la mesa tiene su lugar y que el trabajo del Consejo se toma en serio. Es reforzante saber que este Consejo escribe para seguir esos procesos cuidadosamente porque muestra un compromiso no solo en las reglas, sino en la justicia y el respeto. En general, mi mayor aportación a este rol hasta ahora es la gratitud. Gratitud para mis compañeros que me confiaron en representarlos, gratitud para los educadores que trabajan sin parar por nosotros, y gratitud por esta oportunidad de sentarse junto a todos ustedes y aprender qué es la liderazgo cerca de cerca. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de ser parte de este trabajo. Estoy orgulloso de representar a los estudiantes de TVUSD y espero continuar aprendiendo y creciendo en este rol.
Gracias. Bien. La acción tomada en sesión cerrada debe ser reportada al público una vez que la sesión cerrada termine. La sesión cerrada de hoy comenzó a las 4 PM. El Consejo de Educación tomó la siguiente acción en sesión cerrada. Fue movida por el miembro Anderson y secundada por el miembro Schwartz para aprobar el acuerdo de settlement confidencial entre la ciudad de Temecula Valley Unified School District y Cronos S.A.A.S.H.R. Inc. y UKG Company. La motion fue aprobada. Eso no sucedió. Fue movida por el miembro Anderson y secundada por el miembro Schwartz para aprobar el acuerdo de resignación para el empleado clasificado 212997, efectivo de septiembre 30, 2025. La motion fue aprobada y adoptada con un voto de cinco a cero. Fue movida por el miembro Anderson y secundada por el miembro Komrosky para aprobar el acuerdo de resignación para el empleado clasificado número 324348, efectivo de septiembre 12, 2025. La motion para aprobar fue adoptada con un voto de cinco a cero. Fue movida por Anderson y secundada por Schwartz. Para aprobar el reclamo. Fue movida por Anderson y secundada por Schwartz para aprobar el reclamo de daños recibidos por JD en septiembre 11, 2025. La motion fue adoptada cinco a cero. Y luego el último. Último número dos, conferencia con counsel legal, litigación anticipada, exposición significativa a la litigación a continuación de la sección del Código de Gobierno 54956.9 y ocho casos relacionados con la ley Brown requiere curar y corregir, detener y deshacer. Copias de documentos relacionados están adjuntas. No se tomaron medidas reportables para la sesión cerrada en el número dos. Último número dos. No estuvieron presentes dos testigos. Melissa, ¿te gustaría introducir a este estudiante?
Bien. Como miembro del Consejo de Gobierno, tengo la honor de introducir el Spontáneo de la Estudiente de esta noche. Cada mes tenemos la oportunidad de destacar a nuestros estudiantes increíbles de nuestras escuelas que nos recuerdan por qué hacemos lo que hacemos. Así que solo un recordatorio amable, nuestros speeches de Spontánea son limitados a tres minutos. Así que de Chaparral High School tenemos a Geneviève Hua, Colby Kramer, y Cadence Twist.
Buenas noches, Superintendente Woods, miembros del Consejo de Gobierno y miembros del Cabinet. Mi nombre es Geneviève Hua, presidenta de ASB de Chaparral.
Y soy Cadence Twist, secretaria y tesoro. Gracias por vernos hoy.
Para empezar, este año, organizamos Club Rush el 28 de agosto, dando a los estudiantes la oportunidad de conectar con clubs en la campus. El día siguiente, los señores celebraron el sonrisa del señor con almuerzos y fotos para comenzar su final año.
El 4 de septiembre, la clase de 2029 disfrutó de la noche de cine fresco viendo Cars and the Quad. Dos días después, los señores mostraron su creatividad durante el pintado de parking del señor con el ayuda de su familia y amigos.
Los estudiantes de la ciudad también tuvieron momentos maravillosos. Fue nuestro primer partido de neón, una experiencia de danza sensacional para los estudiantes de la ciudad. También organizamos el torneo de baloncesto unificado donde un equipo de Varsity unificado ganó otra victoria de oro.
Luego vinieron los fines de semana con el tema Fast and Furious: Tokyo Drift. Los presentadores de cheer, danza, y JRC, Haka, Hayohan Inani, Emerald Guard, VSA, y Folklorico, y incluso el personal nos trajo la energía, trajo la energía de cero a cien en nuestra fiesta.
El viernes continuó la celebración con nuestro show de halftime con performances y la crouning de nuestro rey y reina de la llegada, Diego Chávez y Sophie Flores. También fuimos afortunados de tener un par unificado en la llegada de la royalidad este año por primera vez. Fue una gran experiencia para todos nosotros compartir y incluso sus familias pudieron participar en la experiencia de la royalidad.
También anunciamos a 2025, 2026 Fab Five, que representan los valores de nuestra escuela de pasión, respeto, integridad, determinación, y excelencia. Su energía junto con los estudiantes en el Puma Pit ganó el título nacional de estudiante del día después de nuestro primer partido de home game de la temporada, poniéndonos en marcha para los títulos nacionales y estatales.
Cerramos el fin de semana de la llegada con la danza de la llegada el 20 de septiembre, con rides, un DJ, bandas de estudiantes, fotoboots, realidad virtual, y mucho más. Fue una noche inolvidable para nuestros Pumas.
Este jueves, estamos emocionados de hostigar una conferencia de liderazgo de la escuela de la escuela. Estamos trabajando con líderes de TV y Grado Oak para inspirar a los futuros líderes de TVUSD.
Nos gustaría agradecerle su tiempo esta noche y su continuo apoyo a nuestros estudiantes y programas.
Por favor disfruten el corto video destacando nuestros eventos en el mes pasado. Esperamos compartir.
Gracias, Chaparral. De Grado Oak tenemos a Abby Huth, Amina Shams, y Cadence Lane.
Buenas noches, Consejo. Soy Abby.
Y soy Cadence, y esto es lo que hemos estado haciendo en Grado Oak este mes.
Nuestra fiesta de la llegada fue un éxito con tantos juegos divertidos, participación de los estudiantes y alta audiencia en nuestro juego de fútbol. El patrocinador de la cheer, Gianna Mora, y socio Jake Hannah fueron anunciados como la reina y el rey de Hoco.
Nuestra danza de la llegada invitó a más de 2,300 estudiantes con cinco carreras de carnaval, karaoke, múltiples fotoboots. Vendors y nuestro DJ este año tocaron algunos tunecos realmente geniales.
El 9 de septiembre tuvimos el privilegio de honrar a nueve individuos extraordinarios como la ceremonia de la inducción de la Halla de la Fama. Atletas, administradores, y coaches fueron reconocidos por sus duraderas contribuciones a nuestra escuela y su legado en y fuera del campo.
Nuestra primera carrera grande comenzó donde los maestros y estudiantes tienen la oportunidad de encontrar a otros estudiantes en la campus y disfrutar del almuerzo juntos en el patio senior. Estudiantes aleatorios se unen para foster nuevas conexiones y disfrutar juntos.
También tuvimos Club Rush esta semana. Todos nuestros clubes pudieron salir y compartir lo que apoyan y hacen por Grado Oak. Muchos estudiantes obtuvieron su participación en la campus.
Nuestros líderes de la escuela presentaron la Asamblea de ser el único en las escuelas elementarias, Lyseno y Paba.
Comenzaron su papel de amabilidad y van a unirse al carnaval de primavera.
Los líderes de la escuela organizaron un suicidio... Peer leaders hosted a suicide awareness week, Because Nice Matters Week. We are also excited for our Culture Fest, where throughout the month, different cultures are highlighted and honored. Hispanic Heritage Month was a great example of this and Deaf Awareness Month was a great, was great too, with tons of lunchtime activities.
How have you been the one this month? Our Great Oak students have been working on being the one to pick up trash around campus. We encourage everyone this month to try to be the one. Shout out to our cross-country teams, who just traveled to New York to race the McQuaid Invitational. The boys won and the girls came in third, behind a team ranked eighth in the nation. Going to these national races keep our cross-country teams in discussions for national rankings and help our athletes with stress as postseason comes near.
Thank you and enjoy the video.
Thank you, Great Oak. And from TV, we have Megan Hammond and Kenzie McMcGinn.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Yes, she's got it. There's been a lot going on at TV in the last month. We're very excited to share a few highlights. I'm Megan.
And I'm Kenzie. Our athletic teams are on fire. Both our girls tennis team and our girls volleyball teams are undefeated in league. Our volleyball team is presently ranked number 12th in California. Last week, Savannah Sheridan, a senior on the team, earned her 1,000th career kill. Yesterday, our flag football team had their first home game with a big win over Marietta Valley, putting us at first place in league. It's been a great season for the team, bringing together athletes from a bunch of different sports in this inaugural year. We're three and one in league with a good chance to move on to playoffs.
We've had tons of exciting activities with our ninth grade class. At the beginning of the year, as our upperclassmen, golden guide mentors, have been hosting activities and discussions during the school day. We gathered the entire class a couple of weeks ago for some different throwback games in the stadium. It was hot, like Florida muggy hot. But the groups were, had fun playing along and getting to know each other. We also hold it, hosted a tailgate barbecue before our second football game.
Bringing the class of 29 together has made a difference. They've been amazing participants and shown a lot of school spirit. This year, we've got a class competition called The Hunt, with each grade striving to be the best and most spirited class of the year. Each grade earns points by attending events, winning rally games, and joining clubs and teams. The ninth graders have already moved into a strong lead.
Next week, we have our Homecoming Week. Well, we'll see if the freshmen can keep their league with lots of opportunities to participate in Spirit Days and compete at our Hoco Rally. We're really excited about the 2025 Golden Games Homecoming, based on the Huggin' Games. We're wearing camo at our home football game and honoring the amazing tributes on Homecoming Court.
Megan is one of our senior nominees, representing District 12. Next week is a busy week with Homecoming and the Riverside County-wide college and career kickoff. Throughout the day, all students will be attending workshops to set goals and hear about the many, many options for our future. Our ninth and 10th graders will be attending a TED Talk-style event with presentations from a couple students, a few staff members, and a couple amazing members of our community.
We seniors also get to take our senior panoramic photo. On Thursday, TV is celebrating Custodian Appreciation Day. Our custodial team does an amazing job keeping campus clean and helping ASB with so many of the events we host on campus. We're really proud of our custodians and can't thank them enough.
Last week, we just finished our first intermural of the year, a Spikeball tournament. We had close to 15 teams competing. Congrats Brody Schumacher and Timothy Miller for winning the whole thing. That's just one of the many things going on at lunch each week, with music Monday, with music every Monday, cornhole every Wednesday, and Friday competitions.
Thank you so much for letting us share. Go Bears!
Thank you, TV. And now from Rancho Vista, we have a video from students. If you're watching this, please correct me, but it's Gina Amunonse and Sofia Angulo.
Good evening, board members and cabinet. I am Gina Amunonse.
And I'm Sofia Angulo.
We are from Rancho Vista High School, where we are delighted to share the great things happening around campus to ensure student success.
We kicked off the first quarter with many activities to bond as a school. This was a great way to assist new students to adjust to our school and meet new people before classes start and the hard work kicks in.
In August, we had frames so all the students could take a photo for their first day and for the seniors' last first day.
We celebrated Team Colors, which is where all classes would wear their team colors to earn points, as well as giving out Otter Pops and a lunch event, where students were able to get a cup of ice and fill them with their desired flavors for snow cones. Lastly, we had class colors for Pop-Up Spirit Day, which was all staff, seniors, and juniors wore a different color to earn points.
This month, we have done Team Color Tuesday, Club Rush, where all students get to pick a club. For example, Financial Club, Art Club, Movie Club, Theater Club, and Fishing Club. And as well as Minga Store, where kids were able to rack up points to spend it on prizes. Lastly, our Back to School Night, where students were able to bring their families to show off their school and talk to teachers and staff.
And lastly, we would like to welcome our new Rancho staff members. Ms. Loza, our ELA specialist. Ms. Shannon, our counseling clerk. And Ms. Contreras, our social worker.
That's it for today. Thank you for your time. Soar with style, Eagles!
All right. Now it's time to recognize the important school organizations that support our students and staff every day. From our Teachers Association, we have President Edgar Diaz.
Good evening, Board and staff. Happy, was it, almost ready October, right? It's kind of like that part of the year where we're all getting ready into our routines and moving along. I just came back from teaching my student, or my student driver, I should say, my fourth son, fourth driver, driving around Temecula, getting ready for that driver's test. Feeling pretty comfortable about it now. I don't feel stressed about it anymore as I did. I think it's pretty similar to our teaching time right now. We were all stressed at the beginning of the year. Now we're getting into routines and schedules and we think everyone's kind of getting used to the environment that's there. And so that's kind of what, a lot of what our teachers are feeling right now and kind of moving into. I just was bringing about some of the information that's brought to us by our membership. We're going to be sending out a survey to collect information from all our TBA members about technology integration and the implementation that's done in the classroom, not only software, but hardware. We're hearing a lot about, a lot of hiccups happening within classrooms on how different, the district server is blocking out different sites. So even though they develop lessons or they're taking something from like UC Scout that provides additional curriculum for students in high school, those particular links or the embedded items are blocked out, creating headaches for not only students, but also the teachers in the classroom who are trying to teach those lessons throughout the day. So that survey is going to give us information as far as what are areas we need to focus on and be able to bring that back to TVUSD to help improve that, the delivery that we have in the classrooms for that. Also, I attended the TVUSD Safety Team that composed of like administration, classified, and certificated as well. It reported there were 10 incidents of violence against employees by either students, parents, or guests. We got some more input coming in from our office, so we were going to send out the Workplace Violence Prevention Form to all certificated employees to make sure we can record what is actually happening. That was 10 incidents just from the beginning of this year. We know that we're also starting out a Special Education Students Deserve 100% Initiative to try to advocate for situations in the classroom that are safe and effective for teachers to be able to lay out the instruction and for students to be able to learn there as well. We also know that with higher class sizes, we also get some situations that become unsafe, where there's not enough staffing there and we have way too many students and staff in one particular classroom that creates situations that can be unsafe for students and for staff as well. So that's some, just something we were looking at because some of our members are really looking into lowering class sizes in special education classrooms, creating safe environments for them so that they can be able to teach and for the students to be able to learn everything they can from their individual education plans. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And from our Classified Employees Association, we have Administrator Ruby Alvado and President Jennifer Crum. All right. Well, that's it. Thank you all for the work that you do to keep our school strong. Do we have any student comments at this time?
Next is the consent calendar. We have two public comments on the consent calendar.
Okay. First up is Upniet, followed by Rosie.
Good evening. I am here talking on Consent Calendar item number 31. I have serious concerns about approving this legal services contract under the consent calendar. Remember, we postponed this item not once, but twice in the past to thoroughly review it before approving the current contract in March. This agreement locks the district in a five-year term with guaranteed annual increases that are far exceed the cost of living adjustments projected for our own teachers. For context, teacher's COLA in the current budget ranges between 1 and 3.4% and is projected only through 2028. Meanwhile, this contract guarantees legal counsel increases of 5 to 6% each year, nearly double the rate, and continues till through 2030. They say a picture speaks a thousand words. Just for reference, this is what we are offering the law firm and this is what we are offering the teachers right down here. And this right here is where all of you presently, your contract or your term ends. And we are giving them a contract up till two more years, for five years. That's what we're signing up for. And the difference is stark. And keep in mind, you might be replaced sooner, but the lawyer's contract locks in these increases. Approving this contract now is fiscally irresponsible. None of us sitting here today will necessarily be accountable, but it is still in effect. Yet, we are obligating future boards and taxpayers to escalating costs during a period of economic uncertainty and ongoing deficit spending. This is not responsible use of public funds. When the district is cutting programs, deferring maintenance, and asking employees to do more with less, it is simply unethical to lock in long-term increases for outside counsel so far out of proportion to what we provide our own staff. Presenting this on the consent calendar without discussion only adds to the appearance of impropriety. At minimum, this item should be pulled for full board debate. At worst, it raises serious questions about governance and stewardship of our taxpayer dollars. Trustees are entrusted with the public's trust to manage taxpayers' dollars responsibly, not to act as cultural arbiters or self-appointed moral warriors. Stewardship means protecting the future, not mortgaging it for comfort today. And one final lesson that I pass along to my daughter when handling other people's money: Don't write a check with other people's money that you won't write with your own. Thank you.
Rosie, next.
So I would like, and so shocked that I felt the need to come down here and address you.
Hold on, point of order, one second. Is this on the consent calendar?
This is a public comment.
Oh, that's at the end of the...
That's at the end.
Okay.
I'll put that at the very end. Okay. We'll just move that to the end. I moved to approve consent items one through 31 that were not pulled, which none of them were pulled. Do we have, yeah, we did at the beginning. I asked if there were any consent items to pull. Do you remember when I asked if there was any consent items to pull?
So I didn't specifically pull an item, but with Upniet bringing that up with number 31, I would actually like to weigh in with some commentary. It was interesting to see this on with a five-year, and I think actually she's right. I agree with the fact there should be an open conversation. In fact, I would even advocate for maybe it being a two-year. I think, I like who we're working with at this time, and I know they're a great firm. However, I think a five-year is odd. I would be more comfortable with two at this point, to consider other data and some other things moving forward.
The reason that it's on there with a five is because last time they were terminated. It affected a lot of areas in the district. Can I ask Dr. Woods if I could ask the cabinet? The Special Ed Department was affected and the Negotiations Department was affected. And it was more catastrophic to not have them. So that's why their term is five.
I'd like to say we also usually approve these on an annual basis. All contracts. They come in June. We have multi-year contracts, but they still come back to the board annually, every June, for board approval.
They're not on the June rotation?
Correct. They're expired in November, I think.
November. So that's why it's on for November. And I actually asked them to extend it for the benefit of the district because the Special Ed was affected. And the negotiations was adversely affected.
I don't think that actually was the case. We had a very specific reason as to why we let this firm go prior. With the people that we hired, we had some clear communication about bringing them back onboard and why. So at this point, I think we may have a different board in 2026. I think they should reevaluate this. I think a two-year is sufficient. I'm not comfortable with five.
Can I speak? I'll go after you. Go ahead. I have never seen anything like this. And I've seen a lot of boards in my experience as an educator. I have never seen an attorney being given a five-year contract. It's reckless. What it does, it's going to lock future boards into working with this firm, and they may not want to work with this firm. And in addition to that, you're not able to negotiate the rates that are in the rate schedule. You're locked into that and you're not able to, you know, depending on what's going on, maybe lower the rates. So, you know, I'm not going to approve this contract. And in addition to that, I don't think that this firm has given us very good advice. I mean, based on what took place with the amicus brief and taking everything back into closed session, where, you know, my attorney said that it should have been done in open session and the fact that the document pertaining to the whole, to the whole motion wasn't even made for, wasn't even brought forward to the public so that the public could engage in the document. I mean, there's lots of issues. You know, it's not just Bob Tyler and advocates of faith and freedom with this, but AALRO, is that what it is? Adelson, AALRO, they were involved in how we adjudicated this motion with the amicus brief. So I don't feel we've gotten very good advice. A five-year contract is reckless. It is totally and completely reckless for the reason that I just gave. And I will not be voting for it this way.
I have to agree with Emil. When I received the information about the special board meeting, I was looking for the brief. What are we voting for? And I didn't see it. How can we vote to support an amicus brief that we haven't seen? And then when I saw it, there were things in it that had nothing to do with what they told us it was about. The first line was not about what they said it was about. It was about something else. And so I think that not only is that... And so I think that not only is that reckless, I think it's ill-informed when you're supposed to represent the board to put us in a position to vote for something when we haven't even seen it. So I would recommend keeping this contract through December when we reorganize and then move on in that, at that time, to decide whether we want to keep them on. I certainly would like to see an RFP, which is the way we hire attorneys. Not just do it willy-nilly.
I really like Diedrich and DeMarco from this law firm. I have full faith and confidence when I work with them, and I think they're good for the board and the district. I'm under the impression, though, that the contracts are on a yearly basis that expire at the end of June and then renewed July 1st. And so I'm under the impression, just one-year contracts. So one to two years, fine with me, because a good law firm, they prove themselves, you just re-up their contract every June. That's the way this works. But what I am for is moving them to being, you know, it just seems like the board president, you're using them more than our general legal counsel, so you might want to consider moving them into general legal counsel. Just saying. Huff is our general legal counsel now.
So can I get consensus if we have this pulled and then bring it back for two to three years? Do you want to do that? The reason that I asked for an... So they're not on a June schedule, they're on, we need to renew this by November or we lose our contract with this firm?
I'm fine.
So we could bring it back at the next meeting? And then I recommend a two to three year. The reason that I asked for an extended contract is because of the special ed department and the attorney that works with them. And also, I think that we're going to have more continuity if we stick with Bill Diedrich with the negotiations.
Can't we vote right now, rather than bringing it back in November?
Do they need to rewrite it?
I don't believe they would need to rewrite it. I think you guys can decide right now if you'd like to do a two or a three-year contract, and they can revise.
I'm good for two.
I'm good for two.
Okay, so we'll do, the motion is, let's make a motion to revise the contract for two years. Do I have a second?
Second.
And then we'll discuss that, that motion.
We just discussed it.
We could do a post-motion discussion.
It's fine.
We just, you want to discuss it again for two years?
You can do a post-motion discussion, so it's fine.
So may I start? Because I think we each commented. So I just want to say I'm thankful for the attorneys we've worked with. I think they've done an outstanding job, and I want the community to be assured that we, I, have full faith and trust in what they've done in terms of the amicus brief and so forth. I don't know how many of you were in the special meeting, but there were two gentlemen that were not, who have spoken negatively about it, so that makes a difference. I'm confident with what we did in making that decision, and I think a two-year contract is viable. But I do recognize the public comment that was made. I think five years is too long. So I'm in agreement there. I think this is a good compromise, and continuity is important, but two's reasonable.
I do apologize for having to take my wife for surgery last Wednesday. So that was more important to me than being at the special meeting. And I really, really wish people would stop impugning other people's motives without knowing what's going on. It's insulting, it's degrading.
Okay, point of order, Mr. Schwartz.
I'm not done, I'm not done.
No, but point of order, we're talking about the two-year contract.
Yes, no, I, no, I am against the two-year contract. One year is plenty.
Okay.
Yeah, you should call point of order on her.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? As a routine, we often have five-year contracts. All that does is it guarantees us rates for a certain amount of time. You'll notice number 29 is an execution of an extension of a contract. Our standard practice is to always bring them back annually, even if they're a three, four, or five-year contract. If you approve a two-year contract tonight, am I taking Atkinson-Adelson out of that annual approval? I will still bring back the rest of the attorney firms every June, and I will hold off re-agendizing the, as our standard practice, Atkinson-Adelson next year, and wait two years before I agendize it? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand the direction.
That's the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Standard practice is to review attorney contracts on an annual basis. And I don't want to get into it because it's personal, but this firm was terminated for That is why they were terminated. And there is a reason why, that they were terminated for non-performance, and it's personal with regard to the firm, and I'm not going to get into it, but I'm saying we need to do this. I don't have a problem with these two guys, okay? I mean, I do and I don't. I do, I have a problem with what their involvement was in terms of the amicus brief, because their Brown Act specialist was brought into play, and their Brown Act specialist screwed up. He's not competent, okay? So at the end of the day, we need to look at this firm for the reasons that I've said on an annual basis, just like we do everything else. And it's not going to hurt us to do that.
So...
That's my, yeah. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we do, that we look at this firm on an annual basis.
We already have a motion on the table.
Okay, so let's vote on it.
Wait, I just, everyone got to comment. I wanted to ask if you guys could just explain how it affects the special ed department when we cancel. And I want to clarify, it's 200, over 250 attorneys, that we have two that we see, but there are numerous attorneys minus one. There's one attorney that we don't work with from this firm.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. When this firm was originally with us and then was questioned and up for termination or their contract for non-renewal, Special Education did put in a special request to maintain at least a couple of the attorneys with this firm, because we do build relationships with our attorneys, and they get to know our students and our families and our cases. And we do have some ongoing cases in our district where having a singular attorney work with us throughout the years, not only does it provide a cost savings, but it's actually mutually beneficial for us as well as our families that we're working with because of those relationships and understandings that grow. So my advocacy is always going to come from the attorneys that we know of that work well with us and our staff and our families.
What is the name of the attorney that does our special ed? Do you remember?
We have many. I'm going to reference one by his first name, and that's Jack. And that was specifically one of the ones that we requested to retain. He's amazing. And this law firm has done well through special education with us.
Okay.
So I'd like to make an amendment.
I think Dr. Velez, yeah, Dr. Velez had a comment real quick.
I just wanted to comment very quickly, and I know this is probably well-known by the board, but our attorneys that we work with specialize in certain areas. So when Ms. Dais talks about Jack, he specializes specifically in special education. That is pretty much the only work that he does. So I think that's an important consideration when we're looking at consistency of cases. We cannot just work with any attorney on special education law. IDEA law is very different than facilities or any other area.
So I respect that. I respect your input. So I'd like to make an amendment that we utilize this firm for special education for two years, and for anything else, it would be one year on an annual basis for all other things outside of special ed. I think that that's reasonable. Do I have a second?
Didn't we already have a motion on the floor?
The board president is running the meeting.
So we need to vote on that.
Mr. Barham, you're not, the board president's running the meeting. Let her take the motion that was originally there and see if we could amend it. Let's just slow it down. Everybody's jumping in. That's what I think.
So we have an amendment to extend it for two years. And Mr. Barham wants to amend the amendment for two years for special ed only. So does anyone want to go along with, is there any seconds?
Yes, no.
No.
Okay, so there's not consensus, Mr. Barham? Again, I'm open for two to three, but if you guys are sure you want to, okay. So there was a motion for two years and a second?
Schwartz?
No.
Weirisma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student?
I would like to pass my vote on this one.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we'll go ahead, and was there any, I did ask if we were going to pull any consent items, and I was surprised that nobody pulled any consent items at approval to the agenda. So I move to approve consent items 1 through 30. Do I have a second?
Second.
Laney?
Schwartz? I'm sorry, Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirisma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. So the motion, oh, yes, thank you, Melissa. The motion is adopted unanimously. I move to approve consent item 31 with the two-year contract. Laney? Oh, do I have a second?
We already voted.
Oh, we did vote on it? Okay. Need extra help tonight. I have to read this whole thing. I didn't bring my glasses tonight, so I'm going to have someone do the readouts that has their glasses on. The contract for assistant superintendent in the script...
I'll read it.
You choose.
Okay, so let me just start with the motion. I move to approve the employment agreement for Dr. Kimberly Velez to serve as the superintendent effectively January 1, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Ready? Effective January 1, 2017, pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3, before taking final action on an employment agreement for a local agency, executive, or a salary or benefit increase for a current local agency executive, the board must provide an oral summary of the salary and/or fringe benefits for local agency executives. Local agency executive is defined by Government Code Section 3511.1, Subdivision D1 through 3, as the chief executive officer, a deputy chief executive officer, or an assistant chief executive officer of the local agency. In our district, we consider the superintendent, assistant superintendents, and any other administrators and managers who are department heads and/or employed by an individual contract. For consideration of the board tonight is a contract for an individual who is a local agency executive within the meaning of the law. Accordingly, for the contract, we will read the following information into the record: The position of the local agency executive: Superintendent. The term of the new renewed or amended employment agreement between the district and the executive; the new salary to be paid to the executive; and any other elements of compensation listed in the contract, such as TSA contributions, health and welfare benefits, car mileage stipend, cellphone allowance, and any other district-paid benefits. Accordingly, we provide the following: The Temecula Valley Unified School District has offered Dr. Kimberly Velez the position Subject to the terms and conditions of an employment contract commencing January 1, 2026, Dr. Velez's salary is to be paid $349,904, subject to potential increases in the future, and Dr. Velez shall be entitled to 12 days of leave of absence for illness or injury with full pay. Dr. Velez may accrue and accumulate sick pay as allowed by the Education Code. Dr. Velez shall be entitled to 24 working days of vacation with pay in addition to holidays as defined in Section 37220 of the Education Code. Dr. Velez shall be entitled to mileage reimbursement for district travel in her personal vehicle according to district policy and IRS regulations. Dr. Velez, the district shall reimburse Dr. Velez for all actual and necessary expenses incurred by her within the school of her employment in accordance with applicable district policy. The district shall pay Dr. Velez's annual memberships in the Association of California School Administrators and any other organization approved by the board. Dr. Velez shall be afforded all of the health and welfare benefits of employment, which are granted to the district's administrative personnel, including the district's health, vision, and dental insurance plans, except as authorized, except as otherwise set forth in this agreement. The district shall pay on behalf of the superintendent all necessary premiums for a term life insurance policy in the amount of $500,000. Superintendent shall select a beneficiary or beneficiaries entitled to the $500,000 of insurance proceeds. Dr. Velez, upon separation or retirement for the district, may continue enrollment in the district's health plan at her own expense. Once the compensation summary is completed for the executive, the board may take final action and open it session to approve the compensation or contract.
There was a motion and a second? Any discussions?
I just want to make a comment, and I can't really go into the details because it involves some things behind closed doors, but I wanted to publicly thank you, Dr. Velez, for taking into account some of my thoughts and suggestions regarding the contract, and we'll leave it at that, because I talked to someone who gave me some insight, and it immediately brought such deep respect for me, for you. Not that I didn't have it, because it was there, but it's such an important role to lead this district forward. And when this person shared that with me, it gave me peace and contentment in knowing you've, you've been here for a long time. I think there are things you've learned along the way from Dr. Woods, from this board, and I know you have a desire to see us go in, in a good direction and to get better, and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to publicly thank you for that. And we know that you will have great success.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Velez.
We're going to make the motion.
We already did make it.
Excuse me. Did we vote on it? Nope. We didn't vote on it, that's what I'm saying.
Laney Culver. Schwartz?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Weirisma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. So honored.
I move to approve the employment agreement for Nicole Dais to serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Support Services effective January 1, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second, then a comment. Having been here for five years and worked with everyone who's in the cabinet, I can say what I told Dr. Woods when he was hired. We are fortunate to have these fine people: Mr. Arce, Mrs. Lash, Mrs. Dais, and of course, Mrs. Velez. And I'm so happy for you, Nicole, that you are moving on up, and I know you're always there when I have a question. You're there for our kids and our parents, and I have deep respect for you and soon-to-be Dr. Dais, which is great. Congratulations.
Just say the same thing. Congratulations, Mrs. Dais, soon-to-be Dr. Dais. I did the same thing with Dr. Velez. Before she was doctor, you got to pump it up. And I know Frank Arce...
Okay. All right. Effective January 1, 2017, pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3, before taking final action on an employment agreement for a local agency executive or a salary or benefit increase for a current local agency executive, the board must provide an oral summary of the salary and/or fringe benefits for local agency executives. Local agency executive is defined by Government Code Section 3511.1, Subdivision D1 through 3, as the chief executive officer, a deputy chief, a deputy chief executive officer, or an assistant chief executive officer of the local agency. In our district, we consider the superintendent, assistant superintendents, and any other administrators and managers who are department heads and/or employed by an individual contract. For consideration of the board tonight is a contract for an individual who is a local agency executive within the meaning of the law. Accordingly, for the contract, we will read the following information into the record:
Accordingly, for the contract, we will read the following information into the record. The position of the local agency executive, assistant superintendent. The term of the new renewed or amended employment contract between the district and the executive. The new salary to be paid to the executive and any other elements of compensation listed in the contract, such as TSA contributions, health and welfare benefits, car mileage stipends, cellphone allowance, and any other district-paid benefits. Accordingly, we provide the following information. The Temecula Valley Unified School District has offered to employ Nicole, uh, Nicole Davis as assistant superintendent of Educational Support Services, subject to the terms and conditions of an employment contract commencing January first, twenty twenty-six. Mrs. Davis's salary is to be paid two hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars, subject to potential increases in the future, and Mrs. Davis shall be entitled to twelve days of leave of absence for illness or injury with full pay. Mrs. Davis may accrue and accumulate sick, sick pay as allowed by the Education Code. Mrs. Davis shall be entitled to twenty-two working days of vacation with pay in addition to holidays as defined in Section three seven two two zero of the Education Code. Mrs. Davis shall be entitled to mileage reimbursement for district travel in her personal vehicle according to district policy and IRS regulations. The district shall reimburse Mrs. Davis for all actual and necessary expenses incurred by her within the school of her employment in accordance with applicable district policy. The district shall pay Mrs. Davis's annual memberships in the Association of California School Administrators and any other organization approved by the board. Mrs. Davis's, Mrs. Davis shall be afforded all of the health and welfare benefits of employment, which are granted to the district's administrative personnel, including the district's health, vision, and dental insurance plans, except as otherwise set forth in this agreement. The district shall pay on behalf of the assistant superintendent all necessary premiums for a term life insurance policy in the amount of- Yeah, is this right?
No, it's two hundred.
Yeah, in the amount, sorry, guys. In the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The assistant superintendent shall select a beneficiary or beneficiaries entitled to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of insurance proceeds. Once this compensation summary is completed for the executive, the board may take final action and open session to approve the compensation or the contract.
Linay?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Comroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Next in action. I move to proceed with the nomination and the election of a vice clerk, board advisory committee liaison, and to reorganize the parental rights subcommittee. Do I have a second?
Second.
One public comment.
We have one public comment. Okay.
Jennifer San Nicholas?
Okay.
I have a comment before we start.
Um, before you comment, I have to, so I submitted this, so I get to introduce it. Okay. So I have three minutes to talk about it, but I won't need all three minutes. Um, I keep talking about board members working together and breaking up the teams, and I think that's why I'm in the position I am is because I tend to vote based on what I feel like is best at the time and not join teams, and that sometimes makes people angry at me. I want Mr. Schwartz, I think he's been on the board a long time, and I would like to see him have a position. So I, I want to nominate you as vice clerk and board advisory committee. And that being said, um, the parental rights subcommittee hasn't met, and I think that it worked well when I worked with Dr. Comroski on the, um, the privacy policy. I just feel like that worked better for the community to have two different perspectives. So I want to reorganize the parental rights subcommittee and have Dr. Comroski work on the two flag, the flag policy and the other policy. Those will be my suggestions. Do I have comment?
Can we take them one at a time? Meaning split the-
Do you want me to split the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my request.
So let's have comment, and then at the very end, I'll split the motion for a vote. Can we do that?
All right, so I have a comment now.
Okay.
Because I had asked that we, since this was going to be on there, that we look at all the subcommittees again, because I wanna reorganize some other ones.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda, so we have to put it on the next agenda.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, I already know if I ask the attorney, he's gonna say it's not agendized to reorganize all the subcommittees, that we, we can agendize that next, next time, because then the board, the public would have needed time to prepare and comment on the reorganization of all the subcommittees. Do you want me to text? Do you want me to text him and verify?
No, you don't have to do that, but we can also vote, take a motion and vote, and if we get two-thirds, okay? Because it's not a big deal, okay? We're just gonna org, reorganize like you're gonna reorganize your parental subcommittee. I just wanna reorganize a couple of other ones.
Let me just check with the attorney then, so we don't get another Brown Act.
Yeah.
Well, first, let me see, does anybody else wanna reorganize all the subcommittees, or should we do that next time?
I just have one that I wanna reorganize.
We have to have it on the agenda.
Well, we can by two-thirds vote, if you know your Roberts Rules of Order like you say you do.
I'm, I'm gonna-
We can, we can do it.
I'm gonna take your-
If we get two-thirds of a vote in a motion, we can put a non-agendized item on the agenda, and it's a small item.
That's actually not true. It has to be an emergency.
All right.
We do have a list, list of subcommittees here, so given that we're having a list of subcommittees, it is possible to reorganize them because they are agendized.
They are there.
It's not a Brown Act violation at all, just-
You guys wanna reorganize all the subcommittees? Do I have more consensus?
We can start with the two that we're voting on.
Okay, let's start with the two.
I think, I mean-
Let's start with these two, and then we'll go down the subcommittee list. So, um, I made the motion, I'll, I'll motion to elect Steve Schwartz as vice clerk, board advisory committee liaison.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
So my comment to that, and it may not make a difference, but I would love to throw my hat in the ring and actually motion to be that person instead of Mr. Schwartz. So however you wanna speak to that, that's something that I would like to do.
I actually think that there is an opportunity for all the board members to have roles, and I don't wanna deny you that opportunity, but right now I wanna give it to Mr. Schwartz. And then in the future, when we do the reorganization, I would like to see other people step up and take leadership roles besides me. So just know that, like, I, it's not that I'm, I, I just wanna keep, I want Mr. Schwartz to have an opportunity. So he, he hasn't, and he's been here a while. Any other comment? Okay, so Linay, will you?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I'm gonna guess Mr. Schwartz is gonna get voted in. I'm not against you in this position, I'm against the position itself, only 'cause last meeting I said I thought it was overly bureaucratic, so just know that.
So is there any other comment regarding the board advisory committee and the position?
Call the question.
Board advisory committee, your question, okay. Linay?
Schwartz? Oh, sorry. Schwartz?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and my vote is yes.
Weirzma?
No.
Comroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
The motion passes three to two. The next motion is to reorganize the parental rights subcommittee, and I would like to, um, my idea would be to remove Mr. Barham and put Dr. Comroski on there for the reason that I gave previously. I, I do think with the previous policy, having the different perspectives from Dr. Comroski and myself is better. Do I have a second for that?
Second, I, I wanna discuss.
Okay.
So the, I have no problem with this motion. What I have a problem with, or what I will have a problem with, is at the end of the day, when the neutral classroom policy comes out, my name better be on it, because I'm the one who introduced it.
You mean like the letter D grade that you took from me, hypocrite? I'm gonna call you out, dude.
Okay, point of order.
My name better be on it? Why don't you apply that to the thing that I introduced? See, no, 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 you don't get it both ways, buddy.
We're gonna redo all the subcommittees, so-
There you go.
Point of order. So I have a-
It is unbelievable, and I call you out.
Okay, point of order. I have a motion and a second. Linay, will you call room?
I'm sorry, there was never a D policy discussed, dude.
Yeah, dude, I'm the one who agendized you.
Schwartz?
No, no, hold on, I have discussion too.
Who cares?
I have discussion.
Wait, just a minute.
You seem to care.
I don't.
You're the one that said my name better be on it.
You didn't put forth-
So this discussion-
You didn't put forth-
Point of order?
This isn't your meeting audience, this is ours, thank you.
You didn't put forth any policy regarding the D. I put forth a-
So this, let's get, there, isn't there a committee for D grade? We can address it then?
I put forth a policy, and I expect my name to be on it.
Ooh. Ooh.
Okay.
All right, Dr. Anderson, here's the thing, though. We need, we need clarity, so I need discussion from you. There's a parental notification committee. In that committee, is it specifically bifurcated into neutral classroom and sensitive topics with students?
No.
Because this is, okay, then what is it exactly? Because those two policies are out there, Emile's referring to one of them and/or both, and then you're talking about parental notification, which is it? Because this is rush, it has to be slowed down very clear.
We titled the committee parental notification, but I feel like the committee is not, this committee is not parental notification. This is, has to do with the two policies that were sunshining. There's two ideas.
I agree.
One is sensitive topics, and that was my idea, and-
That is correct.
And so that can be present, we talked about it before, about conversations that teachers have with students that are not appropriate. Those are sensitive topics, so-
That is correct.
There, the, the thing is, the sky's the limit. Like, there's no policy in place, and we've asked the teachers' union to look at these ideas and get back to us. Nothing has been done for months, and Mr. Barham and I haven't met or talked since January, February or something, so-
And that is correct. Those two policies were not part of the parental notification committee.
So we can call it a different committee, we could call it the flag committee.
Can I finish? Okay, 'cause you're doing it-
You know, I was the one talking, Mr. Barham.
Actually, it's his, it's his time, and he asked me a question. Mr. Barham, point of order, Joseph, ask me a question.
Use the gavel, Dr. Anderson, he's not listening to you.
I'm done.
There you go, well, then go into the audience, like you did last meeting.
I'm done. I went in, I went in for a reason.
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna ask.
No, I, I have a-
This is gonna be a really hard meeting, and I'm gonna thank everyone on the board that helps me call point of order. It's gonna be really tiring for me to get through this. So, Mr. Barham, Dr. Comroski asked me a question, I was answering.
I got, I got two minutes, though, and I wanna use that with you.
Okay.
Okay, so we can have a conversation, you can start my clock. I'm a firm believer in ownership. I'm a firm believer that you and Emile literally should finish this out, because I was against it from the beginning. I feel like I'm being inserted in, because maybe there's nothing been done. Me and Mrs. Weirzma tried to tell you that you don't negotiate with the union, they're gonna stall you. That is what we're looking at now, seven months. That is what I believe. Now, maybe I don't know, because I'm not in the committee, I'm not in collective bar, I don't, I don't know, right? My thought is, is why don't you and Emile finish this out? Why do you want me in? I know you said old guard, new guard, okay, but that would have been done earlier in the year. So my question is, what is it about me that you want me in the committee with you and not Emile? Has the ball been dropped somehow? Because I am a firm believer that you two should take ownership. I might consider joining, but I need to know why.
You know, to be honest, I think the public perception is going to hurt having anything good come of this. Because the previous policy, I think that the teams that we have set up on the board, they don't work, and we need a better balance, and that's why I support Mr. Schwartz having a role. So for me, it's that I think that we'll have more success if we don't work in these teams and these teams. And, and that's honestly, so it's up to you if you wanna participate or not. I feel like it is, sunshining is not an easy process, but it's something new that we're doing, and I would like you to be open to looking at where we're going. It's not, it's not often done by any school districts. Because of the PERB case, we decided to try the sunshining. I think we'll get a more robust and a more legally sound policy if we do, if we participate in the sunshining process. But it's up to you, if you don't wanna participate, you don't have to.
Can I, can I say something to him? The only thing that was in parental notification, the committee, the only thing that was there was fleshing out all the parental notification policies that we debated in those four or five iterations. That's all that was done in that committee. And then Dr. Anderson suspended it. And she suspended it so she could have collaboration with you on the, on the, the policies that you brought forward and the policies that Mrs. Weirzma brought forward. That's all that's ever been done in that committee, so-
Right, but you're saying your name, you want your name on it. On what part? The neutral classroom that you didn't have yet, or what?
Because those policies are not part of the parental notification. The way that Dr. Anderson was just bringing it forward when she, and you were talking about the flag policy and all of those things, the flag policy is integrated into the neutral classroom policy, which is not part of the parental notification committee.
Right.
It's separate, so there's-
So I wouldn't be working on a neutral classroom policy, would I? Or not? Because you want your name on that, and I'm like, well, you brought it forward, and I'm, I'm all about that. So I'm trying to figure out, what am I being asked to do, parental notification?
There's nothing in there right now, as far as I know. There's nothing in there to be worked on right now. So you're starting from scratch, so anything that comes about in terms of parental notification, you would work with Dr. Anderson on that.
I know, so here's my confusion, though. Are you saying that the umbrella is parental notification, and under the umbrella is neutral classroom and sensitive? Okay, that's what I thought. So I wouldn't be working on neutral classroom with you or sensitive topic?
Can I clarify?
Yes, I'm really wanting that.
Back in January, when they're, all, all of us put information on the flag policy, after we had rescinded everything with PERB, we formed a committee, and we called it Parental Rights and Notification Committee. And then we talked about old school and new school, and we kinda went back and forth over who was gonna do this. And so Emile and I put ourselves on that committee. After that, I took the information from the flag policy previously, and then I took the information from, so then, this is how the neutral classroom idea came about. Like, how do we redo this in a way that will work in our district? So I took your flag policy, and I also took your board policy on, what is it, what's the one?
Controversial issues.
Controversial issues. And I entered them into ChatGPT, and I asked, like, can we come up with something that would create a flag policy and a neutral classroom policy? And then from there, I asked for people's feedback, just people like in the community, what do you think of this? And we kinda talked about it a little bit in closed session. And then we opened the sunshining, and so there's really no policy except like what I put into ChatGPT as an idea. Like, could we marry these? My idea was, could we marry these two ideas to create a neutral classroom? Because I liked the controversial topics, and I thought it could. But at this point, that's as far as we've gone, and it's really just been, those are the exact steps. Nothing has been, nothing has been done besides, and I'll point out, Dr. Comroski, besides, if, if you look at what I've been, what I pulled out of chat, it is the language from the controversial topics married with the flag policy. And that's the idea of where I think this could go, but I want the teachers' union to also look at that and say, is, like, how can we do this so that we can have neutral classrooms?
I'm open to it, but I'm also open to whatever work we've done. If Mr. Barham has contributed to it, he gets full credit, I'm all about that. Our little tango earlier, we're just, we just, we're having it on the dais, whatever. I'm open to that, but I just wanted to be clear on exactly what I would be doing it. And the reason I would say yes is because there is activism in the classroom, and there are families that want things out of the classroom, but they can't have it out because we don't have a policy. I'm willing to step in the gap and help, whatever help I can.
You should, you should step into the gap.
Do you and Mr. Barham wanna work on it? I can send you all my ChatGPT information that I've-
But, you know, I wanna-
I would love to work with Dr. Comroski.
Okay.
I'd like to throw my hat in the ring again.
I wanna, I wanna clarify something, though. As far, I wanna clarify something in terms of your- As far, I want to clarify something in terms of your, your ChatGPT stuff. Mr. Arce and I worked extensively on those talking points for the neutral classroom policy, is that not correct? It's correct or no? Just want to.
It is correct that you provided me with talking points regarding, um, goals and objectives with that specific board policy.
Thank you.
With Mr. Barham.
Thank you.
Regarding.
And I have no problem. If you want to work on it, I have no problem.
Good, do it.
I have no problem, let's do it.
Can we call this to question? Dr. Komraski, do you want to be a part of this or not?
Let's come back to this. We have other subcommittees. Let me, hey, I have a right to ponder this, let me ponder. Yeah.
Mr. Barham, do you want to work with Mrs. Wiersma? That's another.
I'd be up for that, because she's requesting.
Mrs. Wiersma.
Let's find out what trustee Barham wanted to reorganize. That's essentially.
Okay, so here, here's what I would like to reorganize. I would like to reorganize, because there has been no me, this was established January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, and I think that this is very important, and Dr. Anderson, you haven't, you and Schwartz haven't met on this at all, at least as far as I know. And I would, I, I think that this is really important for our community, the Temecula Elementary School Dual Immersive Language Program. And I would like to work on that with you, Mr. Schwartz, if you're open to that, since you haven't, since you haven't.
I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with that? We be in.
Does anyone have any comment on Mr. Barham and Mr. Schwartz working on the dual immersion? I think you guys have more time. Okay, so, do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
To replace?
I move that, uh, we dismantle, well, we keep the subcommittee T E S Dual Immers, Dual Immersive Language Program. Take Dr. Anderson off, put Emil Barham on, and, uh, do I have a second?
Secondo.
Schwartz?
Si.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komraski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay. The other one is, I, I don't, I have not been meeting with the S P E D subcommittee. Does someone want to replace me on the S P E D subcommittee?
What was that again? I'm sorry.
The Special Ed Subcommittee. Do you want that committee to keep going?
We have a current agreement that we're putting into place, the things that we spoke about last year. We had a highly productive series of meetings, and we're meeting again in October. And then from there, we're going to figure out how we get the committee together almost quarterly. I think that's what we agreed upon in consensus at the last meeting.
I don't think, though, that Dr. Komraski, because we, we may be going to a place that you might not want to go, because we're talking to the union about transitioning that subcommittee into something quarterly, like a problem-solving subcommittee, and I'm not sure that you, you would want to be part of that.
For S P E D?
Yes, but it's, it's going to be different than this subcommittee, so we're talking about it. It's nothing finalized, but I'm just saying, given your, how you feel about.
No, it's, it's content-based, not.
I, I don't know, I'm just telling you where it's going.
I have a heart for the S P E D students, uh, as, as, as much as I disagree with the values of some of the leadership of the teachers' union, I don't disagree with possibly working with union related to S P E D.
Okay.
Content relation, related, it's not as sticky, so I'm open to that.
Why don't you think about it?
I'll be ready to think, I'll be ready to do this before we get out of this topic, then, all right?
So what, what happened with parental, what are we doing? Okay, you're thinking about parental notification.
Jen?
Okay.
What do you think about working with Jen on parental notification, and I work with you on the S P E D Subcommittee?
We can have, Jen, we can have someone like Dr. Woods in the meetings with you, or Dr. Vales.
So where I'm at in thinking it through is what you guys started, I think, should be finished with the two of you. I know you said that you haven't had a lot of forward motion, but I think that's kind of exactly the point of what Dr. Komraski and I see. And I would much rather have a Plan B behind the scenes and talk to Dr. Komraski about it, should this not come through. Because if the two of you haven't moved it with the union at this point, and I know there could still be discussions, then I don't really wish to join it.
Why don't you, are, which, which one are you talking about right now? I'm sorry.
Whichever one, we just debated between Melinda and Komraski, and then you and me. I just think it's a lot of confusion, so I don't want to make a decision to move into or out of something right at the moment. I'd rather keep going with the business of the board.
You don't even want to work with Komraski on parental notification?
Oh, I would work with Dr. Komraski, sure.
I'd move for that, let's, let's just do it.
All right, I'm up for it. I'm up for that.
So is, it, so one point of clarification, is this then us taking over what's already with the union and negotiations, or something entirely different? Or can it be what we want it to be?
It's taking over where they left off, and if they have good talking points, we're using those.
Yeah, you're, you're starting from, Mrs. Wiersma.
Okay.
You're starting from scratch.
All right.
I think that Frank and Bill have gone a long ways, and before we start from scratch, I think we need to talk to.
I will always use the good work that other board members have brought forward.
I just, I don't want to get pinned into.
But I will use the good work.
Yeah, I just don't want to get pinned into what I don't understand is going on, and that's so many committees have been usurped from the beginning, so I just want to be sure I understand what I'm taking.
If they're handing us the reins to the Subcommittee, it's ours.
Okay.
So do you, Mr. Arce, I feel like before we throw away everything that might have happened, that maybe we should bring this back into, um, like, you can update us on negotiations next time, and then we can re-agendize this just to make sure everyone's on board.
Well, and seeing things in writing would help.
Where you're at with the negotiations.
Yeah.
Do you think that would probably be the best thing to do?
I think as it relates to the topics of the board policies that were sunshine as part of our sunshine process and, um, items that are pending reopener discussions, I think it's best that we move forward with a planned negotiation session, and I update the board on the association's position on bargaining through those policies before we make any
Changes.
Other changes.
Okay, we'll, we'll re-agendize this next time.
So let's, so I want to be clear. So we're sunshine, we're in the process of negotiations on neutral classrooms. Talking points, excuse me, talking points submitted by Emil. Sensitive topics, talking points submitted by Dr. Anderson. We're gonna ponder parental notification, which, as far as I'm concerned, you're, if you decide to take it up, you and Mrs. Wiersma are starting from scratch on any future parental notification items that there are. Because there's nothing there right now.
Most of that's already done.
It's done, but if there's anything else that comes up.
Yeah.
It's yours.
See.
All right, I'll, I'm in favor of me and Jen working in this Subcommittee, and I'm in favor of working on this, oh, go ahead.
I think that Mr. Barham is saying there's nothing in parental notification, but these two things exist.
I'm in favor of working on that.
They're different, they're, he's saying he's gonna put you guys on the parental notification committee because these two things are not parental notification. Do you see what he's, do you see?
Uh, oh, excuse me, uh, I thought he just said the, okay, so gotta clear it up again.
So he's saying, you can have parental notification, it's done and empty, do what you want with it. These two things are not parental notification.
Yeah, yeah, but.
What would be the point?
But even before, we were talking about the neutral classroom. See, there is confusion, the neutral classroom and the sensitive topics.
Can we just move on?
Under the umbrella of the parental rights Subcommittee. That's where we're at.
He's saying it's not. He's saying that these two are something different, so what's the committee called that these two are?
And the parental notification is like handing us nothing, it's like an empty vessel, here you go, no.
He said you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, that, come on.
You know what? What, you saying come on to me?
No, what I'm saying is there's no work to be done currently.
No, there isn't, but, but that doesn't mean that during this process of negotiation with the union, when talking points come back on neutral classroom and sensitive topics, that you're not going to have any input into those things. You will.
What if we form a committee called the Neutral Classroom Sensitive Topics Committee and assign two board members to that?
That's what I thought we were talking about the whole time.
That's what I thought we were, too. But he's saying they're different things. So let's form a new committee called Neutral Classroom Sensitive Topics, it's pretty much flag policy. And if you, if you don't want the sensitive topics, it's just something that I think should be a policy, but we, it's my idea, the whole board can reject it if they want. So we could separate it and just do the Neutral Classroom Flag Policy Committee. Do you want to do that?
That's fine, and I'll be on that.
And you'll be on that committee?
I will be on that.
But you don't want to be on the Parental Rights Committee. Do you see? He doesn't want, do you want to be on?
I could be on both, I mean, I don't have a problem, you're the one who's saying, you, you're the one who's trying to reorganize this, okay?
This is very important, I'm glad we're taking our time.
Yeah, you're the one who's saying that you want to reorganize this. I, I'm, if you want to reorganize this and, and kick me off of parental notification, I'm okay with that.
No, I'm, I'm with you, there's really no parental notification.
That's what I'm saying, it's like.
Left, although I consider, when we formed parental notifications, these two items were formed under parental rights.
Then why don't we dissolve parental notification Subcommittee, since there's nothing to work on? That's how the Subcommittee does, it, it goes in and out of existence based upon things that are being worked on. There is nothing, let's dissolve it, and then create the official committee.
I'll, I'll work with Dr. Komraski on neutral classroom flag policy, how's that?
Do you want to work with Mr. Barham on that?
All right, let's pause, because of the possible pondering.
I'd like to throw my hat in the ring and work on that with Dr. Komraski, just like we did in the beginning.
But I'm gonna try to break up these teams, because I think we're gonna have a better outcome if we work with each other.
Well, you guys took over most everything, so my opinion is, just continue on. Keep moving through that, and then let's move on. We have people here waiting, and I think we can hash this out later, if we need to, because it just, it's not making sense.
Do you want to postpone this?
I'll pass then.
Let's postpone this.
Too messy. Okay, let's just dissolve it.
Then who's gonna take over the sunshining?
Nobody, it's, I'm gonna work with Mr. Arce, you're gonna work with Mr. Arce on sensitive topics. I'll work with him, I'll bring back those policies.
Dr. Anderson?
To the board, I mean, that's how it works.
Can I provide some input?
Yeah, you don't like that, I know you don't.
As you know, the board receives a negotiations labor update every board meeting. That would be your opportunity to provide direction, for me to provide feedback and input as we carry out the bargaining of these policies with both T V A and C S A.
Okay, we'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
Yes. Next is a public hearing, I move to conduct a public hearing regarding Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Six Dash O Six and certification of sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials compliance for the fiscal year Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Twenty Six.
Second.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Is there any comments? Do we have any public comment?
No. Okay, Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komraski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is adopted unanimously. This is a time and place designated for the public hearing to review and consider Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Six Slash O Six and the certification of sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials compliance for the fiscal year Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Twenty Six. I declare the hearing now open at seven thirty P M. Staff, is there any discussion?
Not unless you have any questions about the sufficiency report, which is our Williams Act requirement.
Is there anyone who wishes to comment on Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Six O Six and the certification of sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials compliance for fiscal year Twenty Five Dash Twenty Six? Nope. All right. If there is no comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing end time is seven thirty one P M. I move to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Six Slash O Six and the certification of sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials compliance for the fiscal year Twenty Five Twenty Six.
Second.
Second. Is there anyone that opposes? The motion passes unanimously. I move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Six Slash Eleven opposing Assembly Bill Four Ninety Five to defend parental rights in education. We have public comments on this?
We have six.
We have six, okay. Do we want to allow three minutes per public comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, first up is Michael Davis, followed by Josh Shirleen.
Board, thank you for letting me share with you this evening. I stand before you today in support of California A B Four Ninety Five, the Family Preparedness Plan Act of Twenty Twenty Five, because I believe in a community that prioritizes the safety and well-being of our children, especially in times of uncertainty. This bill is designed not to undermine parental authority, but to strengthen our families during stressful times such as immigration enforcement or military deployment. It empowers families to craft plans that ensure their children are cared for and protected, reinforcing the notion that every child deserves stability and support regardless of their circumstances. Opposing A B Four Nine Five sends a message that we do not value the safety of all families, particularly those facing systemic challenges. Instead, we should embrace policies that protect our children, acknowledge the diverse realities of the families in our community. By supporting A B Four Nine Five, we affirm our commitment to nurturing a safe environment for every child, ensuring that their rights and well-being are at the forefront of our decisions. Let us come together and support measures that enhance parents' rights while also recognizing the need for flexibility and compassion in our legal system. Thank you for listening.
Next up is Josh Shirleen, followed by Sarah Bell.
I'm slightly confused as to what body this is. This is not the California State Assembly. We do not make laws here, not vote on laws here. This is performative. This serves no purpose other than to send an alienating message to the people in our community. As I read A B Four, Four Ninety Five, I understand that this is primarily to help people in crisis, families in crisis, where you don't have a, a caregiver, a legal guardian available in an emergency. If your parents got deported or arrested by ICE while you were at school, who's gonna pick you up? When you are at your daycare and nobody comes to pick you up because they're in custody? This is meant to be a benefit to help families who know bad things might happen. We should be supporting this, this is, this helps child safety. This, this is not just an affidavit somebody could forge and be like, go to a daycare and say, I want that kid. That's not how this works. This requires daycare institutions to actually have policies that are given to the parents, it's about transparency from them. This is meant to help the hardest-hit, the most impoverished people in our society. Frankly, this is sending the message to families of immigrants that they aren't wanted. And I look at, in my heart and my faith, and I ask, how would Jesus treat the immigrant? What kind of rules, what kind of things could we do to help the immigrants? I may not agree with them being here illegally. I might have my opinions about that, but they deserve protection. When we put our hand over their hearts and they say, "With liberty and justice for all." That's not just citizens. That's not just a specific faith group. It's for everyone. When we have the Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment that protect due process, that's for all people, not just citizens. So please, be compassionate. Stop making these performative statements that really don't have any bearing on what's going to happen in Sacramento, just like the Amicus brief. It doesn't serve any good in our community other than to message to the, to the minorities here that we're against them. We need to be a school just for everybody. Thank you.
Next, next up is Sarah Bell, followed by Ms. Strange.
Okay. My name is Sarah Bell. I'm a parent in the district. While my comments tonight are addressed to the board, I'm really here because I think it's important that, that the public hear the facts about Assembly Bill 495. It's a bill designed to strengthen parental rights. It's not to take away parental rights. And it allows parents to choose a caregiver for their children. How many of you sitting here have to worry when you take your kid to preschool that you might be deported and not be able to pick them up? We need to not, I'm tired. I'm tired of having to address the board when these items are agendized and discussed only through the lens of your personal life experience and the family structures that your own personal belief support. We are here, why I love this district is to support and elevate all students and be mindful of their safety. That is what this bill was created for when the mass deportations started happening. Those are the children we need to think about. But in addition to that, this bill also supports any family facing separation for any other reason. So it creates a joint guardianship process through probate court. That's facts. Allowing parents to preserve their parental rights while designating a trusted caregiver. I'm not going to say I didn't see things in this bill that were concerning to me, but the controversial section allowing non-family caregivers to sign the affidavit was amended and removed. So that is not something to argue about or continue to spread false information about. Over 1 million children in California, these are our students in California, over 1 million, have an undocumented parent. This bill builds on existing law to give immigrant parents clear legal tools to ensure that their parents are cared for by the adults of their choice, parental choice. As a mother, I want to choose that. This is not about giving custody to strangers. Now, the point has been brought that we already have this in place because we have emergency contacts designated. I will tell you, I am fortunate enough to have a will that's documented and I could tell you that my emergency contacts are the people that live across the street from me and closest to my children's school. They are not the caregivers I have designated in my will so something happened to me. That is not what this bill is for and that is, that is what this bill is for and that is not what an emergency contact list is for. I urge you to clearly explain in your discussions how this bill violates parental rights in TVUSD.
Time. Ms. Strange, followed by David Sola.
Thank you for your opposition to Assembly Bill 495. It can be a dangerous law that strips away parental rights and makes it easier to take children from their families. Even if it has, was well-intended, it still reduces many of the safeguards that are in, in place today. And this is why it's most likely going to pass because union leaders and their leftist allies like to exclude parents. And that's why taxpayers oversight for parents and students urges you to go even further. Just like Lakeside Union School District in San Diego just did. Trustee Andrew Hayes led his district in putting in a policy that requires IDs to match a notarized, parent-approved list before releasing any child or else the authorities are called. Pass this resolution right now. Then take it a bit further and create a similar policy as Lakeside just did to show that, one, parents still matter. Two, children are protected. And three, Sacramento's overreach won't control you either. Thank you.
David Sola, followed by David Hatch.
Good evening. My name is David Sola and I'm here again as a parent. I don't know about any of the other people that come up here and speak, but I know that I come up here as a parent and my kids go to this district. So what I'll tell you is this, I'm going to speak from a place of experience. How many of you up there, how many of these people out here have had to fill out that affidavit before, the caregiver's affidavit? Raise your hands. Yeah, that's what I thought. I just did it last year when I took my niece in because her parents were unable to care for her. So I'm not coming up here and talking to y'all, you know, just because I have some type of motivation other than I've experienced this. AB 495 is not here for political games. We need to do some reading, so I appreciate the facts that get put out here. And I'm going to tell you this. If a caregiver uses the longstanding caregiver authorization affidavit, a parent's decision overrides whatever is in that affidavit. You can't just lose your, your custody of your child or being their parent just because you allowed someone else to care for them when you were unable to. This is wild. Read it. Look at what we have in place and actually talk to people who have done it. And if you didn't ignore me every single time I sent you an email, you would know that I've experienced this and I can give you some perspective that's real and worth something. And I realize that we don't always agree. But on the things that we can agree on or the things that we can at least talk about, we need to find some common ground to have those conversations. What you're trying to do right now is going to have real impacts. And it's not just about here in this district. I realize that. Everybody wants to tell Sacramento what to do. Yeah, Sacramento's jacked up. I'm not going to sit here and pretend like they have everything in order or they're taking care of business. But the business of this district, the business here, belongs to the parents and the families that actually live here. Stop propagating this stuff. Talk to the people that live here.
So just one second. I'm going to give you a warning because I need you to be quiet. In the front row. No, this is your first warning. Okay, keep going. You have extra time.
So the people that live here own these topics and these subjects. And every single time you don't like something, it doesn't require a resolution. Maybe it could require a conversation first before we try and just push everything up and make a big scene. I noticed how quickly everybody in here jumps on the controversial stuff. Ooh, yeah, I want to be on that committee. I want to be on that committee. And then special education comes up and you cower. And, oh, I'm not really sure I want to do that because, you know, it's just going to take some work. If you want to be up here and do this job, do the job. Or just go away and let somebody else do it for you.
Thank you. Last, last speaker is David Hatch.
Good evening. My name is David Hatch. I'm a Temecula resident and a father of a TVUSD student. Tonight, I'm here to respectfully urge you to not adopt a resolution opposing Assembly Bill 495. It's a useless resolution. It provides no solutions. AB 495, the Family Preparedness Plan Act, is a 2025 bill designed to address a very practical problem. What's the problem? How families can remain connected and maintain decision-making authority for their children when unexpected crises occur. Those situations can include immigration detention, deportation. This is important right now. Incarceration, medical emergencies, military deployment. We have, we have, you know, veterans on this. Military deployment or other disruptions that make a parent temporarily unavailable. The bill's intent is straightforward. It's not trying to deceive anyone. They want to give parents more tools to plan ahead so that a trusted adult can make essential decisions about a child's education, healthcare, and daily needs without a lengthy court process. What is so confusing about this? Here is what the legislation actually does. It expands caregiver options so parents can legally designate someone with an established relationship for the child. It establishes a joint guardianship framework, allowing parents to share temporary decision-making authority. It ensures a clear process for parents to immediately regain full authority once they are available again. Parents' rights still exist. And it requires schools and childcare providers to follow parental instructions and exhaust all contact attempts before any decisions are made. Supporters argue this approach helps children remain with trusted adults. Critics have raised concerns about certain aspects of the bill. That is valid. Their, their concerns are vague language around terms like unable to contact and the potential for misuse in rare situations. Those are valid points and worth continued legislative discussion. We do not need to make a useless resolution on something that hasn't even been decided in Sacramento yet. We are a school board. This isn't Congress. Framing this bill as an attack on parental rights misrepresents its intent. AB 495 does not strip authority from parents. It reinforces it by ensuring that parents, not courts or agencies, decide who should keep in temporarily control if they cannot. By adopting this resolution, the board would be making a political statement rather than a policy-based one. And it risks aligning our district against legislation designed to strengthen families, not weaken them.
I'm going to call for a five-minute recess.
I'm going to call for a five-minute recess.
Okay, we're going to reconvene, folks. Excuse me.
Could you sit down, Ms. Infron?
Okay. Okay. So here we are, and we are on action item number six, and we are up for discussion. Is there any discussion on number six? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Point of order, should it be that the people that brought it forward have a chance to present that first? Are we going with what we normally do?
Yes, but did she do that or not? I don't remember.
She did. I just...
She didn't?
Yeah, no, whoever agendizes it goes first.
No, I know that, but did she do that? I can't remember. She didn't? Did she do the three-minute presentation?
It's Jen, that's the one that happened.
Did you? Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Wiersma.
Okay, AB 495. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that in the community. First of all, I want to say this is a message for all parents. It's a misnomer that we're targeting any group of children, and I just want to say no one's cowering or shirking from doing the work. There are people campaigning. So at this point, I want to have an honest discussion, and this resolution is here so that we can discuss this and what we can do as a district. So in response to enforcement of illegal immigration by the Trump administration, it is true that Assemblywoman Rodriguez introduced this particular bill this past February. The bill expands the use of a caregiver's authorization affidavit, and it's true, it is a decades-old legal form that permits non-parents to make medical and educational decisions for a child. This bill continues to allow individuals to claim kinship within the fifth degree without requiring notarization, verification, or parental consent. In practice, this means a stranger could falsely claim to be a relative and then assume authority over a child's schooling or healthcare decisions. The affidavit states schools or medical facilities have no obligation to verify the affidavit's signer is the person they say they are. I understand supporters frame AB 495 as compassionate legislation designed to help immigrant families, and of course, we want to help people in terms of emergencies. There are others that would say it could easily allow for increased kidnapping and human trafficking of our children. The problem is, this was voted along party lines, okay? So you need to understand that. It is true. It's political on some level, but you had a lot of people in the Assembly say this, that the guardrails for this bill are insufficient. The proposed law is riddled with logistical problems that don't require authority figures to verify that a child is being surrendered to a legitimate adult in the case of a parent being detained, as is the case with designated emergency contacts, court-sanctioned standby guardians, or when Child Protective Services gets involved. It is also true that they made some amendments, but I see it as window dressing, not protection. The reason they changed a couple of things is because there was an overwhelming voice from the parents coming out opposed to it. So actually, Sacramento did listen, and they made some changes. They removed two provisions: language allowing unrelated adults with a mentoring relationship to sign the caregiver's authorization affidavit, good; language explicitly stating that a parent's signature was not required. That doesn't mean, though, that the signature is required. While these tweaks may appear to address concerns, they do little to fix the bill's fundamental flaws. The affidavit process has exposed the massive safety risk our current caregiver authorization affidavit process poses. There was another legislator...
Time, Mrs. Wiersma.
Okay, I'll finish up when I have two minutes again.
Okay. Okay, very good. Dr. Kamroski, do you have any?
I got no comments. The resolution speaks for itself and my stance on it, but yeah, no comments.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Two minutes.
Three minutes. Oh, it's two minutes? Sorry. So as the only member of the Board who's a member of the CSBA Legislative Committee, we have debated this bill three or four times. It has been amended and re-amended, and the final bill has changed some of the provisions to make sure that anybody who does sign the affidavit is either a blood relative within the fifth degree of kinship, aunts, uncles, great-grandparents, great-uncles, aunts, cousins, and cousins once removed. The affidavit would permit the person to consent to medical care for the child, i.e. immunizations, physical and/or medical exams, or counseling. It would also require the Attorney General no later than July 2026 to publish model policies. It does not replace or interfere with existing school policies regarding how LEAs may identify emergency contacts. Now, this bill was passed by the House and the Senate, and it's on the Governor's desk. It could have been already signed by the Governor. And if it has been signed by the Governor, and it is now law, I asked my attorney, "Well, what does that mean?" And my attorney said, "There are legal consequences if we vote against the law, which has already been passed and is now in law. It is against our oath of office." There could be litigation. There could be intervention by the state. There could be loss of funding, and there could be personal liability for any school board member who does that. So I don't know if the Governor signed it. I know it was in the plan that he was going to sign it, so I am going to recuse myself because I do not want to put myself in legal jeopardy.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, I'm going to take two minutes for myself. In California, the contents of a bill that has not been signed into law are generally not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Education. A bill is just a legislative proposal until it is enacted as a law. The Board's jurisdiction is defined by existing law and its role as a policymaking body, not by pending legislation. While the Board can set policy within the framework of existing law, it does not have jurisdiction over a proposed bill's content before it becomes law. If the bill is signed into law, then we, as a Board, in collaboration with district administration, will be tasked with creating regulations to implement the new law. So as a result of this, I will be recusing myself from this vote on this motion. Mrs. Wiersma?
Okay, just to finish up here, the affidavit process has exposed the massive safety risk our current caregiver authorization affidavit process poses someone could basically make an important decision for a child by filling out an eight-question form that is not required to be notarized, checking a box to indicate that they are a relative, and present a form of ID that is never verified for authenticity. So here's the thing. Andrew Hayes, he did discuss this with his Board, and what they did is, within the district, they decided to look at things as per this concern with the bill. It's true, Newsom has not signed it yet, October 14th. It is supposed to be signed or not signed. Our job, I believe, as local officials, is to make sure parents are informed and aware of what's going on. I feel like school boards do indeed have the ability to have a voice with Sacramento because they already made changes. So if everybody's aware of this, I think it's helpful. Dr. Woods, when he and I talked, we talked about this is the hill to die on, and maybe this is the committee, where we look at what's required in terms of an ID that we're making sure parents are not usurped on any level, because this just highlights something that's gone on for quite a while that needs to be changed, and there are concerns in this day with trafficking and child abuse, and it opens the door for some nefarious activity, and I have heard people in very wise positions of leadership with great concern. So this isn't to be dramatic. This isn't to say this resolution's got to be the way it's written tonight. It's what can we do to have a conversation collaboratively? Someone mention that? Great. Let's do it, and make sure at TVUSD, we're communicating with people so that if they pass something like this, they understand what we're doing as a district to safeguard all of you as parents. And I don't care where you come from or what your background is. I care about all the kids and doing the right thing.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiersma. Melissa, do you want to weigh in on this? Okay.
I would love to.
All right.
The concerns raised about Assembly Bill 495 are valid. Protecting parental rights and ensuring that families remain central to decisions about their children is an important principle, and it's one that I fully support. I also recognize that AB 495, like many bills, is not perfect in its current form and may have aspects that will need careful scrutiny. At the same time, I believe that pursuing this resolution is largely a political statement rather than a practical solution. It is important to note that a single district resolution does not have the power to change state law. Only the California Legislature and the Governor can make changes to AB 495, and even widespread opposition by individual districts is unlikely to alter the outcome. While I understand the intentions behind the resolution, we must consider what tangible impact it will actually have on our students and families here in Temecula. My concern is that focusing significant Board time and attention on this resolution may divert energy from pressing day-to-day challenges that directly affect our students. We have seen in the past that high-profile resolutions, while they're often well-intentioned, can lead to controversy, legal questions, or unintended consequences, which can create confusion and distract from the work that directly supports our students. I'm not raising this as a criticism of anyone, but as a reminder that we should carefully weigh the potential benefits of symbolic actions against the practical needs of our schools. That said, I do believe it is entirely appropriate for the Board to monitor AB 495 closely, stay informed about its implementation, and communicate concerns to state legislators if necessary. But I would encourage us to focus our efforts primarily on areas where the Board's decisions can make an immediate difference in the lives of our students, where our time and authority can have the most impact. This ensures that we remain student-centered in our priorities while still staying aware of relevant legislative developments.
Thank you, Melissa. That was great. Okay, so Dr. Kamroski, no more comments?
All good. Let's go to vote.
Okay.
It's going to be mute anyways, but sorry.
Okay, all right, so let's... So I move to approve Resolution 252611, opposing Assembly Bill 495 to defend parental rights... I should have had you make the motion, or Mrs. Wiersma. To defend parental rights in education. Is there a second?
You moved to approve it?
Yeah, I know. I shouldn't have done it. I'm going to let you go ahead and do it, or Mrs. Wiersma, I'm sorry. Because you want to approve the resolution, correct? I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, I'll move to approve it, and with the challenge and the idea of wherever else we can have this conversation, whether it be one of these committees or beyond, I'm on board for that. But yes, I will make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Linay, would you please call the roll?
Schwartz?
Based on the reasons I gave before, I need to recuse myself, and if for some reason my recusal is not up to the reasons that you usually recuse yourself, then I vote no.
Okay.
Wiersma? Yes. Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Recuse myself.
Anderson? Oh, sorry.
She's absent.
And Melissa?
No.
Okay. So motion fails. Two to two. Okay, let's move on.
And, Mr. Barham, can I insert that sped subcommittee right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I've been pondering the whole time, and I was talking with Mrs. Daeus at break. I'd like to join the sped committee. The one hesitation I had is possibly me and you working together, but we can get past that. We can do good work in the sped committee, and the only requirement that I have is that I bring one parent with a sped kid into the committee. I know there's already a parent. If that's the case, I'm going to join it.
It's fine.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that at all? No discussion, Linay? Can you please?
Oh, yeah. One other thing is, I wanted to say, you were on the safety committee. You weren't at the last meeting. That's only because you were at the secondary committee, which I was supposed to be on, too. We had conflicting committees. I was on the safety committee, and I heard teachers complaining that some of the sped kids were punching, kicking, biting them, and I'd like to get into the tension point of giving the sped kids the absolute resources they need, but also protecting the teachers. I mean, it's getting a little crazy. And so for me, I always had a heart for sped kids, but I want to get in there and work on that, with the union, with the teachers, with the sped, I mean, all of it.
I think that you will be very happy with how we operate in that, and we make a lot of progress, and we've brought a lot of action items to this dais as a result of that subcommittee. So those topics, we've covered, but we still have a lot of work to do in covering those issues. So it's evolving.
Cool. And she said she's going to give me the notes from the last meeting so I can look at them. When's the next?
It'll probably be end of October, and then that meeting will determine next dates.
Do we know normally what time? I teach Mondays and Wednesdays, and I have to hustle back from Mount SAC, or is it on a certain day?
When I send you the notes, Dr. Kamroski, the times, dates, and locations are listed, so you'll get a feel for when that is.
All right.
Okay. So I move that Dr. Kamroski join the special ed subcommittee and bring an additional parent into the subcommittee. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. And so I think we've discussed. So Linay, go ahead and call the roll.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Anderson? Absent. Okay, so motion passes four to zero. With... Yeah, four to zero. Okay, let's move on to number seven, bond feasibility study results. Do we have any public comments?
We have one public comment.
We have one public comment, and who might that be?
Jennifer Sandnickless.
Jennifer Sandnickless, please come on up.
Sorry, this thing just went to sleep on me when I... It is. Okay, there we go. Okay. From the brief summary of data that was provided on the agenda, it appears the statistical analysis indicates the feasibility for voting in a bond measure by the community. Like my friend David mentioned, it's important to read, so I did. Did some research on this. The Board's action today makes no decision other than to move forward in the next step in the democratic process. The community will then decide if this is the direction they want to move in or not, which is the beauty of democracy. I want to remind each of you that you represent the students of this district. You don't represent the business community. You don't represent the builders. You don't represent the Chamber of Commerce. You were elected to represent the students of TVUSD, and our kids deserve to have the democratic process be open to them, so I urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
I'm introducing.
Yeah, I'm introducing. You're doing it? Okay, so Dr. Woods is going to introduce the bond feasibility study, so go ahead.
Yes, a couple of months ago, the Board did approve that we go out and do a bond feasibility survey. Tonight, it is an honor to introduce the President of True North Research, Dr. Timothy McLarnie.
Dr. Tim.
Thank you, Dr. Woods, and good evening.
We have seen in the past that high-profile resolutions, while they're often well-intentioned, can lead to controversy, legal questions, or unintended consequences which can create confusion and distract from the work that directly supports our students. I'm not raising this as a criticism of anyone, but as a reminder that we should carefully weigh the potential benefits of symbolic actions against the practical needs of our schools. That said, I do believe it is entirely appropriate for the board to monitor AB 495 closely, stay informed about its implementation, and communicate concerns to state legislators if necessary. But I would encourage us to focus our efforts primarily on areas where the board's decisions can make an immediate difference in the lives of our students, where our time and authority can have the most impact. This ensures that we remain student-centered in our priorities while still staying aware of relevant legislative developments.
That was, that was great. Okay, so Dr. Kamroski, no more comments?
All good. Let's go to vote.
Okay.
It's gonna be mute anyways, but sorry.
Okay, all right, so let's, so I move to approve Resolution 252611, opposing Assembly Bill 495 to defend parental rights. I should've had you make the motion, or Mrs. Weirzma, to defend parental rights in education. Is there a second?
You move to approve it?
Yeah, I know, I shouldn't have done it. I'm gonna let you go ahead and do it, or Mrs. Weirzma, I'm sorry. Because you want to approve the Resolution Correct. I'm gonna recuse myself.
Yes, I'll move to approve it and with the challenge and the idea of wherever else we can have this conversation, whether it be one of these committees or beyond, I'm on board for that. But yes, I will make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Linay, would you please call the roll?
Schwartz?
Based on the reasons I gave before, I need to recuse myself. And if for some reason, my recusal is not up to the reasons that you usually recuse yourself, then I vote no.
Okay.
Weirzma? Yes. Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Recuse myself.
Anderson? Oh, sorry.
She's absent.
And Melissa?
No.
Okay, so motion fails. Two to two. Okay, let's move on.
And Mr. Barham, can I insert that sped subcommittee right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to, I've been pondering the whole time and I was talking with Mrs. Diaz at break. I'd like to join the sped committee. The one hesitation I had is possibly me and you working together, but we can get past that. We can do good work in the sped committee. And the only requirement that I have is that I bring one parent with a sped kid into the committee. I know there's already a parent. If that's the case, I'm gonna join it.
It's fine.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that at all? No discussion, Linay, can you please?
Oh yeah, oh yeah. One other thing is, I wanted to say, you were on the safety committee, you weren't at the last meeting, that's only because you were at the secondary committee, which I was supposed to be on too. We had conflicting committees. I was on the safety committee and I heard teachers complaining that some of the sped kids were punching, kicking, biting them. And I'd like to get into the tension point of giving the sped kids the absolute resources they need, but also protecting the teachers. I mean, it's getting a little crazy. And so for me, I always had a heart for sped kids, but I want to get in there and work on that. With the union, with the teachers, with the sped, I mean, all of it.
I think that you will be very happy with how we operate in that. And we make a lot of progress and we've made, we've brought a lot of action items to this dais as a result of that subcommittee. So those, those topics, we've covered, but we still have a lot of work to do in covering those issues. So it's evolving.
Cool. And she said she's gonna give me the notes from the last meeting so I can look at them. When's the next?
It'll probably be end of October. And then, and that meeting will determine next dates.
Do we know normally what time? I teach Mondays and Wednesdays and I have to hustle back from Mount SAC, or is it on a certain day?
When I send you the notes, Dr. Kamroski, the times, dates, and locations are listed, so you'll get a feel for when that is.
All right.
Okay. So I move that Dr. Kamroski join the special ed subcommittee and bring an additional parent into the subcommittee. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. And so I think we've discussed, so Linay, go ahead and call the roll.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Anderson? Absent. Okay, so motion passes four to zero. With, yeah, four to zero. Okay, let's move on to number seven, bond feasibility study results. Do we have any public comments?
We have one public comment.
We have one public comment, and who might that be?
Jennifer San Nicholas.
Jennifer San Nicholas, please come on up.
Sorry, this thing just went to sleep on me when I... It is. Okay, there we go. Okay. From the brief summary of data that was provided on the agenda, it appears the statistical analysis indicates the feasibility for voting in a bond measure by the community. Like my friend David mentioned, it's important to read, so I did, did some research on this. The board's action today makes no decision other than to move forward in the next step in the democratic process. The community will then decide if this is the direction they want to move in or not, which is the beauty of democracy. I want to remind each of you that you represent the students of this district. You don't represent the business community, you don't represent the builders, you don't represent the Chamber of Commerce. You were elected to represent the students of TVUSD and our kids deserve to have the democratic process be open to them. So I urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
I'm introducing. Yeah, I'm introducing. You're doing it? Okay, so Dr. Woods is gonna introduce the bond feasibility study, so go ahead.
Yes, a couple of months ago, the board did approve that we go out and do a bond feasibility survey. Tonight, it is an honor to introduce the president of True North Research, Dr. Timothy McLaren.
Dr. Tim.
Thank you, Dr. Woods, and good evening, board members. I'm Tim McLaren, president of True North Research. We are a firm that for the last almost 25 years has specialized in working with school districts, as well as other public agencies around the state, in using surveys to help them develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. To date, my business partner and I, working as a two-person team, have designed and conducted over 1,500 research studies for public agencies. And about half of the work we do these days is what's called revenue measure feasibility studies, like what we're gonna be talking about here tonight, where the goal is to understand if it's feasible for an agency to move out with some type of revenue measure. And if it is feasible, determine how might they go about structuring that measure in a way that's consistent with the type of measure that their community is interested in supporting. We've helped our clients have a lot of success over the years. To date, our research has underpinned about $42 billion in voter-approved measures around the state. Within Riverside County, I think there's 15 or 16 bond measures in the past decade that we've helped school districts work on. And I'm proud to say that we actually worked with Temecula Valley USD back on your Measure Y bond back in the day. So a lot of experience here, as well as in Riverside County. Tonight's presentation just covers the highlights. I welcome your questions as I go, along the way, or at the end, whichever is your preference. Okay. So before we talk about the results, helpful to take a quick moment to review the purpose of the study, as well as the methodology. As a revenue measure feasibility study, we're really trying to address the three bullets that you see here on the slide. The first is to answer that basic question of, is it feasible? And what I mean by that is if you, as a board, were to choose to place a measure on the ballot in 2026, does it have a reasonable chance of success? The answer to that question isn't always yes. I mean, sometimes we do this work, we look at the data, and we just really can't see a clear path to get you from where you are today to where you need to be to be viable on Election Day. And if that's the case, I'll be the first person to tell you that. And in fact, three years ago, I did a similar study for Temecula Valley USD. And based on those numbers, my recommendation at that time was, don't move forward in the current environment, right? We sort of recommended that now is not a good time for that particular proposal. When we do find feasibility in a study, the second bullet kicks in, and that's to understand how might you go about structuring this measure in a way that it's consistent with the type of measure that your community's interested in supporting. There's a lot of components to a bond proposal. There's the aggregate bond amount, how much is this gonna be, the underlying tax rate, there's a project list, how is it that you propose to spend the money, what sort of accountability provisions are built into this measure, on and on. So there's a lot of sort of important decisions that have to be made as you're preparing a bond measure for ballot, that the survey can help guide. And then thirdly, it's an opportunity to understand the role that information plays in shaping voters' opinions about your proposal. And that in turn can inform how you, how you as a district would communicate about your needs, as well as ultimately how an independent campaign might proceed. So in terms of the methodology, the first question you always want to ask yourself when you're thinking about a potential bond measure is, what election cycle is this going to be on? Because different elections have different turnouts, and as you expand or shrink turnout, you tend to get a different profile to the participating electorate. In this case, we were looking at the two opportunities that you have in 2026. The first would be the June primary, which is the smaller turnout. And the second would be the November general election, which would be the larger turnout. We use a process called stratified and clustered random sampling. I can get into details of that if you like, but suffice it to say, what it does is it guarantees us that at the end of our data collection process, we have a sample that matches the likely November universe on all the dimensions that we know tend to drive how voters behave on these types of measures. So the balance in our sample by age and gender and partisanship and household party type and where folks live within the district, the balance in our sample matches the balance of that likely November universe. And that's really the key to having this research be reliable. Once we pulled our sample, we reached out using three different methods, email, text, and telephone. Folks had the opportunity to participate over online or by telephone, whichever was their preference. We had actually contracted and set out to do 500 completed interviews. I always have to make some estimates about what I think the productivity is gonna be and what the participation rate is gonna be. I tend to be a little conservative so that we don't under-deliver. Turns out that your residents were more than happy to chat with us. And so although we wanted to speak originally with 500, we walked back in the door with 858 completed interviews. So really good response from the community. With that larger sample size, what that does is allows us to have a smaller margin of error due to sampling in this study. In that, in this case, it's plus or minus 3.3% at the 95% confidence level. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results we'll talk about tonight are within 3.3% of what we would've found had we spoken with all of your likely voters. Okay, so on to the results. This first slide shows the results of the first question in the survey, which is our importance of issues question. And for each of the issues you see on the left side of that figure, we simply asked folks to tell us how important is this to you? Is it extremely important, very important, somewhat important, or not at all important? They're asked in a random order, but we've sorted them here on the slide from high to low based on the combined percentage of folks who said it was either extremely or very important. We asked this question for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's just a nice warm-up question, right? Gets folks into the groove of taking the survey, gets them thinking about their community. But the other thing it allows us to do is understand how education as a topic stacks up against other issues that also compete for tax dollars, right? Things like maintaining local streets and roads. And in particular, it's an opportunity for us to understand how the topic of ensuring the quality of education in local schools stacks up against the issue of preventing local tax increases. Rough rule of thumb, surprisingly predictive. The more importance that your voters place on the issue of ensuring the quality of education in local schools relative to the issue of preventing local tax increases, the better positioned you are to move forward with some type of education-related revenue measure. The more those two things are seen as equally important, the more tension there is, typically the steeper the hill you'd have to climb to be successful on Election Day. In this case, we see the number one issue was in fact ensuring the quality of education in local schools at 97%, saying that's extremely or very important. As you work your way down the list, preventing local tax increases was two up from the bottom at 64%. So there's about a 33% gap between those two. That is actually a bit larger than what we have been seeing in recent election cycles. So, you know, that's a good thing. The other thing I will point out, though, is about fourth down on the list, you see repairing and renovating aging school facilities checks in at 73%. So it's above that issue of preventing local tax increases, but it is significantly below the issue of ensuring the quality of education in local public schools. That pattern always happens. I pointed out, not because it's unusual, but because it's kind of a healthy reminder to us that although bonds are about facilities, right, they're about, you know, making repairs and improvements to your facilities. At the end of the day, what voters care about when it comes to school buildings, and so much the buildings themselves, is what happens inside those buildings. And so anytime you're doing a bond measure, it's really important to sort of connect the dots between what it is you're building or fixing, but why that ultimately matters to your core mission of educating students. So after that warm-up question, we get right down to business in the survey with what we call the initial ballot test. And the idea here is, before we get any deeper into this interview with a respondent, we start talking about possible tax rates that could be associated with a bond, going into more detail about how you can spend the money, or presenting arguments pro and con. We want to present to the respondent a mock-up of what we think that 75-word ballot statement could look like, if you were to put it on the ballot, and get their reaction. The initial ballot test is a really good gauge of where your voters are at on the natural with respect to this proposal. So what you see here is that 75-word ballot statement. And that's the language, and here are the results. So at that initial ballot test, we had 62% of likely November voters say that they would support this proposal. We had 26% who said they would oppose. And you've got about 12% who were unsure, prefer not to answer the question. So in the state of California, for a Prop 39 bond to be successful, you need 55% support. So we're sitting at this initial ballot test about seven points above the 55% threshold that's required for passage. Now, naturally, support for any revenue measure can depend on the price tag, right? The more expensive this is to a household, all other things being equal, the lower the level of support you can expect. One of the goals of this study was to make it really clear that bonds mean taxes, right? In case you missed that in the 75-word ballot statement. But also to test different tax rates that could be associated with this measure, as well as different ways of talking about the tax implications of a bond, so that we'd understand that, where sort of that comfort zone is for at least 55% of your voters. So in this tax threshold question, we came about it by using what's called a Dutch auction, where you start high and go low. So we said, all right, if you knew that this measure would cost your home $20 per 100,000 assessed valuation, would you vote yes or no? If they're anything but a definitely yes, at the $20, you'd do 15 and you'd do 10, right? So you start high, go low. And what you see here is that when you focus voters' attentions on the tax rate, you get a little softening of support. That always happens. So at that $20 per 100,000 assessed valuation rate, we had 49%. At 15, it was 52, and then at $10, it jumped up to 60. Now, we also know from doing a lot of research that this is a conservative read on voter support for your proposal for a couple of reasons. Number one, we are taking the price tag out of the proposal and setting it aside and focusing voters' attention on it. When you think about what a bond proposal is, it's a combination of things. It's all the things you're proposing to do, the price tag is one element of that. Here, we're, by pulling it out and sort of focusing voters' attention on it, you're giving it a lot of importance, more so perhaps than when it's in the 75 words. And that tends to give you a more conservative read on support. The other reason why we know that this question is a conservative read is because when I say, you know, this measure's gonna cost $20 per 100,000 assessed valuation, not everybody knows what you're talking about, right? You have to know what assessed valuation is, you have to have some estimate of the AV for your property, you have to be able to do math pretty quickly in your head in the space of an interview, and not everybody's good at that, understandably. And so what happens is there's certain voters who, they know you're talking price tag, they don't know what it adds up to, and they will hedge. They will say, no, we're not sure. So that's why we also come about it the way on this slide, where we say, all right, let me put it another way. If you knew that this measure would cost the typical homeowner about $95 per year, would you vote yes or no? That's the left column. The $95 per year is that $20 per 100,000 assessed valuation tax rate multiplied by the median assessed value for a residential property in your district. So it's what that middle property owner would pay. And once you kind of anchor it in a number that makes sense to people, an annual total, what you see is you get a better reaction to this. So at $20 per 100,000 assessed valuation, we found 49% support. When you just do the math for folks and say, by the way, that's $95 per year for the typical homeowner, support is back up at 60%. To the right is the same exercise, only here we're annualizing that $10 tax rate, for which we previously saw 60% support. When you go ahead and tell them that at a $10 per 100,000 tax rate, it's gonna cost the typical homeowner about $48 per year, support jumps up to 65%. So all of this is information that we use to kind of figure out, where is that, where's that sweet spot, right? Where's the comfort zone for your voters where we, at that tax rate, you know, you have 55% plus of your voters indicating they would support it. So after the tax threshold section, we get into the projects and improvement section. And here, we're trying to do two things. One is we are now gonna start to educate respondents more about what this proposal would accomplish. Up to this point, they only had the initial ballot test, we had 75 words to describe this, what this proposal would do. Here, by unpacking it into all these different potential uses, you give them a much better idea about what a bond measure would accomplish. The other thing it allows us to do is to look at, of all the ways you can spend the money, how do your voters feel about each of these uses? And which of these are ultimately their priorities? And is there anything that you're thinking about spending the money on that voters don't really see the merit of, they're not enthused about having that as part of your bond package? The obvious thing from this slide, the takeaway, is that everything we tested was popular with respondents. We had at least 80% of voters say that they would favor spending some of the money on each of the items on this list. At the top of the list, however, what you see is a really typical combination for what we tend to see voters sort of gravitate towards when it comes to school bond measures. Basic repairs to your facilities, right? Roofs, plumbing, electrical, right? Bringing your older facilities up to current codes in terms of building health and safety. AC is pretty popular here, apparently. So I was a little surprised by that, but that's number two. And then STEM and career tech, those two are popular in every district. And so you have this sort of combination of STEM, career tech, and then these upgrades to your older facilities. Now, if you as a board choose to place a measure on a 2026 ballot, there's gonna be an election cycle. And during that election cycle, there's gonna be a lot of discussion and debate in the community about this proposal, right? You'll undoubtedly have advocates that will go out and talk to their neighbors and friends and tell them why this is needed and why they should vote yes. You'll likely have some opposition, too. People will step up and say, this is a terrible idea, we shouldn't be doing it, and here's why. For this survey to be a reliable gauge of the feasibility of a bond measure, we need to simulate that discussion and debate in the space of the poll, so we know not only where are your voters on the natural, which was that initial ballot test, but what happens to their support once they hear both positive and negative arguments. So we test a series of positive and negative arguments. Here you see sort of the top tier of positive arguments. I just broke it into two tiers because it's easier to see that way. And then to support the measure. And what you see here at the top of the list, first of all, there's a lot of arguments that resonate in a positive way. But it's interesting, the top three are really kind of factual informational statements. Like, for example, the first one, "Most of the schools were built more than 25 years ago and need to be repaired and upgraded. Last year alone, there were 317 classrooms and facilities with leaky roofs. It's time to make essential repairs and improvements so our schools can serve our community well for decades to come," right? The average voter probably hasn't stepped foot in one of your classrooms in years, if at all. They don't kind of understand the condition of the facilities. And so when you can add a little specificity, like 317 leaky roofs, or the fact that you have 350 portable classrooms with the average age being 28 years, those kind of details matter. And they sort of help voters understand the need for the proposal. Second tier of positive arguments. Well, after, at this point in the poll, voters have heard more about this proposal than they did at the initial ballot test, right? So we had a chance to talk in more detail about the tax rates, that's a bit of a wet blanket on support for the proposal. But we had a chance to sort of follow up with that, talk in more detail about how the funds could be spent. We conveyed a series of positive arguments. And so we circle to what we call, back to what we call the interim ballot test. Here's where we present that same 75-word ballot statement. We say, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And what you see is support at this point ticks up about three points to 65%. So we're sitting about 10 points above that 55% threshold that's required for passage for a Prop 39 bond in California at this point. And then we get to the negatives. And the idea behind the negatives is, I want to pressure-test respondent support for this proposal by peppering them with a series of negative arguments, right? The kind of arguments you might hear from an opponent during a campaign cycle. And the reason for that is I want to know how resilient this yes vote is, right? Should you move forward with a bond measure? Should you get into the campaign cycle and you get opposition, they're vocal and they get their arguments out there? How might that impact voter support for your proposal? You'll notice that we test fewer negatives than we do positives. There's a good reason for that. What you tend to find when it comes to school bond measures is the advocacy campaign, they tend to be better organized, they raise money, they have boots on the ground, they have a louder voice than do the opponents. And so we simulate that disparity by testing fewer negatives. That said, the negatives we're testing are hard-hitting negative arguments, right? They're the kind of arguments that we know tend to get traction and that you often will hear in a bond cycle. And so the number one here being the idea that now's not a good time. You always hear that, by the way, when there's a tax measure on the ballot, that now's not a good time to raise taxes. The reasons for that vary over time. Right now, inflation, high interest rates, high gas prices, cost of living increases, right? People are struggling, now's not a good time to raise taxes. That's a common opposition argument, but you see some of the other ones we test here. The real question is what happens afterwards? And that is here. So the opposition arguments that we test cool support down for the bond by about five points. So we're landing at the final ballot test at 60%. So that's still about five points north of the 55% threshold that's required for passage. Okay, so what does all this mean? I've got a couple of wrap-up slides here. I'm going to circle back to that overarching question I mentioned at the outset as one of the main motivators for why you do this research, which is to understand, is it feasible? If you as a board were to choose to move forward with a measure in 2026, does it have a reasonable chance of success? When I stood here three years ago and we did this research, my answer to that was no, right? That I didn't see in the data a clear path to get you to where you could be to be successful on Election Day. Things are different with these numbers, and I actually think that you do have feasibility. Why is that? Well, all the things that you see there under the positive signs. We saw that, you know, ensuring the quality of education in local public schools was the most important issue facing the community from your voters' perspectives. That translated into solid natural support for the bond measure at the initial ballot test. With only the 75-word ballot statement to go off of, 62% of voters said that they would support this. The projects and improvements that we tested, they were all popular. 80% plus of respondents favored spending some of the money on that item should you have a successful bond. We have positive arguments that resonate, and importantly, at each point in the survey where we pause and presented that same 75-word ballot statement and said, now that you heard a bit more, where do you stand? All of those ballot tests were north of 55%, and that was even after we peppered them with opposition arguments. And so in my experience, when you have that kind of pattern and you have the numbers that you have, you have a path forward toward a viable bond measure. That the poll also, though, calls out some challenges, right? And that we want to be cognizant of and sensitive to. The first is tax rate sensitivity, right? Both also that folks don't quite naturally understand the tax rate as expressed for a bond in terms of per 100,000 assessed valuation. And so you want to make sure you're pricing this thing right, so that's within the comfort zone of 55%. We did see some receptiveness to those potential opposition arguments, right? The ones we tested cooled support down by about five points, so that's an issue. Not so much coming out of the poll, but certainly thinking ahead to what the 2026 election cycle is going to be like. It is going to be a hyper-partisan election, like the ones that we've been having recently. And there could be some statewide initiatives on that ballot, we don't know yet, that could create a little headwind. We haven't, we're unsure, but you always want to sort of keep that in mind. My point in raising these things is when you're thinking about move forward with a with a measure, you want to, you have a measure that's can kind of stand on its own two feet in some ways, and is built in enough buffer so that you're not counting on it being perfect weather on Election Day, right? You don't have blue skies and tailwinds. You know, you want to be able to create a measure that can withstand some some cross-currents and some headwinds during the election cycle and still be successful. And then finally, we obviously have a lot of unknowns, right? We don't know what the next year will hold in terms of the economy, in terms of tariffs, and what impact they may have on inflation, other measures that may pop up. And so these are all things to keep in mind. So with that, on my last slide, I've just got a couple sort of recommendations and thoughts. The first thing is a reminder that a poll like this is a snapshot in time, right? It is not a crystal ball looking forward to next November saying you're going to get 60% next November. If I had a crystal ball, I would charge a lot more for it. The, I say that in part because of what's going to determine what happens on Election Day in November 2026, if you should move forward with a measure, isn't what your poll says today. It's everything that happens from this point forward. So that's a reminder that we need to make smart decisions about kind of how you structure your measure, so it's consistent with the type of measure your community says they're comfortable supporting. And you need to put the work in in terms of communications. And so part of the smart decisions is the tax rate. This is not the time to be choosing that now, but you want to make sure you're keeping it affordable in that comfort zone. Project priorities, you want to listen to what voters said that they are sort of most enthused about using bond proceeds to fund, and those are the things that are in the bullets right there. And, you know, there's district communications that are non-advocacy communications. You as a public entity are not allowed to advocate up or down on a future measure, but you can provide information, right? And should provide information. You want voters to be informed about the decision you're asking them to make. And obviously, should you move forward, there would need to be an independent campaign that would privately fund it, citizen-led, right? That to champion this measure moving forward through the election cycle, because let's face it, 2026 is going to be a wild ride. So with that, let me pause, and certainly happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McClarnie. So I'm going to ask you to stay up there.
Okay.
And are you okay with two two-minute rounds of either questions or comments?
Mrs. Weirzner, you okay with that?
Okay. Who would like to start?
Any questions, Mrs. Weirzner?
So I think my question with this tonight is, where do we go with this? I'm assuming there's time for further detailed financial analysis, a project list before the board could make a decision. Is it that we're taking this, thank you for your presentation, we have time to process it, we have somebody on our Board Advisory Council who's actually very skilled with bonds and financial information? Can you clarify that, or would that be somebody else? What's the ultimate action plan for tonight? Because I want to be sure we know.
So I would probably kick that to the superintendent.
Yeah. Of course, we would strongly recommend that you allow us to continue. For example, we have a bond, we have a board advisory team that meets tomorrow. One of the items I'm going to bring up is this item. I'm going to ask them to focus their efforts on digging deep. There's a lot of work to be done here. But then to come back to the board and give you their recommendation. It's a very diverse group, it's very representative of the community, and I'm excited for them to to help work on this for on your behalf.
Can this be pushed to October 14th? Okay, Mrs. Weirzner, are you finished? You've got 33 seconds left.
Although I would like a little more because I allowed for Dr. Woods. Thank you for commenting. Yes, I think it would be good to get members of the Advisory Council to weigh in. I would want to know individual decisions because of the makeup of that board. I would want to know specifics. Looking through the survey, I noticed there weren't, there wasn't information to voters about pre-existing bonds that are still being paid off, including one bond that's not been utilized. I just want to be sure if we're continuing this conversation, that people understand the full context, because they might hesitate in supporting a brand-new bond and ensuing tax unless we're transparent with that. The survey also didn't seem to mention current spending trends by the district. I just want to be sure moving forward that we need to see all of these so that people are educated and...
We have time, Mrs. We have time to, we're going to explore all those things.
Yes, that's great. That's what I wanted to be sure of.
That is going to happen, for sure. Did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. Varham. I just wanted to speak to the point that you made. I think you're dead on that there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen before this would ever come to a decision, whether or not we're moving forward. Dr. McClarnie was just here to present the results of the survey and whether or not we should even continue in the conversation. When we did this three years ago, at this point, we said, let's just stop spending any time on this project at all, and that was the recommendation. At this point, it's just, do we continue? Do we start to engage our community? Do we start to engage our parents? And do we continue the conversation? Basically, it's accepting the survey results and what's next. Is Dr. Woods okay with putting this on the agenda for the Board Advisory Committee? There's lots of work to be done, as you mentioned. What projects have we already paid for with the previous bond? What projects would be next in line? And the detail of what that ballot language looks like would all be for the board to decide. And we have some months to do that. And at some point, maybe after the Board Advisory Committee comes up with their in-depth analysis, if they decide to move forward, maybe it's a board workshop, you know, where we look at facility needs and develop that bond language collectively. But that's really far down the road, in my opinion. One of the things that I want to lean into that you said at the very end is things can change. And let's say January or February, something happens in the economy that changes how voters feel about supporting a measure. At that point, we may say, we're going, it's not the right time. So I, I think this is just, is this a conversation that we want to continue? And continue to monitor what's happening in the economy to to eventually make the determination if we're going to move forward with ballot language? That would be a smay decision to make.
Thanks, Mrs. Lash. Dr. Kamroski?
Yeah, quick question for Dr. Woods. Can we push this off to October 14th, considering the full board is not here and another member of the board is not present? This is a hefty weighted decision that we're voting on. And then I can proceed with the time after he answers, because I have more, but that that might help. Because if the board recommends it's October 14th, maybe it gives time for the other committee to come with feedback. Right now, it's not looking good for me voting on this. I'm just giving you a big hint. It'd be better to push it off.
Okay.
And then a whole board can be here, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's hear from everybody else and then you may consider that.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll finish off my, but let me, let me have the question, though. Can it be pushed?
They're going to need more time than October 14th. It'll take them 90 days to do a good analysis on this.
But this vote can be pushed to that meeting?
The meeting is tomorrow, the next one. I meet with them once a month.
No, I meant our board meeting, for October 14th.
Board consensus, absolutely, it could be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, now let me finish on my time. Hold on, Steve. Not done yet. So yeah, I'd say, I'd just say that I've organized my thoughts. I don't think the housing market is good right now on numbers, on mortgage numbers, and there's too much liability uncertainty in the marketplace to rely on property taxes to fund this bill. That's just one. I might come back to this if we have two additional minutes after.
Yeah, you do.
Right? We have a additional round.
You do.
That's where I stand right now. It could change October 14th, but right now, that's where I'm leaning, and I just think a full board is better.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz? No comment? I don't have any comments, Mrs. Weirzner. I'm going to come back to you.
So I guess, Dr. Kamroski, you're saying you want a full board in order for there to be an acceptance of the feasibility survey, so that things can then move forward? Because from what I can understand, if we do accept this, it goes to the Advisory Council tomorrow, and then there's continued discussion, but much more discussion, before we land on something to put it on the ballot, right? So tonight, how we vote is not, it's going to the ballot. It is accepting this to continue discussions. So I don't know if that makes a difference for you, because I'm fine to wait, too, either way, but just wanted to be sure you're understanding that clarification and would respect your decision if you want your other colleague here.
Go ahead.
All right, so I'll address the elephant in the room. I don't have full faith and confidence in two members of that Board Advisory Committee, one being Upmeet, and here's why. I believe on September, I don't even know.
Dr. Kamroski.
Nope, this is with this subject matter jurisdiction, and I have every right, because it's addressing that meeting tomorrow. Upmeet has made a false statement. The school board is posed to approve another contract with the same law firm that just cost taxpayers over $1 million in legal fees and settlement settlements that was addressed about AFF. That was an absolute lie. She's on the committee.
Dr. Kamroski.
Plus, she agendas a censorship against me.
Dr. Kamroski, please.
Plus, Gary Adi's name is on it.
Dr. Kamroski.
Both of those members are...
Point of order, sir.
No, you do not get to point of order because they are on the committee.
You know what?
I'm sorry.
This has nothing to...
Are you trying to censure me?
It has nothing to do with the bond.
Are you trying to censure me?
No.
Trustee Bar, you should let him continue. This is within his rights.
This might be a Brown Act, Mr. Varham. We already got a lot on our hands.
It has nothing to do with the bond.
Some of them because of you.
It does, because it would go to the council. So he should be able to express his thought perspective.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
They're supposed to give the board advice, and two of those members are compromised, and they should resign.
No, okay.
Gary Adi, Upmeet.
Oh, come on.
There you go.
All right, we're going to move on.
Go ahead.
You heard it.
Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz. It's ridiculous. Come on.
I am not for lies and false statements, and if you think that's ridiculous, you're ridiculous. Because Upmeet made a false statement. Right now, Dr. Woods can affirm that we have not paid $1 million. Is this correct, Dr. Woods?
Come on, Dr. Kamroski, please.
To this point, we have not.
Come on, go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Lie.
There you go.
Go ahead.
There you go. Looking good right now, right?
Come on, you shouldn't be talking to the audience either.
No, because she's biased and she has no right to be able to give legal...
Sir, you should not be talking to the audience.
She has no right to be able to give advice to this board.
Okay, let's move on. Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
There's no neutrality in it.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz. Go ahead.
This audience is full of people who do stuff like that, and we don't criticize them. We let them say what's on their mind.
Okay, let's keep it to the bond.
As far as the bond goes, I respect, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Tim McClarnie.
Tim, I respect what you did, Tim. It seems like you did a bang-up job of surveying what's going on out there. And I know this is only the first baby steps in dealing with this. When we're looking at numbers like $90 a year, I don't know, it, it doesn't seem like it's exorbitant that we're asking someone who has a $900,000 house to pay an extra $90 a year. I'm not talking for anyone else, I'm talking for myself. So I think what we need to do is we'll discuss this tomorrow with Dr. Woods and the committee, and we will come back with some ideas, and we will move forward.
Okay. So am I getting from this board that we are looking to postpone this, accepting the that we're looking to postpone accepting the results of this bond survey until October 14th? Is that what I'm getting?
That's coming from me. That's an affirmative.
Coming from you, Mrs. Weirzner? Okay, and I will support that as well. So we will bring this back on October the 14th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, where are we at here? We're, information. Hold on one second. How many public comments do we have on this? How many? Okay, go for it. Who is it?
Jennifer San Nicholas.
All right, you guys are a hot mess tonight. I just wanted to address all these things on the information reports for item one. As to Mrs. Massa, she was correct. The, it does look like a Brown Act violation when you have that closed-door session. It seemed like some shenanigans, and it seemed shady, and a lot of us don't have faith in the advocates for faith and freedom, given our history with them. The next one was, oh, that got deleted. I think it was Eliza Peg is, she was wrong about Mr. Schwartz's letter. I don't know what a serial meeting is, but she's wrong. Doesn't need more explanation than that. As for Chelsea Boyle, she's just a menace. The meeting she was referring to, when she was removed, she was getting a warning for yelling at Melinda, and then she turned around in the middle of that warning and gave my entire row the double finger salute, and that's when she was asked to leave. So that was a whole bunch of bullshits on her part. And then she really did open Pandora's box, because I think most of us didn't even know about that whole cure and correct thing that was going on. And with Mr. Pax's letter, I agree with everything he said, especially with the special meeting that resulted in us joining forces with advocates for faith and freedom again. It was shady at best, and it leaves the district open to many, many problems. So got a lot to figure out, guys.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, can I ask you a question? It's nine o'clock. Is, is there any way that there would be a consensus just to hear the public comments instead of going through for another hour, expecting people to sit here till 10?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, so anything else? We have nothing else on number one? That's it? Okay, let's move on to... Okay, Mrs. Weirzner, you brought this, right? Privacy?
I did primarily to get an update from the district with where things are at. So I don't have a speech, I want to know where things are at.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, first up is Caroline, Caroline Huffman, followed by Jennifer San Nicholas.
Oh, wait, everyone, my wire.
And I just want to say, excuse me, Caroline, before you start.
Yeah.
The snapping is very distracting, believe it or not, to the people up here, so...[1653.75]
Well, we were told we can't clap, and we were told we could blow up.
No, 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 I'm saying this to everybody else, not you. I know you snap, okay, but I'm...
I don't snap loud.
No, I know, but I'm trying to keep, I want you to be focused, and I'm trying to keep the snapping to a minimum.
I know you support me.
Okay. All right, ma'am. Okay, let's start the time. Go ahead.
Tonight, you're discussing the privacy form, but let's talk about the info sheet that comes with it, because let's be real, this thing is basically a parental wish list, a how-to...
She yawned.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, go ahead.
And I just had an orgasm earlier.
Okay, we'll give you...
A how-to guide on yanking kids from... Should I start over?
Start over, please.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait. Thank you. Tonight, you're discussing the privacy form, but let's talk about the info sheet that comes with it, because let's be real, this thing is basically a parental wish list, a how-to guide on yanking kids from locker rooms, dodging sex ed, and filling out complaints when parents don't get their way. Very thorough for parents, and students, totally erased. You know, what you're missing is the section for students to opt back in when their parents opt out. That language should be front and center in the info sheet. Otherwise, you're not just cutting students out, you're gagging them. And who pays the price when parents' ideology gets put above student rights? LGBTQ plus students. The kids who depend on safe spaces, accurate health education, and basic respect just to feel human at school. Ignore them, and you're not protecting families, you're targeting children. And targeting children isn't parental choice, it's discrimination. Discrimination that drags you straight into Title IX complaints, civil rights investigations, and lawsuits that will drain this district's bank accounts. So if you pass this policy as it is, own it. Own that you choose parents' politics over student rights. Own the lawsuit, the investigations, and the price tag, but don't act shocked when it all lands in your lap. You've been warned.
Thank you.
Next up is Jennifer San Nicholas, followed by Greg Langworthy.
All right. I don't disagree with anything Caroline said, but I'm at the point where I think, just for the love of God, can we move on? Fine, if you want to pass this, pass this, but can we talk about improving growth and proficiency and get back to educating our kids? We have been distracted by this issue for months, and it's ridiculous. This is the Board of Education, not the Board of whatever this is, and it's just distracting, and it's not improving test scores, it's not improving GPAs, it's not making our kids learn and catching up from the time when they were off with COVID. So, let's get back to it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Welcome, Mr. Langworthy.
Yep, good to be here. So, I just want to review, I think this was a big win for the board, and just to review where you guys were. This started out, you were addressing a problem that was ignored in other school districts. I know that I approached the Marietta School District with this issue a couple of years ago, my wife and I, and it was just, you know, my hands are tied, we're not going to do anything. And you guys addressed it, and it caused quite a commotion in the community. You know, we had a lot of personal attacks, you know, Emile was attacked, Melinda was attacked, probably all you guys had some abuse in this, but you stuck with it. And so, what I think this showed, being persistent and making the arguments, you know, this is, again, battling the argument, not the person. I think that's the whole theme that I'm trying to emphasize, and that's what parliamentary procedure is. It gives you a means of discussing controversial issues in a respectful way, so you get everyone's input in a multitude of counselors' wisdom. You know, Jen's got ideas, you've got ideas, Steve's got ideas, Joe's got ideas, Melinda's got ideas. How do you do it in a way that brings all that wisdom together, and you come up with a solution that is good for everyone? And you guys came up with a policy, you came together after all that controversy, after some very contentious public meetings, you listened to the public, and then the staff was actually able to put meat on the bone, so to speak, get this into action. And so, I've read what the staff has come up with, and again, the staff is to be commended. You know, the policy was there, but then how do you implement the policy? So I think the staff did a really good job doing this, and you came up with something that many school districts have been afraid to even address. So I think this was a big win for the board, and just want to commend you that you stuck with it, you persevered, staff supported you, and I think this was a good thing, so thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Langworthy. Okay, we're good. So, Mrs. Weirzma, do you want to say anything about this privacy update?
No, I'm going to go ahead and give it to Mrs. Dais to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, and you had asked a couple of questions, so I think I'll just go through and answer the questions, and then see if the governing board has anything else I can provide clarity on. This FAQ opt-out form was presented a couple of weeks ago at our board meeting. It's a combined document that gives our parents access to all of the opt-out options and subsequent ed code and board policies that support them in one place. So, the question was, to what extent has this been communicated with our families? We actually have a communication plan prepared. I was waiting for after tonight's meeting, in case there were any other questions. I know this is an info item, not an action, but I still was looking forward to providing the update and seeing what other conversations there were. This is going to be going out in our Community Connection. Every Friday, it goes out for the rest of the semester. It's scheduled to be in our annual parent notification packet that goes out in the spring, and as parents in the district, we have to read it cover to cover and sign that we are reading it and that we're seeing all of our rights that are in there, so it'll be included in that as well. It's also been added, or will be, starting tomorrow morning as a link on the bottom of every school webpage. The other question that we received is, what's been proposed for staff training? Well, a lot of these opt-outs, our staff is already trained in. We've been exercising these opt-out options under law and policy for several years. However, because this document might be new to some of our administrators, and we absolutely want them to be well-positioned to respond to our families and to know all of the things that are available to them, starting tomorrow, I'm going to all of our principals' meetings through the course of the next few weeks, and I am scheduled for a period of time to provide them a training on this document and the Google Form and the process that ensues. And then, our middle school students given the option to opt out of dressing for PE. This is a really good question. It was actually brought up in our board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I believe, because I went back over and I watched the board meeting in that section to make sure I wasn't missing anything for the conversation, that we've been given direction through board consensus to have a committee where we're going to work with our PE teachers and talk about this as an option. In fact, we've reached out to see in Riverside County if there's any other schools that don't dress out. We're making sure we're not missing anything in terms of ed code or state requirements or our federal programs monitoring in terms of dressing out, and we are convening a team with PE teachers, and that is going to be done along with Ms. Ricken to get some feedback on this so that we can actually explore this. It might be an interesting option that we have available to us moving forward. And then, Ms. Weirzma, you were wondering if any edits had made. When I rewatched the board meeting a couple of times, I know it was brought up that we wanted maybe something to be added in there in terms of survey questions, et cetera. So I actually did a little bit more digging and added to that portion of this opt-out FAQ in terms of how do you opt out of surveys given to students? And we do have a really strict protocol in place. I mean, by law, I mentioned at the last board meeting, as parents, we've received the survey notification. It's 30 days before the survey. If I opt out as a parent this semester, it's automatically assumed I'm also opting out for next semester. Parents have access to all of the questions that we provide, but I added something in here just to make sure that that edit was made and reiterated, and that is also the protection of pupil rights amendment, which is known as PERPA. We have FERPA, and we have PERPA. I could nerd out on both of them if you want me to, but under PERPA, we are not allowed to ask these kinds of questions that are titled or designated in the list that you provided. If it's a survey that's given under the Department of Education, parents have to provide active permission. If it's a survey that's given locally or through the state, parents have to be given the right to opt out. So I just wanted to reiterate on that, because I feel like instead of an opt-out form other than what we currently do, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that our staff is informed in what they are allowed and not allowed to ask students in surveys and class surveys and things like that. So what we've started to do is work on some communication, almost Dr. Arce, and I will be working on that, just making sure that parents aren't feeling like these questions are coming in class. If there's a survey that asks any of these more qualifying questions, we are required by law to notify families in advance so that they have the opportunity to opt out. And if I'm missing anything, let me know, but those were the main questions that I think you wanted me to provide an update on.
Thank you for that. With the PE discussion, when that happens, if we could discuss if it isn't already going to happen, having some aspect of that privacy policy being in the syllabus or just one other place that parents are aware, I think that would be helpful. And then, I think another mention I thought of was during sex education, when they're talking about all these issues and privacy, that could be another place. I think, because I know parents are so busy and don't have the bandwidth to take everything in, if we can weave it through in several places, feel good that we've done the best that we can do to inform people, then we've done our job, and we kind of move forward from there.
And I also want to thank Mr. Barham for bringing that Google Form at the last board meeting, because I think great minds think alike, right? We had the exhibit that was coming forward, and we had this Google Form that we were working on in the Student Services Department, and the questions were almost synonymous. And so, you can see what's been added on the exhibit for tonight's agenda item is the Google Form of the exhibit. And so, the questions match exactly.
Yeah.
And then, if a parent reaches out to their site, that's what would be sent to them, and then that conversation starts. Because the last thing I want to say with any of these opt-outs is that it's not on paper, it's not something that is dry and cold, and we just receive a signature. We are 100% about parent communication and parent partnership and the conversations that we have with our families. We've always been centered on that, to make sure that we're understanding where our parents and students are coming from, and that we can find a solution that works best for them. So you will see on the bottom of the school webpages, the link to this, and the information coming out in the Community Connection. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Kamroski, do you have anything?
No, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz? Okay, I have nothing. Mrs. Weirzma, do you have anything further? Melissa? Nothing? Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Dais, for giving that report out.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to number three. One public comment. Janice, please come to the podium.
Hi. Hello. Regarding tonight's discussion on board consensus on adding items to the agenda, I want to clarify that under the Brown Act, any trustee has the right to request that an item within the board's jurisdiction be placed on a future agenda. The law also gives members of the public the right to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda. TVUSD's own board bylaws affirm these rights and outline the process. Yet, in practice, these rights are not being honored. Trustee requests have been disregarded. In some cases, items that were placed on the agenda have been removed during the meeting itself. On September 9th, for example, the memorandum of understanding with Riverside University Health System Behavioral Health requested by trustee Barham was included on the agenda but not voted on due to the board majority vote. That action raises serious Brown Act violations, concerns. The same problem applies to public requests. My August 28th request for an agenda item was ignored, while a later request from another community member was honored and placed on this agenda. And even though this item has now been taken off the agenda, but I missed the reason why, this selective treatment undermines transparency, erodes public trust, and violates both the law and your own bylaws. Finally, agenda setting should not be arbitrary. It should reflect the rights of trustees and the public, applied consistently and fairly. Therefore, I urge the board to use tonight's discussion to reaffirm those rights, follow the law, and rebuild trust in this governance process. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Janice. Okay, so this item was submitted by Dr. Anderson, and she's not here. So, is it okay if I speak to this first? Do you guys okay with that? Mrs. Weirzma? Okay. So, we've had some issues with how to add items to the agenda, and we need to follow what our bylaw says. I mean, and we've talked about what went on with me at the very, very beginning. We have a hierarchy of board governing documents, and those are statutes, ed code, and our bylaws, and then our governing handbook. It is a hierarchy, and we need to be paying attention to the bylaws. I don't know what's going on with future agenda items. I found that what happened with Mrs. Weirzma was kind of, it was weird, okay, to me. I was very confused by it. You know, there was a lot of people here that night at the podium, and there was a lot of chaos, I'll call it that. I liked when you wanted to be adding items to the future agenda. You brought it forward, and by consensus, we agreed that that would go on as a future agenda item. And I think that that is, that's the way we should do it. I mean, our bylaws already say, unless we want to change our bylaws, that we can add, that any one of us can add an item to the agenda. And then, it's up to the president and the superintendent to determine where the item goes in information or action. But I think that we need to start with future agenda items and get some consensus as to how we're going to, how those items are going to be placed on the agenda. So that's where I'll leave the presentation to start. Does anybody have any comments?
All right. Yeah, I have a bunch of future agenda items, so it's going to take quite a while for me to go through all of them, since this board saw a fit to put us in a position of taking a position on an amicus brief. If that's our precedent, I got a lot of items that I'm going to propose that we take amicus briefs on. There's a lot of stuff going on that has to do with education and funding that I think is really important that we support.
Okay.
So when we get to it, I will delineate them.
But the question is, do you have any comment as to how we should be adding items to the future agenda? Because the bylaws already say how we are supposed to add action and/or information reports.
Well, at the end of the meeting, when you say, do you have any future agenda items, whoever has one speaks about it, Linay takes it down, and puts it on the agenda for the next meeting.
If we have consensus.
It's pretty simple.
If we have consensus. Did it go on?
I don't think we need consensus to add it.
Okay.
You don't need consensus to add an agenda item.
Maybe we don't. Maybe we don't. Okay. So that's two minutes there. Okay, Mrs. Weirzma, go ahead.
Okay, so, I know as a trustee, I've followed government code and our district bylaws in either mentioning something here on the dais or officially asking 10 days ahead of time. And there's two different ways to do it, right? You can mention something for a future agenda item, and that's great, but we shouldn't have to go by that alone, because there could be a tyranny of the majority, and there could certainly be a minority member who would want to see something, but should they bring it to a discussion at the end of a very long meeting, be stamped out. So that's why we all signed the governing handbook, which says on page 15, that any board member or any member of the public may request that a matter within the jurisdiction of the board be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting. It's true, it has to be in writing, submitted to the superintendent or designee. Yes, a president does have that jurisdiction with a superintendent to collaborate, and I will say, you're a different person when you're in charge, Mr. Barham. That respect and the way that you're conversing should be whether you're sitting in that seat or not, and I just want to note that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But that is something that you should carry out regardless of who's leading the meeting. The point is, is that we did sign this government handbook. It's a done deal. We should still be able to move forward with recognizing the fact an individual, just as Mr. Schwartz said, can bring it forward. We can discuss it as a group, but there still should be some wiggle room. We're all elected officials. We should be able to put something on if it's reasonable. It can take an up-down vote, fine, but I think we ought to honor one another with that and not change or propose that it's one way or the highway, which is there's consensus or there's nothing. I don't think that's the right way to do it.
As long as it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board.
Sure, and there could be differing perspectives on that as well, depending on the worldview and the argument and so on and so forth. But within reason, yes, individuals should be able to propose 10 days out and get it on.
Okay. All right, Dr. Kamroski.
I don't think we should put things on future agenda items if we want to at the end of the meeting unofficially. If we want to say, hey, I'm considering something for the future, that's up for the board member to state to the public, but we are elected by the members of this community, and if we want to agendize something, we should have full freedom to do it. And if we agendize something dumb, guess what? We're going to know about it from the community and fellow board members. Everyone should have that right. I do not agree with consensus. Now, if it's working with district staff, maybe a board member prudently says, hey, I'd like to work with somebody on this longer project. You guys mind, and get consensus? That might be good. But that shouldn't be a general rule, even though I did that. So I agree with the future agenda items. I think we should be able to agendize whenever we want, if it's within a seven-day window.
Okay.
And we were elected to do that very thing.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's just an extra layer of bureaucracy that's unneeded.
Mr. Schwartz?
Just a quick retort. So rather than keep all of you here, I know you want to go home and see the Dodger game or the, the Padre game's over, so is the Yankee game. I, I'll put mine in writing, and I will give them to Linay at some time before the next meeting.
Okay.
So I don't bore everyone to death.
And, you know, the only reason that I brought up the consensus was because that's how the city does it. And they seem to get along very well doing it that way, but I'm, if you're all open to, if that's what you, I'm fine with, if you want to put it on, as a future agenda item, as long as it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. And if it's not, then we talk about it. And, and maybe we have to get consensus at that point, but I mean, I don't see that as an issue, so.
Yeah, but you just said future agenda item. All, us three didn't say that. We just said to agendize. You're saying future. We didn't say that at all.
No, no, no. I mean, agendize, in the bylaws, it says, you, as long as it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, we can put it on the agenda.
You just, you just meant that generally, that in the future, if we want to agendize something, you didn't mean it must be in the future agenda.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm talking about future agenda items. You're saying that you don't even want to achieve consensus with that.
No, no way.
Okay, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Seems that Mr. Schwartz doesn't have a problem with that. And Mrs. Weirzmann, you don't?
I'm with Dr. Kamroski on this, and I would point out, yes, I'm proud of the city council. They have a pretty functional relationship. They don't have time limits. They get to talk things out. They have public comment at the end, however, they start at 3:00, so at 6:00, when people are off work, they can go and speak. So I think it would behoove us to look at their example, maybe aspire to get there, but in the meantime, no rights should be restricted about putting an agenda item on so long as it's in the parameters and done properly with communication.
Okay. So shall we move this information item to action? Are you guys okay with that at this time? Or do you want to put it on the next meeting? We can do it now.
Is it, this is the first read, right?
It's the first read, but we all seem to agree, so if you would like to take this to action, we can do that.
But is the agreement that we leave it as is? Because we already have bylaws that say you can do an either or, an or. It's either one.
Anybody can add anything to the agenda as long as it's within the subject matter jurisdiction. It's up to the president or the presiding officer.
That's what it says, right.
Yes.
That's what the handbook says.
Okay, and, so we all agree on that, okay? And then for future agenda items, anybody can add anything to the future agenda.
So it stays as is.
It stays as is.
Right.
So are you guys good with that?
I'm good keeping it just how it is.
Yeah, but let me throw a little caveat in there. When somebody agendizes something as an action item, it should stay as an action item, not I agendize it as an action item, and then all of a sudden it shows up in, under information reports. You can attest to that today. I can attest to that in the past. Jen can attest to that in the past. It needs to be very explicit, this is what I'm wanting to be agendized? I'm a governing board member? Please put it on the agenda, thank you. And not, it shows up somewhere else.
And the superintendent collaborates? Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
So action or information? If the board member says, hey, I think this is better information, or I think this is better action item, for example, you don't put a resolution under an information reports, you put it under an action item. There are things that should be delineated, and that's up to the board member. And then the board member puts it into an email. Make no mistake about it, this has not happened clearly in the last six months. It needs to be that way, just for the record.
Okay.
And just one other point. I think the handbook also says that the superintendent and the president collaborate together. So I would call on whoever that is in the mix, make sure with the president that it is agendized properly and that there's open communication with the board, because I was left hanging for the last meeting and couldn't figure out what was going on. And then something landed with my name on it that I hadn't planned to have on the agenda. Nothing's more frustrating than that. So it would behoove us to all do better as a team. Let's do it.
Okay. So do we, are we good? I mean, can we just, we have consensus. Do we have consensus, guys?
Yeah.
And gals?
There's three people that have consensus.
Okay. Okay, so.
What about Melissa?
Melissa, what do you think? Sorry. Are we good? Okay. So we're good? We're going to keep things the same, and let's move on. Okay. Uh, we're on, we're on four.
Four.
Yeah, we're on four. Now, this is an example to be quite, I mean, I think I put this in action, and then the president or you decide. Can we put this, are you guys okay changing? Do you have, do we have consensus to put this in action, this next one?
No, I'd like to keep it in information personally and just have the discussion.
Okay. All right.
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
I can't open this up. I'm getting Wi-Fi connection problems I have for the last hour. Did you agendize this under action? And then it got put under information reports?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm consistent. I have the same problem. I have no problem right now if we could take more consensus to move it into action, even though we're in information and reports. So if you want to take action on it, I'm fine with it because it's the way you wanted it to be agendized.
Thank you. And, thank you. And I think it's really important that this one be in action right now. Okay, so. That's board, yeah, that's board consensus.
If we, if we have to.
Are we good? No, I don't think we. Okay, so we're good.
I believe on information reports, we just need consensus, and if it goes to action, we absolutely need a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, and we have public comments on this? Okay. Okay, so.
First up is Josh Shirley, followed by Sarah Bell.
What got me involved.
Welcome, Josh.
What got me involved with the, the school district is how we were using attorneys. I've always felt like we've done it wrong. I think we've wasted a lot of money and a lot of school district time with attorneys. I am disturbed the fact that we're still back to using Advocates for Faith and Freedom. I was just trying to do a little bit of research about like what their background is and what they support, and I found something oddly connecting on a URL, it's a 412church.org, ministries we support.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to give him some latitude.
We have Advocates for Faith and Freedom tied to a religious group. Why are we choosing attorneys that have a very particular political and religious?
Josh?
Yes, sir.
So we have to, we're amending the, the attorney policy?
About how, how the board contacts council, correct?
Well, that, that is part of it. So if you want to, if you want to speak to that, that's part of the policy.
Absolutely. So the, so the, the problem that I have here is that.
May, maybe it's better to go in a general, because then you can fully give a detailed report out of what you want to do. If you're trying to do it here, you're, you're going to, you're not going to be aligned because you're going.
Well, doctor, he wants to talk.
I'm just saying, I want him to be able to fully speak. I don't know if he can do it right here.
Okay, but let, let's see what he does.
Really, I am just looking for a policy that really makes our contacting council intelligent, that we are not just seeking out political footballs to, to punt around, and that there is a common sense method that if the superintendent or any of the people on the staff need to contact general counsel, that it is done frankly with the priorities of student education, staff development, and what is the best method we could give an education for our schools. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to speak on, I was going to say something about the snapping fingers, but I'll, I'll say that for later. Um, I do want to express my support for the proposed changes to board policy regarding access to legal counsel. Those of us that have been around a while, we were here when the, it was previously revised not so long ago to allow only the board president access to legal counsel because district legal services has been used to advance board members' personal agendas rather than for legitimate board district business. But given the ongoing volatile climate between the board members, it's critical that our policies be amended to reflect sound governance practices and the practical realities of how this board is running. There have been several occasions where, and I wrote this earlier today when Mr. Barham was not sitting as president, but there have been several occasions where, as board clerk, Mr. Barham has been called to act as board president in the president's absence during the meeting. I promise I'm not a witch. I did not predict that. I, I would not want the board president or any member acting in that role to have to navigate that position without direct and timely access to district legal counsel, so I definitely support the amendment. And in that, I'm asking each of you to put your personal bias aside and consider the resources that you would want any trustee to have, acting as president or acting board president. I urge you all to adopt these changes and let this help the entire Temecula Valley Unified School District community. We were taught, I know this is off topic, we were taught by teachers, us parents, and audiences to snap, to show our approval when it's not appropriate to clap or make noise because I know it's distracting. And I remember the first time I was recording my daughter's choir solo, and people were snapping. It was really annoying in my video. But yeah, we were taught by teachers to do that, and so I don't think anyone means disrespect.
No, I know. Okay. Thanks, Sarah.
Last speaker, Melanie Bousar.
Hi, Melanie.
Hi. I urge the board to adopt a clear and forcible guardrails around how legal counsel is accessed by the board president. The policy modification says that the board, board president shall not act alone in consulting with legal counsel. That safeguard is critical because when individual trustees, including the board president, consult with district attorneys without oversight, it creates the appearance of private representation rather than district-wide representation. I have reached out to the district today regarding my concerns of private communications between the board president and attorneys while those same attorneys were under contract to represent the district in high-stakes litigation. I respectfully asked that any policy adopted today go even further, that all consultations with district-affiliated legal counsel and board president be immediately documented in writing and shared with the entire board, including attorneys' names and the purpose of those consultations, and that no district-affiliated attorney be permitted to provide personal advice or mediation for individual trustees outside of formal board direction. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a lot going on here with this. So I brought this forward for a number of reasons. Our board president, and, and a community member actually brought it and spoke to this in terms of how we were using our attorneys, and basically said, Anderson and Barham, what are you doing? Well, Barham has no frigging idea, okay, what is going on with our attorneys at all. And that is why I brought this, because I know that our board president is the only person talking, pretty much the only person, talking to attorneys right now. So the bills are being racked up. Nobody knows why she's talking to these attorneys, and the board policy says that you're supposed to fill something out and say, I want to call this attorney, and this is why, and get the proper permission. When I brought this forward, when I first got elected, I figured that there would be responsibility in enacting this policy, and there hasn't been. So that is why I'm bringing this forward, to amend that the board president may not act alone, that the clerk, whoever the clerk is, if the board president is going to act, that the permission be obtained by the superintendent, the clerk, and, as well as the president, herself or himself. But this is very necessary, I feel, for, for that reason. And I also have evidence from community members and also myself that this president is speaking to attorneys about personal matters and not board business, which is a conflict of interest. So I can talk about that later here, if that's what people want, and I think I probably will at some point in this meeting, but we've got some issues with our current president speaking to attorneys about business that is not district-related. So that is why I'm bringing this forward. We have to follow this policy. We have to ask, we have to ask and get the proper permission. Why do we want to talk to an attorney? Who do we want to talk to? And then in addition to that, there's no summaries coming from the attorneys, and that's what's supposed to happen as well. So nobody knows anything in terms of what's going on with these attorneys. So this amendment is to provide those safeguards and bring things back under control. And typically, this is what happens. A board president should not be the person talking to attorneys. That is not how things normally run in a district. The person who should be talking to an attorney is the superintendent. He is running the operation. He is, he or she are the people that should be talking to attorneys. There's no, there should be very few reasons why a board president, and I know I'm probably going to get some disagreement here, because the culture of this board, and I'm not knocking anybody here, but the culture of this board changed in 2022, and the presidents or presiding officers started to talk to the attorneys. It's like, we got to get away from that. We got to go back and, and, and do what is typical in a school district. And that, and what is typical is, is that the superintendent is the person that talks to the attorneys. So that's it, so. Well, I, we, this is.
Can I add to the discussion?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you.
Okay.
Go ahead. I mean, so, but we're, we're two minutes. Go ahead. Two minutes twice around. Go ahead.
Okay, so in 2022, when several of us came onto the board, there was a need to get away from the status quo and kind of the establishment way of doing things, and I mean no disrespect to anyone in the district, but we knew there needed to be a change in attorneys. I think that we benefit when there's a balance. I think the superintendent should fully be able to ask their questions and receive counsel, but so should a board president. And actually, there are districts where individual trustees do have the ability to speak with someone for five to 10 minutes. Maybe they seek permission. That's fine. I understand that. But on December 17th, 2024, when new leadership was established, things were pushed aside, usurped, experience was pushed away, and there were changes made. I actually disagreed with what went down and how it got locked into just the president, and then the president and the superintendent having to comment. Dr. Woods shouldn't have to get Melinda Anderson's okay to do it. He should have that latitude. At the same time, she should have the ability to speak to an attorney. Maybe she asks permission or gets a summary. At the same time, I, as a trustee, have been locked out for months from being able to ask a simple question, which is egregious, because as an elected official, I should have that ability. And because I've had a network for three years now of people all over the state, I get some good advice elsewhere because I haven't had the opportunity to. But today, I had the, the chance to talk to Mr. DiMarco. That's all I needed, was five to seven minutes for some clarification on something with a contract that made all the difference in how I came in here tonight. So there has to be a balance. You don't throw it all to the superintendent, throw the trustees out. There has to be a working relationship that's functional, where we're not overspending, abusing anything with authority or their representation and the like. And I don't think we've hit that yet, but we cannot throw the baby out with the bathwater. We have to be able to discuss things with attorneys. We're not the experts. They are.
And, and there's provision for you to do that in this policy. I mean, it's just, you haven't been given permission, but the provision for you to talk to an attorney is here, so.
Right, but in your advocating at the end, you basically said, I think it should be mostly the superintendent. And that's where I go, no, nope, I disagree with that.
It, it's, it depends on the issue.
Sure.
That's what it is. It depends on the issue. If you, if you're not the clerk or you're not the president, and you need to speak to an attorney, there's an avenue for you in this policy.
And it should be fair and not targeted. There should be a way to do it right.
And I think this is fair. I mean, I don't know if you think it's fair, but I wrote it to where I think it's fair. But, you know, you can criticize it, and we can change it if you want. Right? Okay, Dr. Kamroski, do you have anything that you want to add to this?
Yeah, I would say, number one, the superintendent is our employee, and it's backwards. The board president should be calling attorneys when the board president sees fit. Superintendent is the CEO of the district, but the superintendent works for the board. That being said, in 2022, all we did was follow. That being said, in 2022, all we did was follow the governing handbook, which was previously established before we were even voted in, giving that authority to the superintendent and/or the board president. Number two, each one of us up here has one-fifth voting power, except for the president, well, one-fifth voting power. None above each other. We all have the same vote, but the board president has just a little bit more authority than all of us, and that's why the board votes in the board president. One of those is the approval of the agenda. One of those is contacting legal when necessary. Another one of those is a seating arrangement. You know, I might be forgetting a few more, but that purposely is the leadership that the board elects. And so that board president has that position from the board, and that is separate from the superintendent. The superintendent is hired from the board. So I would say I disagree with all these changes.
Okay. Okay.
So what would you advocate for?
Can I speak, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He needs his turn.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
So you can always contact CSBA Legal. It's free. You don't have to pay them a cent. You send your questions and you get your answers if it's something general. If it's something more specific, then you go through the process to get permission. Part of our fiduciary responsibility is keeping bills down and just calling attorneys for little things that we could get answers from cabinet, for example, or from other places is something that we should be doing. And as, as you, you've heard me say, I have my own attorney. If I have a question, I'm willing to pay him for it. I don't want to burden the district on my personal questions to my attorney. That's not what board attorneys are here for. They're here for business, not to deal with personal issues.
Okay. I'm going to ask Dr. Woods. Would you weigh in on this?
Well, you're talking to somebody that has 38 years of experience, many of those years working directly with attorneys. I can have a five-minute conversation with an attorney and get a lot done. I don't need background information. I know a lot of the legal terms myself. I know the case law in many cases. There is something about that relationship between a superintendent and an attorney that can be valuable. The board needs to trust the superintendent. They hire the superintendent. If things aren't going well, they can make corrections at that level too if they want. So I've seen districts be very successful when the superintendent is heavily involved in these conversations.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to weigh in too, Dr. Velez.
I actually don't know how much more I can add to what Dr. Woods said. I would totally agree with what he did say. I understand that every school district is different. I, and everyone, every school district has their own issues and the things that they're dealing with. However, I did share, and I did share this with you when we talked about this, prior to about December of 2022, board members did not contact attorneys. I understand and I respect, we're in a very different time, but that was the sole role of the superintendent. I think we are hired in positions where we are well-versed in ed code, 30 years, 38 years, 20-plus years. And so by working through ed code, which we're very familiar with, as Dr. Woods said, we're able to speak the language, we're able to understand IDEA and all the acronyms. And usually it's a pretty quick conversation. So I don't know, other than that, I don't know how much more I could add to Dr. Woods.
Okay.
I'd like to-
No.
Oh, yeah, when you're done, I'll speak again.
Okay. I think I need to take my turn because I presented, so I'm not going to be long. Okay. So I guess my concern is at this juncture. The reason that I'm doing this is because the board president and the attorneys are running this district right now. That is the way that I see this, and that should not be happening. The superintendent is the CEO of this district strategically and operationally. I mean, he's running it, but it's, there's a lot going on here with the board, the current president and the attorneys. They're too involved in the operations of this district right now. And that is why I'm putting this forward. It's an internal control. It's a safeguard. And we've had issues, with no disrespect here, but we've had issues with legal fees, okay? And it's because of the, I feel it is because of the change that we've, the cultural change that has taken place with board presidents and/or presiding officers. We've got to give it back to the people who are running this, this district. And that's why I'm putting this forward. Okay. Mrs. Wiersma.
Yes. So I actually did call CSBA because I haven't been able to reach attorneys when I've needed to, and I was told we don't have that particular service available. So I was turned away. Just wanted to clarify that because I did try that route, and I forget what it was about, but that, that didn't end up panning out. What about this? Constituent just texted me, trustees should have an allotted budget for legal consultation without having to jump through hoops first. And I would agree to that. I think that's an excellent idea because there should be times where we, as trustees, should be able to reach out, not to take advantage of a situation or go into a personal situation that may not be in the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, but we should be able to do it. I'm not convinced that we've found the right balance here. I don't think we put it all on the superintendent's side. I don't think that board presidents should be able to unilaterally make decisions and no one knows what's going on. There has to be something different, and I like this idea that trustees should have an allotted amount. I should be able to call in certain circumstances without having to jump through all the hoops, all the red tape, all the regulations and so forth. So I see what Dr. Kamroski is saying, and I'd like to know more about what you think, if you think what we currently have is right, or do you like that idea of an allotment? Because I think that would be a more fair and balanced way to do it.
This is going to be a good one, but the time's got to be reset. Thanks. The elephant in the room is that this is taxpayers' money when we contact legal. We get it. Trust me. We've heard this for the last year. There's been an overage as far as use of attorneys. We get it. We know that. And I wanted to just challenge a point that you made, Emile. There is no board president running the district. Again, a board member only has one-fifth voting power. That's it. I mean, nobody, no one person can run anything. It's literally five of us. Well, now four of us, or whatever it is on the dais when we take action. That being said, wouldn't you have wanted to contact a lawyer when you tried to agendize an item and then you feel stifled and then it gets agendized the wrong way and you think to myself, or you think to yourself, I want to contact an attorney. This isn't right. Well, that was me. When I agendized something on Action, or my name wasn't on it, then my name was on it. And I was like, wait a minute, take this off. And I was told, no, you do that at the board meeting. I was like, you're the board president. Please do it now. What are you doing? And I was stifled, and I would have loved to have just been informed by an attorney. Yes, this is your right. You can agendize it per governing handbook, per bylaw. And I think that you would want that right, Steve would want that right, Melinda and Jen. That being said, Huff, General Legal Counsel, years ago, he told me, he said, many of his school district, he actually allows all five board members to contact him. We're not talking half an hour, how was your day? How was your weekend? No, straight to business. I have a question or two. And many times he told me, he does not even charge board members if it's within a minute to two to three. And so I'm open to that because there are circumstances where you think to yourself, and I think to myself, I need to talk to a lawyer, man. Something's not right here.
I've needed to talk to a lawyer for the past month.
Well, so then maybe you can be on board with-
So I paid $500 an hour to my own attorney to make sure I get advice. So I get it.
Yeah, so maybe it shouldn't be that way. And all I'm saying is Huff, our General Legal Counsel, he's already granted that to other districts. So I'm open to that, but literally with strict guidelines.
I don't think this is a vote.
It's an action item.
Oh, yeah, we did. We did make this an action.
That's why I wanted information.
Okay. All right. So we need to go around one more time. Does anybody have anything to say here? Okay. All right. So I move that we approve, although I like your idea, Mrs. Wiersma. We can come back to that. For now, we, I think that we should approve this, so I'm going to make the motion that we do, that we approve the changes here. I think we should come back and consider what you're saying. I think it's, it's a good idea, something to consider. So I'm going to make this motion that we approve the changes and that we follow what's here because we haven't been following it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Laney.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma? No. Kamroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes. Motion fails.
Melissa?
Two to two.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. General public comments.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
Can you explain why the five of you?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain why five of you?
I can't do that now. I can't do that now because that happened at the beginning of-
Actually, we're obligated to report after close that it was taken off so that the public can know that it was. I'm just saying, it's not a Brown Act violation.
I don't think it happened. I don't know. Did it happen?
It happened during open.
Yeah, it happened during open.
Okay. Sometimes we repeat it after close, but okay. Sometimes we repeat, hey, the board took action at the beginning of the meeting, so-
No, I agree. I agree. Okay.
Gary, it did happen during open, right? Right? The approval of the agenda, you can't beat it.
General public comments.
Okay. It did happen, the approval of the agenda, right?
Sorry, Caroline.
Twenty-two.
How many? Twenty-two? Two minutes? Two minutes? That's three. Okay. Two minutes, guys.
Up is Dani Malina, followed by Beth Seha.
Good evening. I know it was removed from the agenda, but I wanted to talk about it anyways because I find it amazing how they seem to love going after you, Dr. Kamroski. You know, in this censor, they talk about the recall on June 4th, but then they leave out the reelection in November, which is fabulous. But really, what's incredible is the people that signed it, you know, 81 people. And I bet if we cross-reference this with the One Temecula PAC, everybody would be on that name. This is 0.07% of our population here. And 15 of these people I know, one of them actually ran from a restraining order she received recently. I've heard every single one of you up here talk about being attacked. There's a lady here tonight, she's in here, she knows who she is. She attacked my family. She followed my wife. She came to our house. She was served with a restraining order, and she ran from it, ran. Let me ask you, what innocent person runs when they're being served with a restraining order? It makes my blood boil that these people that act like that, another one in here as well, runs Voices of the Fash, goes to people's houses, takes photos in their bedroom. It's embarrassing. And Ms. Daliwak, by the way, not Upne, I was corrected, Dr. K, Ms. Daliwak. Apparently, it's disrespectful to use first names, even though she uses ours all the time, but that's okay. But Ms. Daliwak brings these people into our community and adds them in here. And they talk about establishing enforced policies, ensure that trustees who engage in harassment, threats, or intimidation are subject to appropriate disciplinary measures. Meanwhile, she puts names in here who harass community members. I have the proof. I have the pictures. And you know, I know for a fact, Mr. Schwartz, because now you're paying attention to me and I appreciate that, but the lady who harassed my wife, who seriously impacted my family, you brought her into this district, sir. And that is a shame. It's embarrassing. We could do better. Thank you.
Followed by Christine Masa.
Good evening. My name's Beth Seha. I've been a substitute teacher for TVUSD for 22 years, and I'm here tonight on behalf of all the substitute teachers in our district to request a pay raise. TVUSD Board is responsible for making sure every classroom has a qualified adult leading it every single day. Without substitutes, that would be impossible. Every day, teachers are absent, and every day, someone has to step in so our kids don't lose valuable learning time. And that someone is a substitute teacher. How can we expect excellence in Temecula schools if we don't value the very people who keep them running? Substitutes are the safety net of our district. We walk into unfamiliar classrooms. We adapt to different grade levels, subjects, and groups of students. We manage the classroom, keep order, and make sure learning continues. We are not just villains. We are educators, mentors, and protectors. Right now, you're asking substitutes to shoulder that responsibility for far less than we deserve. Our pay is pretty comparable to hamburger flippers. Neighboring districts pay nearly $100 more per day. Think about it. $100 more every single day. This equates to $2,000 more per month for those of us that work daily. Why would a sub choose Temecula when other districts pay so much better? This pay gap sends us a clear message. You do not value our work. As a result, many of your great subs have already left this district and are working in others. This is not just about fairness. It's about respect. It's about being valued.
Time, ma'am. Thank you.
Thanks.
Christine. Christine Masa, followed by Michael Davis.
Hi, Christine.
Hello. So I wasn't planning to actually make any comments tonight, but after witnessing that catastrophe of the closed session, I couldn't contain my embarrassment for you. Dr. Kamroski, how dare you try to postpone any agenda item presented by the community indefinitely, meaning that you don't want to discuss it at all? Never mind that it was an agenda item detrimental to you. And you're a hypocrite because you just said that you support community members putting agenda items on that are in the jurisdiction of the board, but apparently not when the agenda items are about you. It's shameful the way that you, as well as several other board members, try to say that you listen to the community, but when 80 members of the community put forward an agenda item, you completely disregard it. So the next time you want to say, I listen to the community, we know that you're lying. And Mrs. Wiersma, having advisory, having advisory committee members who are also TVUSD parents submit an agenda item is no more a conflict of interest than you giving a public comment as a community member during a meeting. Just sit down and shut it. And Dr. Anderson, wherever you are, you've shown that you cannot be impartial. I understand an agenda item calling for a vote of no confidence for you must have been hurtful, but if you want to display integrity, debating a board member on their vote while they are in the process of voting is not the way to do it. Yes, you did that when trustee Schwartz was casting his vote, and you kept asking him, are you sure this is what you want? Are you sure you know what you're voting for? It's embarrassing, and you did nothing to further your image as a person of integrity. You only heard it more. And trustee Wiersma, I want to have an honest discussion. You probably displayed the utmost cowardice when you were voting on the agenda item for Dr. Anderson, and you postponed your vote to see how Dr. Kamroski would vote. Don't think we didn't notice. And then you issued your vote. You're not at Olive Garden, he's not ordering your dinner. If you want people to believe that you could think for yourself, you just underscored that you can't. Now we know if we didn't already, you're just a follower. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Masa.
Michael Davis, followed by Josh Sterling.
Board, thank you for letting me speak with you once again this evening. When I began coming here a year ago, I came with the intentions of sharing a voice for our LGBTQIA+ siblings, being a religious figure, speaking for those voices. I wanted to come to these meetings with a different volume and a different focus. Being here at these meetings at different times, hearing faith voices very loud and very confrontational, it's always been my goal to be the calmer voice, to encourage the board to do things to make sure that no one is left behind. At our last meeting that I saw online, the special called meeting, I saw loud voices become confrontational reactionary, very loud voices calling out liberal participants for different reasons. I still want to come as the calm voice this evening, even with dealing with that confrontation, because every time our voices get louder, people suffer. Our LGBTQIA+ siblings suffer, our transgender kids suffer. This evening, we talked about immigrant kids that could lose their parents during the school day. They suffer. There are individuals that need substitute teachers that are paid well and are qualified teachers to be here. Every time our voices get louder, someone suffers. And I want this board to remember that. This evening, I heard one voice share something very clear and calm that should set the standard for how everybody on this vo- for how everybody on this void board works. And by the way, it's the only voice that matters in this room. It was the words of our student board member this evening, as she talked to the entire board and everyone in this room. How can we act with each other so that we are the calm voices that don't accidentally hurt people because we're too busy screaming?
Thank you.
Josh Shirling, followed by Steve Geiger.
I just returned from Norway. I brought each of you a small present, hope you enjoy it. While I was there, I had asked what's happened with American politics. And what I've realized is that we have weaponized and we have promoted cruelty. Cruelty is very easy to do, it is easy to hate. It only requires the lowest level of intelligence to be cruel. If you wish to know who the most intelligent person in the room is, look for the kindest. It takes empathy and emotional intelligence to be kind. But the beautiful thing about kind people is they don't have a competition, because there's a paradox about kindness. They understand that competition and comparison is the thief of joy. They only care about being kind. What I would implore all of us is that if you're given a headline, if you're given a story, if you've given an email from a parent, and it makes you enraged, it makes you feel like you have to do something about it, take a moment to reflect, take a moment to fact-check, take a moment to compose your thoughts, and I think Dr. Komroski said ponder. I think that's a really good thing that you did there, and I appreciated that. It was good reflection, it was good leadership. Thank you. I wish we would do that more often. Melissa, thank you for your wonderfully thought-out words, and thank you all for the time to speak to you.
Thanks, Josh.
Steve Geiger, followed by Mary Davis.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, and members of the community. My name is Steve Geiger. A little bit about myself, I'm a veteran Force Reconnaissance Marine, a former CIA Global Response half contractor, for context, watch the movie Thirteen Hours, and current law enforcement of over eleven years with the Los Angeles Police Department. I don't say that to boast, I say it because I've spent my career in security realm at some point, time or another. As a father of three daughters in this district, this is personal. The facts are clear, half of all school attacks in the US end in just one minute. By five minutes, over eighty percent are over. The FBI confirms most end before outside law enforcement arrives. Even with fast response, the median police arrival is three minutes. That's already too late. Here in TVUSD, we fund just 3.5 school resource deputies, over 28,000 students across thirty-three schools. That's nearly 8,000 students per deputy. National Best Practice, or NASRO, says we should have at least one on school grounds at all times. Meanwhile, the City of Temecula's website claims six RSOs, but the board contract funds only 3.5. Which is it? Parents deserve clarity. And there's another contradiction. Speaking with the district earlier this year, they say our plans will continue to rely on RSO deputies as the armed response, yet hours ago, about three and a half hours ago, I was told, "Sorry, it's not in the budget." Which one is it? Either you believe protection isn't needed, or you refuse to fund it. Both answers fail parents. The truth is, TVUSD holds reserves well above two to three percent legally required. That's tens of millions of dollars, but our kids are left without full-time trained armed security on campus. Bottom line is, attacks end in minutes, often seconds. If security starts miles away, it's already too late. Our kids need protection on campus, not in transit. I'll be back at the next school board meeting to enlighten everyone else on some more topics.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Davis, followed by Greg Langworthy.
Hi, Mary.
Hi. Hi, yes, good evening, Mary Davis here. So, first of all, I wanted to congratulate you on Constitution Day. I was so happy to see your district did that, I saw some of the pictures, thank you for doing that. And I still believe, very importantly, carry a constitution with you at all times. I'm here tonight to uphold the rights of women and girls and to highlight that. It may seem like we're well into this, but I want to share a story. In San Diego, there's a restaurant, the Grant Grill, and it was only fifty-six years ago that women weren't allowed in there by themselves. They couldn't go in for lunch, and they were only allowed after 3:00 PM with a male escort. So really, not even almost a half a century. And that's why I fight so hard for the rights of women and girls, not to give up that precious spot territory. In fact, October 10th is XX Day. XX, a Roman numeral, celebrating women, XX chromosome, so I encourage you to celebrate that with me. As far as kindness, one gentleman brought that up, and I find it very interesting because it's actually a form of manipulation, weaponized empathy. And while kindness is a noble goal unto itself, it can be weaponized. I mean, according to that, honestly, if we're going to use kindness, should every woman consent to rape? Because it's what the man wants, it would be kind? No. No, I'm telling you, women have to hold boundaries, whether that's on a podium, in a bathroom, in the locker room. And when you don't, if we look up psychological manipulation tactics, could include gaslighting, guilt, manipulation, bullying, name-calling, or DARVO, deny, attack, reverse, victim oppressor, words like fascist and Nazi, overused, and you actually dilute and devalue their meaning. I do a bridge banner where somebody called me a Nazi Mima, and I thought you're equating a woman with a sign to the genocide of eight, eight million. So, no, words matter, and kindness matters. Girls, stick up for your rights.
Thanks, Mary.
Greg Langworthy, followed by Caroline Hoffman.
I want to speak to the, you know, five and six vote of no confidence on Melinda and the community censor of Joseph. The only comment I had on those is a simple one. Before censuring or criticizing, you have to get both sides of the story. That was kind of my view on Melinda. I need to know, you know, why is she hiring those attorneys? I haven't heard that side of the story. And then Joseph, you know, Upne, censuring Joseph, have you guys talked together? You know, and often, a situation can be diffused just by that personal interaction. It takes both sides, you know? If I'm going to talk to Emile, Emile's got to open the door, or Dr. Jen, Jen's got to open the door, Dr. Joseph, or Steve, got to open the door. And then that communication can happen, so the example of the board really can set a welcoming situation for the community. Because you guys are on the spot, you're always going to get criticism, and oftentimes, it's hard to listen to the criticism. And I think you do it pretty well. But that is, that's my only comment here. Before coming public with a criticism, make sure the community, we have a responsibility to, to make sure we have fully listened to the other side of the story. Get all the facts, and then if it turns out that it's got to be dealt with publicly, fine, but make sure you've done your due diligence first to hear both sides. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Langworthy.
Caroline Hoffman, followed by Jen San Nicholas.
Since the board removed the censer of Joe from this discussion, I just wanted to say, I'm speaking tonight as someone who was personally attacked at this dais by Joe. When I called on him to refer to transgender students by their preferred pronouns, a simple act of respect, he called me a psychotic progressive liberal and said I was objectively disturbing the meeting.
Rosie, please.
And claimed my disagreement was the kind of divisive behavior that has in the past led to someone being assassinated for their beliefs. Let that sink in. Standing up for the dignity of students was framed as dangerous. He dehumanizes our students and hides behind his personal religious beliefs. Yet, as an elected official and under Title IX, he is legally and ethically required to respect all students, even those whose identities or experiences he may not personally agree with. I'm frustrated and angry that an adult entrusted with leadership would use his position to intimidate, demean, and threaten, rather than protect the children in his care. Students deserve leaders who model respect, not fear. Words like his erode trust, normalize hostility, and create a climate where students can feel unsafe simply for existing as themselves. And every time you get up here, Joe, you say, "I was elected to do this, I was told I can say this." But when what they want is illegal? You want to talk? You can't hide behind, "I was following orders." The Nuremberg trials taught us that.
Thanks, Caroline.
Jennifer San Nicholas, followed by Upne Daliwak.
After the last special meeting, I came home really upset by the heartless comments I heard on this dais. I wanted to write a letter to each of you that were here, but I figured at least two of you wouldn't read it, and I couldn't get the words out diplomatically. Now that I've had some time to reflect and calm down, I'll say this. It's to all of you, but especially to you, Dr. Komroski, but it does apply to all of us in this room. I don't care what your faith is, you don't get to be cruel to the constituents and students you represent. There were three parents of trans children in the audience at that meeting, three that I know of, there could have been more. Your words were a dagger to the heart. I saw some of the strongest, most stoic people I know break because of your pointed cruelty. My faith tells me cruelty is never okay, as is told in Matthew 25:35, "Whatever you have done to the least of my brothers and sisters, you have done to me." Your diatribe invoked that of Governors George Wallace and Jimmy Davis when they used their God-fearing morals as the basis for hate. Your actions were no better.
Upne, followed by Gia.
Before I start my comments, the $1 million clarification, I posted it on Nextdoor, and a lady called Savannah Garcia asked me, I clarified how I came to the number of 1 million. That is not the, dealing with public counsel is currently under mediation. I explained that Chino Hills paid $250,000 in 2018 for the prayer lawsuit that they're bringing again to Freedom From Religion Foundation. And the last numbers that AFF themselves gave, just taking the hours and the general billing rate, that's how I arrived at 1 million, the actual number should be higher. This was a very conservative estimate. And I think Mr. Molina missed the point. What I told him last time was, when we use respectful language and honorifics, it kind of serves as a salve when we talk about very difficult topics, when we talk respectfully. I think he missed the point completely about mister and using first name and last name. And decorum, as one civics ethic guide reminds us, is the armor that protects the debate from descending into abuse. When a trustee misgenders a student or hurls personal insults, that armor is cast aside, and with it, the public's trust. You are entitled to your personal beliefs, but when you use public resources and this dais to wage culture wars and vilify more than half the people you were elected to serve, you betray your oath and divide the very community you swore to represent. Democracy demands better. In the spirit of democracy, we are called to honor the rights and humanity of our neighbors, those who differ from us, those who challenge us, and the generations yet to come. As Thomas Jefferson wrote in the Virginia Statute for Religious Freedoms, "Our civil rights have no dependence on our religious opinions, any more than our opinions in physics or geometry. That wisdom from the nation's earliest day is as urgent now as it was then. Public policy must rest on the rights of all people, not private religious views of those who are temporarily in office." These meetings are archived for public record, years from now, your children and grandchildren.
Thank you.
Gia, followed by Melanie.
Good evening. Oh, what a tangled web we weave when first we practice to deceive. Sir Walter Scott, thank you for that. When this new board convened, I was so hopeful and was pleasantly, it was like that for a little bit, and then things started. I wrote a very long thing that I am not going to have time for, so instead, it is very abbreviated. And what I'm going to say is that there have been shenanigans involving allegations of a violation of Penal Code Section 518 and the Hobbs Act 18, Section 1951, and an unenforceable non-disclosure agreement that was penned by a particular law firm associated with this school board in a, I know I'm being cryptic, but I don't want to come out and say something that has not been proven yet. But I am very, very aware of very specific allegations that I just mentioned, and I will be sending an email to every board member so you understand what I'm talking about. And I'm going to ask you to read it, and then reread it, and then read it a third time before you decide to dismiss me out of hand. Because these things are very serious, and there are great implications to the board if you don't take action. And in the letter that I'll be sending, I have seven suggestions to help mitigate it. But one of the biggest ones is to not do work anymore with a particular, very political law firm. Thank you for your time.
Melanie, followed by Rosie.
I lost the thread of what I was going to say because I wanted to speak to Dr. Anderson directly, and she's not here. And I would have preferred to, I don't want to speak any further to that because contrary to what she said, I don't want to bring the circus, and I don't want to air the dirty laundry. I am only here because I do think you should investigate what I brought to your attention. Greg Langworthy said something earlier, that there are two sides, and that you should look at Emile's side, and you should look at Dr. Anderson's side, you should look at my side. But there's another side you should look at, and you should look at her text messages. I was in the car with her when she received threatening and contentious text messages from people in our community, and I am afraid that she is going to be following through with things that are, as I mentioned in the email. These need to be investigated. It can be handled internally. That's my thread. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie.
Rosie, followed by Janice.
So I was hoping to address Melinda Anderson on this, and Mr. Schwartz. So I read the, what happened with you and Dr. Jennifer Wiersma, and I am appalled, appalled that you would sexually harass her, tell her to touch you inappropriately, and then say your wife would not mind, and then gaslight her, and launch an attack against her character. That is unconscionable. I cannot believe the parade that you and Dr. Anderson did against her. Instead of being a man of honor, why wouldn't you just apologize to her for saying that, for disrespecting her like that? But instead, you had to drag the attorneys in, drag her name through the mud in this community? It's horrible, horrible. If you were my father, I would tell you, I'm ashamed of you, I'm ashamed to bury your name. Your wife should be ashamed of you. It's despicable. You owe her and this community an apology. And you shouldn't even be leading children. That is just so horrible, that you would do what you did. I mean, I read this, and I was just pissed. I was livid that you would go, and Dr. Anderson would go so far as to do, go through the FPPC, a civil grand jury, the County Office of Education, the state superintendent, to ensure that your secret is quiet? Unbelievable, unbelievable. You have the opportunity to do the right thing, and I hope that you do. I hope that you man up, you take responsibility for your lies and the disgusting thing that you told her, and that you publicly apologize to her and to this community. And for the money that you blame her for using, that's what happens when you try to shut her out and shut her down.
Rosie, thank you. Thanks, Rosie. Rosie, Rosie, hey, hey.
Janice.
Hey, 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 hey. Caroline. Caroline. Caroline.
Janice, followed by Ms. Strange.
Hey, you guys, please. I don't want to give you a warning, but I will. Okay. You know what, Rosie, please. Thank you, Rosie. Rosie, thank you. Okay, Rosie. Rosie, please. Go ahead, Janice.
Okay. Hi. First, I want to say, I find the criticism of attendees who don't live in Temecula upsetting. I personally don't come here because I have nothing better to do, or for political reasons. I come as a parent who faced serious challenges in the Santa Grito Union High School District.
Excuse me, Janice, excuse me, I'm going to give you all your time back.
Okay.
Yeah. You know what? Brian. That... Caroline, I don't want to do it. Caroline, Caroline, that's a first warning to you, please.
She's already had a first warning from Dr. Anderson.
Caroline, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Okay? Because I'm going to give her a warning right now, too. Rosie. Okay, Rosie, please. Okay. All right. Caroline, you got to go. You got to go. I'm sorry. Hey, guys, no, no, no. We don't do that. We don't do that. Yeah, we don't do that.
Somebody, you left your phone. Is that your...
I'm not sure.
Okay, Rosie. 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 Hey, Caroline, please, come on. Hey, Caroline. Caroline, come on. Rosie. No more. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Jen. Give her her time back.
It's like break out the popcorn Temecula Valley's having a bonnie.
I mean, not Rosie, Janice, excuse me. Go.
I'll just continue. From what my experience, and because I couldn't unknow what I learned, I became an educational consultant and also an advocate for marginalized students. And I attended the Temecula Valley Board Meeting on July 21st after friends asked for help because they knew a head knowledge of school board governance, including California's unique uniform complaint procedures. Since then, I've continued attending because I witnessed a board led by Trustee Anderson openly disregarding state and federal laws and regulations, including those that govern how a board must conduct itself. And under Trustee Anderson's leadership, there has been a pattern of disregarding laws designed to protect the safety, well-being, and rights of students, parents, staff, and trustees, which erodes public trust and puts this district at risk. One example is the handling of Trustee Wirsma's UCP complaint. Another was the proposal allowing students who do not want to share facilities with a transgender student to opt out by citing a religious or mental health issue, which was disturbing and harmful, including because it drew national attention and caused unnecessary trauma likely for transgender students and the girls who abducted, while many other California school districts have managed similar situations responsibly and without drama. Finally, I believe it is essential that community members, including from different school districts, collaborate, share knowledge, support one another, and speak up for those who fear retaliation. Moreover, even though it may sound like a cliche, young people really are our future. That makes it our collective responsibility to ensure every student receives an education that not only includes a strong academic foundation, but also nurtures compassion, empathy, teamwork, and leadership. Because the leaders our state and our country need tomorrow are sitting in our classrooms today.
Thanks, Janice.
Ms. Strange, followed by Sarah Bell.
What happened to Melissa? Where'd she go? I mean, Melinda, thank you. I'm sorry. There you are, Melissa. Excuse me. Thank you. She might just want to stay home for good. I notice this just keeps happening. You know, what board member gets up and leaves in the middle of a board meeting over and over again? You know what to do. As Chair of Taxpayer's Oversight for Parents and Students, which includes members of the Rainbow Community, we stand with TV USD girls who refuse to accept biological boys in their private spaces in sports. Girls like Melissa must not be forced to undress, shower, or compete against boys. This is about safety, fairness, and lawful rights, and that's it. It's nothing other than safety, fairness, and lawful rights. The board faces lawsuits either way, from Sacramento politicians funded by the teachers' union, Governor Newsom, Bonta, and Thurman, if you protect the girl's policy, privacy policy. Or you can get sued from TV USD parents and this community if you don't. If you stand with parents and students like Melissa and the brave girls who have spoken in this very room time and time again, you won't be alone. You'll have Harmeet Dylan's legal team, the US President's support, federal law, and the majority of Temecula voters standing with you. Protect girls' private...
Time, Ms. Strange, thank you.
Sarah Bell, followed by David Sola.
Okay, I almost just said, I'll just email you, but it's late. Melissa, thank you once again for your comments tonight. You are wise beyond your years you've been here, and we could all learn a lot from listening to you. That being said, I'm not fully taking your advice tonight. I have never publicly addressed board members as individuals in my comments, but Mrs. Wirsma, you can say whatever you want about not targeting individual students, students whose identities don't align with your personal beliefs, but actions speak louder than words. We hear your words. We see what you put on the agenda. We see how you vote. We see what you publicly support and share on your social media. Your words and actions don't align, and frankly, I prefer your words to your actions, and I know that you can do better. Dr. Kamroski, you've raised many valid concerns tonight, and I've heard in previous meetings about how the board president operates, but you removed the voter no confidence from tonight's agenda. So I'm definitely perplexed about that, and, you know, you and I don't speak, but that was confusing. In closing, I do want to thank Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Barham for when I have reached out as a parent in this district, their conversations have been thoughtful, helpful, I feel like they listened, and it's clear that both of you have a clear commitment to supporting all students in the district, and I appreciate that very much.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you.
David Sola, followed by David Hatch.
Good evening. I was going to come up here and say, Dr. Kamroski, you're accused of some pretty terrible things, and I know that you don't believe that. You did any of those things, but while you were being accused of that, there were people here high-fiving and like celebrating terrible things. I think you should probably correct that, because I don't think that's what you want to portray. But I want to take a book out of Melissa's notes, or excuse me, I want to take some notes out of Melissa's book here, and try and be a little bit more kind up here. I want to talk about this appearance of impropriety. If there are things that are happening in the dark among this board, I realize there are some legal things that we have to do in the dark, but when there's a whole bunch of other stuff going on in the dark, that's really bad. I think that's a problem that we really need to keep in check. And you all really claim to be people of faith, so let me speak in your language, Luke 12 verses 2 through 3. "For there is nothing covered that will not be revealed, nor hidden that will not be known; therefore, whatever you have spoken in the dark will be heard in the light, and what you have spoken in the ear in inner rooms will be proclaimed on the house tops." So why is so much being pushed to occur in the dark? One of our conservative neighbors here reached out to me and brought some of these improprieties to light. They know who they are, and I'm wondering where their voice is here on the subject, or has their opinion changed because suddenly those things happening in the dark align with what they want? That's called hypocrisy, and that's the age that we're living in. So while I'm sure you get that dopamine hit whenever people are clapping for you, I want to remind you that those people clapping for you are not going to tell you the truth about your missteps, and they're going to clap you right off a cliff. So what you should do is really listen to people who don't agree with you, because that's what really makes things work. I'm not saying that you have to do what I want you to do. I'm saying you should listen, and we should have the conversation. And when you continue to take those conversations only into the rooms and the echo chambers that benefit you, or the ones that you've already agreed with, then why are you even here representing all of the children in this district when you should just be representing yourself in Congress or somewhere else? Thank you.
David Hatch, followed by Allison.
Good evening. My name is David Hatch. I'm a Temecula resident in Area 4 and a parent of a TV USD... oh, don't leave, Dr. Kamroski, this is just about you. Well, all right. This evening is about leadership and accountability, and there goes the accountability. And Mr. Kamroski is my trustee. I do not believe he is acting in the best interest of our community or our district. I will share examples. First, Mr. Kamroski, while representing this district, appeared on a far-right network along with Congressman Matt Gaetz. He is a former congressman, and their discussion focused on the sexualization of youth. He had a bipartisan congressional investigation, found Matt Gaetz had sex with a 17-year-old girl, and paid for it. That girl's the same age as girls at our local high schools. So I find it very troubling, and I don't know how I can trust someone who claims to protect kids and protect girls when he aligns with someone accused of exploiting them. Second, on September 2nd, Mr. Kamroski joined a walkout protest involving a minor, a current TV USD student. Some believed it targeted a transgender student. Some believed it was to protect student privacy. But I do know that the organizers of the event admitted that the school had already made accommodations. There was no issue. Page 13 of the Governance Handbook states, "Board norms are to focus time and energy on important issues, not pettiness or politics." Protesting a middle school for an issue that was resolved is political activism disguised as governance. At the end of the day, this isn't about politics. This is about responsibility. Mr. Kamroski's behavior and its pattern of behavior undermines public trust, damages credibility of the board, and distracts from what truly matters, educating and protecting our students. We need leaders who rise above ideology and treat every family with respect and understands that their words, in elected officials' words, carry weight.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Hatch.
Allison, followed by Leah.
Allison.
So as a parent... is that working now?
Go.
Okay. Can I get my one second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. As a parent of a recent Temecula graduate, my values begin with protecting all students. Every family wants their child safe on campus. That is not controversial. What is controversial is when board members call for outside agitators. I'm talking about people driving hours or even flying in to stir chaos. And yes, I am aware some call me an outsider, yet I raised a graduate here. I work in Temecula. I have nephews who are throughout all of the schools in Temecula. Phew, okay. Meanwhile, we have Emile and Schwartz, the ones who actually care about students, care about financial responsibility, who constantly receive threats, mostly from these outsiders who live hours or states away. Meanwhile, at Chaparral, there are two bathrooms for hundreds of cis boys. It's unsafe, unsanitary, and it's dangerous. And Wirsma, silent, yet she is known. But one trans student exists, and suddenly she has a crusade. That's not protecting students, that's targeting them. I've recently seen Jen pushing TPUSA clubs on campus, but I hope you know, you must also allow every faith. Now, I do not personally follow the Satanic Temple, yet even the Satanic Temple teaches one should strive to act with compassion and empathy towards all creatures in accordance with reason. That's a religious freedom. So what kind of Christianity looks less kind than the Satanic Temple? Joe, last meeting, you ranted about psychotic liberals, tried to pin an assassination on progressive, then in the same breath talked about civil discourse. Yes, yet you misgendered a trans girl, calling her the boy in the locker room. You've done this several times. You and Jen rallied to protest one student on her own campus, ignoring her safety, knowing no one was being forced into changing out of the locker rooms. No one was...
Time, Allison. Thank you. Thank you.
Leah, Bermudas, I think she left. She was a kiddo and left. And then Dr. Regev.
Dr. Regev. Welcome, Doctor.
Howdy, everyone. Want to take a look at what you, Emile Barham, are doing. So he seeks lawyers on his own neighbors, threatening families for the crime of putting a sign in their yard. Is this leadership? Is that the leadership that we have here? Apparently, yes. That intimidation. His lawyer floods the FPPC, the DA, and the city with letters, weaponizing the system again, followed by a sworn complaint from Melanie Bussard against me, parroting Barham's script almost word for word. She accused me of funding and distributing signs when I have done no such thing. This is their playbook. Lie, file false accusations, swear false oaths like they mean nothing. And indeed, to people who have no fear of God, and they have no God, actually, an oath is just ink on paper. They worship power, but we stand for truth. And the truth is, no amount of lawyers, lies, FPPC complaints will silence us from protecting our kids. And tonight, we actually heard Barham talk, wanting to sue the very district, his own trustees, his own fellow trustees. Are you out of your mind? Emile, you are acting like a baby in a man's clothing. Community, how on earth did we let a middle-aged man with, as far as I know, no wife, no children, no stakes in our schools, be entrusted with the education of our kids? How would we let this happen? That's a question for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regev.
You have your name here.
Doctor.
You can pick it up then.
Thank you. No, thank you. Are we good? All right. Negotiations update? Nothing? Okay. Okay. I think you're first, but are you okay, Mrs. Wirsma? Melissa, you're first. Okay.
Hi, guys. I think I've said most of what I wanted to say during the president's comment at the beginning of this meeting, but I can give a little bit more of an update on my progress in this role. I've received a lot of support from our community, both in person and online. Students, teachers, and parents alike have reached out to me, telling me their thoughts on action items, asking about my experience, and just thanking me for my work. I love that when I'm walking around campus, Chaparral staff will stop me in my tracks to ask me how I'm doing. And a few days ago, Temecula Mayor Brendan Kalfis invited my family and me to the city council and gave us a tour, so shout to him. I'm truly learning a lot from this experience, both during and outside of our physical board meetings. Since I'm the first student representative in this district, everything I do somewhat sets a precedent for future representatives and students in this role, which is a lot, but that's a responsibility that I am honored to carry. I appreciate all the feedback I have been receiving from the community, and it's been really helpful in guiding my next steps. What I lack in career experience, I hope I make up for in my unique perspective. The voice I have on this dais is something that I cherish, and I am extremely grateful for the opportunities I have been given. Even though they can get hectic, I really do look forward to attending these meetings. I am proud of the progress I've seen our community making, and growing up in Temecula truly is something special, and I thank all of the people who have helped me get to... truly is something special, and I thank all of the people who have helped me get to where I am today. As always, if you are a student, parent, or staff member in the district, I'm always open to discussing literally anything. Any of my teachers at Chap can tell you that I love to talk, so come talk to me.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, Mr. Schwartz.
This is a very special time of year for those of us who are Jewish. Between Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, we try to make the world a better place by talking to the people who we deal with all the time and trying to make amends for what happened during the year. And I've spoken with our cabinet and our superintendent, secretaries, and done that. It's a duality for me tonight. I was going to talk a lot about that, but unfortunately, unfortunately, the craziness never ends. So this is 53 pages of Nicole Miller. Fifty-three pages. This is one notaried letter. The report was conducted by Nicole Miller and Associates. Tony DiMarco, whom my fellow board members adore, was involved in defending parental rights and was instrumental in recommending Nicole Miller and Associates for sensitive investigation concerning a complaint against me. Here's the conclusion, page 53. In accordance with our findings, Nicole Miller and Associates did not sustain Mrs. Wiersma's allegation of sexual harassment by Mr. Schwartz, nor was there evidence to suggest the district acted negligently. The investigation found concerns about the credibility of and motivation of Mrs. Wiersma suggest her complaint may not have been made in good faith. This is a censure resolution, which I wrote right after the meeting where I was accused. I put it on the agenda several times, and I took it back, only in the hopes that maybe some sense of decency would come, and I would get an apology. So I'm going to read it to you all. Whereas the Temecula Valley Unified School District Board holds its members to the highest standards of integrity, whereas false accusations undermine the gravity of legitimate complaints, whereas the actions of Board Member Wiersma were found to be in violation of the Board's code of ethics and professional standards, now therefore be it resolved that TVUSD formally censures Board Member Wiersma for conduct unbecoming a Board Member and for intentionally making false statements that have caused harm to a fellow Board Member and to the public's confidence in the integrity of the Board. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be entered into the public record and that the Board urges Board Member Wiersma to issue a public apology, participate in ethics training, and refrain from future conduct that violates the Board's standards. Thank you.
Wiersma.
I just want to note for the community right now, this is further evidence of retaliation. And when in a meeting we decide...
Hey, guys. Please.
Excuse me.
Please.
When in a meeting this Board decides that we're going to move away from the discussion, and yet this is brought up again, it's retaliation, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
Hey, guys.
This is the deal. This is the deal.
Hey, hey.
Can I get a few seconds back, please? Okay. I am the same person in private as I am in public. I...
No. Hey, excuse me.
You know, I just had an audience member look at me and say, "F you," and I'm not sure it was directed at me or Mrs. Wiersma, but it's uncalled for.
Okay. You got... Hey, I... Doctor, please. Hey, please stop. Hey, you know what? We're almost done. Hey, we're all... Rosie, please. We're almost done. Okay, give Mrs. Wiersma back 10 seconds.
It says something that Mr. Schwartz has to come back again with that. I'm honest to a fault. I'm not perfect. I'm a flawed person and a trustee, but I have told the truth.
I believe you.
Rosie, please go. You're done.
So, let me continue on. Kindness can be weaponized to circumvent truth with gaslighting. This is true. Mr. Geiger, thank you for your mention of the SROs. Three are paid for by TVUSD.
Sorry to interrupt. You got to get your time back, Mrs. Wiersma. You can't say, "Please go. You're done." You have to say you're objectively disturbing the Board for conducting business. You can't just kick people out. You have to let them know why, just respectfully.
She knows why.
That's what you have to let her know why publicly.
I'll do that in the future. Okay. Go ahead, Mrs.
I think it was Mr. Geiger. I wanted to let you know, we have three SROs funded at TVUSD and three by city council. I definitely feel like safety and security should be a top issue. It brings me to watchdogs, and I was honored to be with Principal Erin Nielsen at Abbey Ranky and Brian Pastor, with Dani Molina and Cole Mann for organizing that watchdogs kickoff. That is the best way that you, as parents, can get involved. Budgets are tight. If dads, grandpas, big brothers, uncles step up and help, and yes, there's a place for women, too. It absolutely is inclusive. We would love to further this program. This has been my heart from the beginning. And yes, David Sola, I see you in the back, and though you irritate me from time to time, you did provide the pizzas, so I'm going to give you that shout-out. That was a great event. Joseph and I got to go to Paloma Elementary and enjoy some of the classrooms, as well as outdoor time with the kids. Thank you to Principal Marvin Morton for showing us around. We got to listen to their jazz band, visit their CTE exploration lab. We actually got to join some dancing that went on in their VAPA class. Totally joy. All the good, enriching stuff that really has me walking away thankful that I'm a trustee. As far as advocates for faith and freedom, I know there's been some discussion about that. I wanted to let you know, if you didn't know, that this firm just had a significant victory for fairness in women's sports and the protection for free speech here in California. Yeah. A U.S. District Court for the Central District of California ruled in favor of the plaintiffs and the Save Girls Sports, which is allowing their core Title IX discrimination claim to proceed. Now, in terms of the walkout, that happened because a president, along with a board majority, didn't vote for the privacy process, which is what Dr. Komrosky and I originally spoke to in our experience, which would have circumvented that entire scenario. So I just want to point that out. To Mr. Barham, you've used the dais to campaign against Sonia Shaw, the one conservative running for state superintendent that wasn't appropriate. You shouldn't be sending intimidating letters to citizens who want to put up a sign in their yard. You shouldn't be calling people flying monkeys and disparaging pastors and then sit in that seat and be a different person. You need to be the same way in every moment that you can, and we're all flawed, but that kind of behavior is disrespectful, and it has just felt like a charlatan through and through.
Go ahead.
Can I give a point of clarity that Mr. Schwartz is raising before my comments?
Go ahead.
I believe that when somebody sends an email to the Board, only the Board President can reply "all," but each Board Member can reply to that person. That's... So I think, yeah. So just to be clear, we can each reply to you, we just cannot reply all. Okay. Okay, I'm ready. Where do I start? Hmm. Vote of no confidence, that wasn't table indefinitely. That was tabled two to three months. The Board President said that she had some concerns legally, so we'll flesh those out. That'll come back. You know, the gaslighting times 10,000, talking about cruelty and hate speech, or whatever you want to fling out at me, but just an example, the lady who got kicked out, got kicked out at the last meeting, and while she got kicked out, before she was interrupting me and many others, the entire meeting, she was screaming, yelling as she was getting kicked out. And then today, she's disrupting. So I refuse to accept a gaslighting. It's a Marxist strategy. Get out of here. You want to come in here just like this? You want to come in here and you want to interrupt a meeting and then accuse me for being cruel? I'm sorry. You just got it twisted. And one thing I want to do is people quote scripture. It's totally fine. I'm going to quote it, too. And I wasn't prepared to do this tonight, but I'm going to. Philippians 4, meditate on these things. Finally, brethren, whatever things are true, whatever things are noble, whatever things are just, whatever things are pure, whatever things are lovely, whatever things are of good report, if there is any virtue, and if there is anything praiseworthy, meditate on these things. That does not include meditating on a boy going into a girl's locker room. It is none of those things. I will literally continue this fight until the day I die, whether I'm here or not. Outside of that, you have Psalms 139:14. God made you fearful. You are fearfully and wonderfully made, children, all of you, all the students in this community, all the children in this community. God made you that way. And believe it or not, He loves you even more than your parents. I will not stand here, and I will not... I will be an advocate for your voice, even if your own parents are not. You are used as a political pawn. I'm not just talking about this school. I'm not just talking about one school. I'm talking about all across the nation. I'm not singling out anybody. And I made it very clear, do not demonize these kids. God made you, Jesus Christ, in His image. He made you a biological boy or a biological girl, and that's exactly how you were made. To resist that is to resist your Creator. And whether the parents, or the teachers, or even pastors, or false teachers spew that nonsense onto you, I rebuke them. Pastors are leading children astray, propagating this bullcrap to where a boy can do this, and it disturbs communities all throughout the United States. It's not just Temecula. It's not just the United States. It's all throughout the world. Wokeism is dying. It is dead. People are sick and tired of it. But what I'm here to do is advocate for you, children, even if your parents won't. God loves you. He wants a relationship with you, literally, and that's the way you were made.
I am going to ask you, Mrs. Wiersma, and Dr. Komrosky, to listen to what I'm going to say very carefully. We all received a letter today from a whistleblower with regard to shenanigans with our Board President. This whistleblower, at a lunch with Dr. Anderson, stated in her own words that Pastor Tim Thompson was blackmailing her to resign from the school board. This whistleblower, Dr. Anderson described to this whistleblower that she was being extorted, that it was an extortion of an elected official. While this whistleblower was present, Dr. Anderson received and responded to text messages she identified as coming from Bob Tyler. At the same time, she was also receiving text messages from Pastor Tim Thompson, further underscoring the involvement of both men in the matters that she was describing. She was basically saying that they were helping her to negotiate her resignation. Dr. Anderson said to this whistleblower, "If I'm going to resign, I'm going to get something out of it," meaning a retraction from Jason Craig regarding his statement to the Valley News. Dr. Anderson stated that Bob Tyler was actively involved in negotiations regarding her resignation, and that a meeting with Tim Thompson of the 412 Church and others were scheduled. Now, Dr. Anderson, and I have evidence of texts, that she has been using attorneys for her own private use, okay? On July 29th, I was the presiding officer. I called David Huff, and I... Because I did not know what to do with this whistleblower's information, and I said, "David, this is what's going on in terms of blackmail." And David Huff said, "I know, because Dr. Anderson called David Huff and said, 'I am being blackmailed by the church group,'" meaning the 412 Church, okay? And that is why, okay? And subsequently, met with Pastor Thompson, were trying to get what happened at this secret meeting hashed out. Were not able to do it, but David Huff verified what Dr. Anderson said to the whistleblower, and we're not going to disregard David Huff. And I don't think you would do that. So we've got some ethical breaches here, okay? This whistleblower documented her exchanges with Dr. Anderson with an independent journalist. This independent journalist asked for the text messages that this whistleblower saw on July 25th. Dr. Anderson says they don't exist, which is a crime in itself, okay? So we've got some issues to deal with here, and that is why I brought this forward to you. So we need to look at this, because this is serious business. We've got pastors blackmailing possibly our Board President, which is just insane.
You want to give us all some extra time?
Let's do it.
If we can have it.
Let's do it. Let's go for it. Let's do it. Let's... Yeah, let's go for it. Do you want some extra time?
I'm all for time.
Okay.
I never was for limits. Well, I mean, hey, it's kind of late, but I'm just saying, yeah.
What about the public?
Excuse me, this is not the public's meeting.
Yeah. No, 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 don't say that.
No, it's not the public's meeting. It's the governing board meeting in the public.
I know. But let's do some extra time. Let's... Two minutes, doctor.
Let's go... I'm not asking to go first.
Okay. I mean, I will continue.
Yeah, you continue, and then...
I can continue. And I'm asking, what I'm asking for, and this is the reason that I brought this forward, I'm asking you to reconsider your vote on a vote of no confidence, because I have evidence myself that Dr. Anderson has used David Huff and Bob Tyler for her personal reasons, not district business, okay? Which is an ethical breach. I mean, he told me himself. She said that she was being blackmailed by the church group, okay? And he told her to be careful that she not trade her seat for any type of consideration, okay? And he also told me that she could not get off the phone fast enough. And I believe that that is when she went to Bob Tyler, and he started to negotiate her resignation. For what, I don't know, okay? But I heard it from David Huff myself, and he's not going to lie to me. So whatever happened at the meeting in which Pastor Tim Thompson will not give his testimony as to what happened at that meeting when Dr. Anderson met with him and Jason Craig, and Jason Craig will not give his testimony either. So what took place at that meeting? That is what I would like to know. And in addition to that, the text messages will prove it all, because the text messages were seen by the whistleblower, the independent journalist asked for a public records request, and an affidavit, it was denied. And I believe that an affidavit was signed by Dr. Anderson saying that I have nothing, which is a crime. So we have a lot to consider here. And you didn't allow it to come forward, okay? And I know that you're close with Pastor Tim Thompson, okay? But you know what? That pastor is... Why is he so involved with our school board? That's the question. Why is he so involved all the time with our school board? It's like, we need to get to the bottom of what's going on here. Go ahead, Mrs. Wiersma.
Well, I, for one, would like to say that Pastor Tim Thompson and I rarely speak. So if there's any illusion out there that somehow they've pulled puppet strings for the past three years, not true. In terms of this meeting, I know we have one person in the room who was at the meeting, and I just... I don't know where to go with this, because you three decided to put Melinda Anderson, with no experience, in as Board President. Everyone was convinced that was the right decision. I know how difficult it is to navigate all the things. I had a little grace with that tonight, understanding some of what she's had to go through, but I did agree that there have been problems. But to take Pastor Tim at this moment and smear his name, Bob Tyler, I know that there is a concerted effort, Mr. Barham, on your part, to do exactly that. And I would reserve some judgment here, because I actually haven't gotten to every email this afternoon that was sent. I'm happy to look at what is true and what is right, but I think you're overstepping a bit. You weren't in the meeting. I wasn't in the meeting. Dr. Komrosky wasn't in the meeting. Jason Craig has never had the opportunity to present the declaration and what he felt went down with the investigation, and yet I have a colleague continuing to read the results of, really? What was a kangaroo court decision, okay? They got exactly what they were looking for, no matter what. So that's a different topic. I'm just saying, there are many things to meet through here with honesty and solutions, and I don't know where I land.
Of course you don't. Of course you don't.
Because I'm not going to assume guilt on their part. I do know what Dr. Anderson has done in her leadership. I've written emails and tried to do my best to explain the problems to Dr. Woods, to the Cabinet. So, clearly, I agree there, but I'm not going to go where you're going tonight with these other issues.
Okay. Dr. K.
Just wanted to say you made claims, people that aren't here to defend themselves. I heard there was a private meeting. It's actually none of my business because I wasn't invited. Somehow, you're making it your business. You weren't invited and maybe you were. I'm not sure. So, maybe the people that were invited to that meeting, maybe they wanted it to be private, maybe they didn't want it to be public. I'm not sure, but that discussion is for those people and they're not in this room. And so, that conversation needs to be had with those people. I'm not even going to get in the middle of that. The other thing I wanted to say is sub raises. So, I secretly really want this extra time to shout out to the subs. I've always advocated for higher raises for subs every single time. And I'm only one voice, just saying, every single time. The snappers, a long time ago when we were doing Governing Board Handbook and we, you know, got rid of signs in here and all that, you know, we really didn't want obsessive clapping because it can disturb as well. Even back then, people were doing the snapping of the fingers. It didn't bother me. If that's a bother, we can talk about it as a Board. I'm neutral with the snappers, as long as you don't get super annoying. Yeah. And then visiting school sites, had the privilege of visiting five or six school sites with Dr. Woods, really fun stuff. Looking forward to the student of the month next month at Sizzler's. And last, I would say this, given that what I said about the two people on the Board Advisory Committee, even that said, let's say you remain on the Board, I will still take the wisdom and the insight from those five Board Members when they present data. I am open to that if that goes forward. I am open to reasonable evidence that's presented to me and then I can make a decision on that. Whether I think it's lacking or not, whether it goes to the ballot or not, I'm still open to that. But I would say things that are made private, they should remain private unless they want to be disclosed publicly and I'm not sure if you're stepping on that ground or not. My last question is, did you get permission to contact Huff, our General Legal Counsel?
I was the presiding officer because Melinda was nowhere to be found, so that is why I did it. I took it upon myself on July the 29th.
Okay. Thank you.
A few months ago, there were some serious allegations made that necessitated the district conduct a third-party investigation. After a very thorough and impartial investigation, I'm happy to report that our financial statements are accurate with absolutely no misappropriation of assets. The investigation proved we have effective fiscal policies and procedures in place which have resulted in clean audits from several multiple sources. Our hiring practices are done with the utmost integrity and our vendor selection process is exhaustive and transparent. Lastly, I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Nicole Lash for her full cooperation during this investigation and your continued dedication to this organization and your leadership. Thank you.
Board Advisory Committee for Future Agenda Items. You're going to report on social workers, discipline?
We were given a pretty hefty collection of topics for one topic.
Sure.
So, I discussed with Dr. Woods how we're going to provide the information for foster youth, SEL, discipline, and yeah, those three in a memo report and then I'll be able to answer any questions that the Board will have in October.
Okay.
Emile? I agree with Joe. We should look at, talk with Mrs. Lash about subpay, see what we can do to pay our subs.
I agree.
Amen. The highest possible amount, right?
No, I agree.
That's right.
As much as we can. No. Okay, so we've got subpay.
So, the thing with the subs too is what we have discussed is that there are teachers that take over certain periods and because of their longevity, they're earning a lot of dollars for those hours. So, if there's a way to reevaluate that, and I know, Mr. Rsay, we've talked about this before, it would be awesome to come back around and do even a slight raise because I think we could restructure it and give them more money and I think they're worth it, especially when you look at Fallbrook and some of the other districts.
No, hold on. Hold on. Dr. Velez, I want to start, kind of start this off right with you, even though you don't take office until January of 2026. We need to do superintendents' goals and I'm thinking we should do it in October for the year, October to October, and the reason is because our big four, the test scores come out October 15th. So, if we do the goals in October and then we get the data in the following October, then we have some raw data in which to evaluate you. I mean, are you okay with that?
So, I'm perfectly okay with that in terms of working on it this October in terms of a draft possibly until we look at January 1st and moving forward. I'm fine with that.
Okay. I mean, because you're, I mean, you're in ESS anyway and you're working on raising our test scores. I mean, not that that's going to be the only thing that we evaluate you on, but I think it makes sense to put something together in October of this year and then when the data comes out in October of '26, we can just do the evaluation right there because we have the numbers.
Yeah.
Instead of doing it, I think it's, I don't know when it's scheduled. I think it's in June.
Correct. That's usually about when it is.
Yeah, but it's just because of the timing differences with the data, it makes it hard.
Yeah. And that's partly why I'm suggesting possibly looking at October for a draft and then making changes after the first of the year, which I think is acceptable, but...
Yeah. Okay, so there's that. Does anybody have any others?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Barham.
Yeah, I'm not done yet, but congratulations, sir. Yeah. Okay, so I am also going to put on consideration of an investigation into what I just spoke about because I think that there are serious breaches of ethics here based upon what I've experienced myself and we cannot have corruption on this Board. And if there is corruption, it needs to be, we need to get rid of it. And I'm sorry that it involves some of your friends, but you've got to overlook that and allow some kind of an investigation to take place. That's being transparent to the public. I'm telling you what I heard and you should respect what I'm saying and at least consider an investigation. I don't know. That's on you. I mean, your voters, that's something that they will have to consider when you run in 2026. We can't have this kind of thing. We can't have people talking to attorneys, okay, when it's not district business. We can't have people saying that they're going to be blackmailed by members of the community.
Trustee Barham, I think we're done here.
You know what? Excuse me.
I think you're campaigning just a little bit.
It's time to be done.
I know.
It's time to be done and to end this meeting.
I'm talking, I'm trying to...
You've talked. We've all talked. I think we need to end it.
So, I want to put that on the agenda.
Mr. Barham, may I make one comment related to substitute pay rate?
Sure. Okay. First... Can we put that on the agenda?
First of all, I think the employee was Beth Seha who said some very good comments about her opinions and perspective and I just want to share, we appreciate her, we appreciate all of our guest teachers, we appreciate all of our substitutes. Some of them go in and take a short-term assignment and don't know kids and they do their very best to make sure the classroom is under control and that they carry out the teacher's lessons, so we absolutely value that. I do want to point out to the Board that it is a pretty complex item to ensure that you have a full understanding of. I think it's important that we revisit the fact that we have an incentive bonus-based model at this time. If the Board is interested in uprooting that, going in a different direction, we're happy to work together to provide some estimate of what that would mean in terms of impact. As a reminder, we have regional subs right now assigned to sites. It's probably also important that we bring information related to comparisons in terms of pay rate, but not only that, also do those increases, including the incentive model, actually help fulfill staffing discrepancies for substitute pay raises or substitute daily assignments. With that said, I think our request would be that that come back to the Board as an information item where we can maybe have some of these discussions and then the Board can provide some direction, knowing that it has significant budgetary implications.
Thank you. Okay. Are we finished? All right. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
11:08.
11:08.